Good afternoon, everyone. This is the Town of Greenwich Planning and Zoning Commission. On Tuesday, January 24th, and we are holding our virtual meeting on Zoom. And this evening, we have two postponements. The first one is item three, 177 Hamilton LLC at 15 Grand Street for an 830G application at that address. And the second one is Leonard, a number six, application number six at Leonard Leonard and Joanne Phillips at 220 Davis Avenue in the R6 for a final site plan and special permit for in addition to the existing two family residence. Should we need an alternate, the seated alternate this evening is Bob Barilak. However, we are not anticipating it at this time. And with that, we begin our regular meeting. The first item is Otter Boulder LLC at 204 Otter Rock Drive for a final coastal site plan to construct a single family dwelling at that address. And I believe Mr. DeAndrea, you are representing the applicant?
I am. Thank you. I am pleased to be representing Otter Boulder LLC, who are the owners of lot number one, which is described on map 8993 in our Greenwich Land Records. I suspect that Otter is for the Otter Rock and Boulder is because there is a significant amount of ledge in the area. So Jacklin was so nice to arrange these in. This is panel number one. It shows lot number one in the northeast corner of the original tract, which has been developed on lot number two. And if you look at it, number, I mean, the open space is in the upper left corner. So the lot that we're dealing with this evening is lot number one. It has an acre, an area of 1.3895 acres, which translates to 60,526 square feet. It is located in the RA1 zone. And as we noted, it was approved back in October of 2017 as a subdivision under 20217415. The condition of that approval was that this lot should be presented to the full commission rather than qualify for administrative coastal site plan review. I don't recall exactly why that decision was made. However, we did present lot number two as a full development plan to the commission for their approval. And we are following the requirements for lot number one. I did mention that lot number two was developed. It was site plan 20219, 201983 was developed for the Traumontano family. It was, it has been approved for CO and it is occupied. That's just for point of reference, fully developed at that time. Mr. Traumontano was responsible or took the initiative to clean up, if you will, the open space parcel. And that remains as open space, a few trees and covered with grass. The topography on lot number one is somewhat unique in that it rises from an elevation of 32. If we can go to panel two right now would be good. Thank you. I offer this as a comparison for what the commission approved back in 2017 and 18 during the subdivision review. At that time Chairman Albon and Commission Member McRae were on the commission. Those two individuals were
As was Mr. Levy.
Mr. Levy didn't vote from what I read on the decision resolution. But thank you for that, that correction. But anyway, this is the plan that was presented to the commission in support of the subdivision of the two lots and open space. I've highlighted the rain garden in the southeast corner, the circuitous driveway leading up to a parking court in front of the house on the east side. And, and that particular design, there was a proposal to enter a garage on the north side. And there was, of course, a pool on the west. You will note that there was limited proposal to grade along the western side toward the open space. It was because of the way we cited the house and the pool to kind of stay with the existing grades in that area. But the change in, in elevation between the street at 32 and the house site at 50 was somewhat of a challenge for the architects from Mark Finley Architects Firm. Kurt Wayne and Jay Velayd are here on the Zoom call tonight. If there are any specific questions about the design of the home. And also attendance attending is Mary Cavazos, who's the landscape architect who has been working with the architects for the design of the site and the approach and the grading. So I wanted to point out now the similarities between panel two and if Jacklin would go to number three now. This is the current plan that has been developed by the architects and the landscape architects. And while the orientation is different in this plan, because we've oriented to the north. Convention is north is up or to the right. So we have a rain garden on the eastern side along Otter Rock at the lower elevations. Our design is proposing an elevation of the berm at that point around elevation 37. And the architects have designed the, the house with an elevation of, bear with me for just a second. Make sure I got my numbers right. It's 50.5. And if you look at the elevations of the site itself at that point, the elevations are around 50.5. So there'd be a minimal amount of earthwork to bring the top of the knoll down. We recognize, of course, that there's going to be some excavation for the basement, but we're citing the house to maintain the grades around, around it pretty much at existing conditions. The architects have designed the driveway at the northeast corner, similar to the original conceptual approval. And the driveway would then come in and sweep in a clockwise direction, following the contour above the rain garden and enter a garage underneath the semicircular parking court, which would also be accessed at the first floor level at 49.5. So to clarify, there's a driveway under that parking court, which leads to the garage. And that would then provide access for the residents into the basement level. But there is also a parking court on the north side to accommodate the service entrance into the home. DPW during the original subdivision phase and currently has reviewed our, our design. And we're following the concept that was developed back in 2017, whereas we are providing drainage throughout the site and then ultimately down into the rain garden for water quality treatment and detention. I want to point out at this, at this time that anyone driving by or walking by on Otter Rock, due to the changes in the grades and the elevations that we proposed, you will not be able to see the, the garage, nor will you be able to see the driveway that for all intensive purposes is an oval shaped configuration. So that's, I think that's important to note for the aesthetic elements of the design. Moving to the west side of the property, the architects and the landscape architects have proposed that the pool stepped down from the patio at the rear of the home so as to take advantage of the grades in that area. So the pool is proposed to be at elevation 45. And you'll notice on our grading plan that there's just one contour being shown out to the west, meaning a very minimal amount of earthwork on that westerly side, again, consistent with what the original concept had been back in 2017. Another point to be made in that regard is that there's very little earthwork toward the open space that's going to be defined by boulders as a condition of the original approval. Our plans do not show those boulders at this point. They should be included in the landscape plan, but they will also be included on our development plan. The the development of lot number two by Traumontano ended up primarily with a very dense hedge along their northern boundary of the open space. So boulders were not imposed on that review. So again, we will be having our boulders shown on a development plan unless the commission finds another means of separation appropriate at this time. I would like at this point to just go over quickly the way in which we're approaching the drainage system. Now, Jacklin would bring up panel five. I mean, excuse me, panel four, sorry. I've highlighted the main components of this system. And on the northern side, we have proposed that we use some permeable pavers for the parking court adjacent to the service side of the building. I don't mean that service other than just convenience to get to the working portions of the home. And we then connect those, that function into some galleries that ultimately discharge into the rain guard. Similarly, we have the array of galleries on the south side and also some
Might I just ask you a clarification, Mr. DeAndrea? In the subdivision approval with conditions, the, it's blacktop and impervious surfaces shall be limited and permeable pavement shall be utilized where possible. Is this the only area where you could use the permeable?
It's the most appropriate. Yes. The driveway coming up
Is it the only, is it the only area where you could, because it's the way it's worded is to, to use it everywhere possible, not where it's most appropriate?
Right. I'm gonna, I will try to address that directly.
Okay, thank you.
The use of permeable pavers or pavement is optimal when we have slopes of around 5%, nothing more. 5% is usually chosen for the slope in which you can open your car door and it won't slam back on your ankle. So that also accommodates the infiltration of the runoff on the surface into those voids. So that turned out to be an opportune or appropriate location. The driveway, however, coming up Ramada Rock is varies from eight to 10 to 12% in a couple of places. When you get into the parking court, that parking court is
Max for a driveway, max allowable is 15?
On the single family rear lot accessway, we specify in our regulations that it can be 15%. We try not to be more than 12 if we don't have to, but this one, we have it on our driveway plan and site distance plan showing a variety of, of slopes, but eight to 10 in some areas, a little steeper at the very beginning, then it flattens out a little bit as we come around south on the oval, if you will. So that's, that's where we have our, our restriction, if you will, on using more area for permeable pavement. We also have a very large rain garden that provides the same function. In fact, some would argue that it's a little more efficient when you use soil and sand mix to provide the filtration and the treatment of the nutrients that are directed into the rain garden rather than always filtering through crushed stone. So we think we have a, a good plan for the control of the runoff. We do have them, the gallery sections separated because of the way that the manual reads that we have to separate our BMPs to take in the dedicated areas. In other words, they can't all be concentrated in one, one space. But on the other hand, we also have to cite them where we identify deep soils with the proper permeability. So you can see that those are spread out. There is one small section of galleries in the southeast corner of the, of the, of the dwelling, which are primarily dedicated to just a small section of the roof and you can see how we've dedicated them to different portions of that, of that site. But ultimately, after the detention and the infiltration in each of the galleries or permeable paver areas, the ultimate discharge or overflow from those systems finds its way down the hill into the rain garden where we accommodate the volume and the depth for water quality and the runoff reduction, which means that the water is remaining on site and filtering back into the groundwater. There was a comment in, in the staff comments about the need for more detail on the planting within the rain garden. We don't disagree with that. And Mary will be providing that on the final landscape plan. She has provided a general location, if you will, of the types of plants that will go in. Comment was made that we needed more specific landscape schedule. And that will be provided so we know exactly how many units and what type of vegetation will, will go in. We did review the DPW comments. Nothing drastic, if you will. No major areas of disagreement. Juan Paredes has suggested that we continue to develop the responses in conjunction with the ultimate review for the building permit. Typically, as you know, we finalize our plans, we send them back to the planning office. They are then routed down the hall for a final review of the responses. So we expected that will continue. And we've been working on them since we received them late last week. Their comments are always the same. As you, you know, this is a vacant lot. At one point there was a home that was demolished. It was a permit for disconnect. Mr. Feminella has said in his comments that he wants us to do the inspection again. We have no objection to that. So we will file the appropriate permit for the inspection of the existing lateral that remains. And we will provide the video. And if he wants a letter in advance saying that we will file the permit, we will purvey, provide that letter that says we will agree to file a permit. I touched on the conservation comments that we received. And I just want to correct a couple of things. We are discussing still with the architect about the treatment along the north and south sides. Landscape architect and architect have preferred not to build a wall because they're intrusive and also the Bellhaven Land Company doesn't like walls anymore than they were absolutely necessary. So the intent is that we were grading down into a swale to keep the water on our property on both the north and south sides. When you study the existing contours, you see that in that area, all of the water under existing conditions does drain to the east toward the gutter of Otter Rock. So we're not changing the flow pattern due to the landscaping that's going to be planted in that area, which includes some shrubs and ground cover and trees. The runoff will be absorbed into that environment and thereby reduce the flow total, the total flow down the hill. Because as you note, above that to the west will be intercepting the water that otherwise would fall on the hillside and drain to the east. So we'll be picking that up in the drainage system for the house and the driveway. And therefore you'll have less water totally going to the east on both the north and south sides. We did, I did go back out to the site today just to make sure that we all saw the same trees. There are six trees remaining on the site right now. I would classify most of them except for the one oak tree that happens to be located in the middle of the parking court in the east side of the home. I would classify those as somewhat distressed in my opinion. There's one large spruce tree on the west side. And the two trees that we classified as ash are not ash. They are in fact oak. I should personally go out and make sure that of the designation of trees before I release it. However, I did not. Today, those trees are surrounded by acorns and I do know what an oak leaf looks like. So the trees on the right are oaks. There's a maple in the middle. There's a spruce on the far west and the large oak tree, which had it not been located in the middle of the home, would have been worthy of saving, but not in this particular case.
Okay.
The architect, the architects are more, more qualified to discuss the architectural design. If you have any questions about
No, we're not going to ask you, but I don't think we're going to ask you about the architectural design. Mr. Lo, you had a lot of questions yesterday. Do you want to lead off? Mr. DeAndrea, do you want to take that down for now?
Well, well, just a second.
Okay, just a second. My apologies.
All right. That's right. You can take it on now. Mr. DeAndrea, thank you for providing those exhibits. If we could put back the exhibit that is labeled 2017 approved and shows the original design.
Yeah, number two.
Yep. Okay. So this right, I'd like to focus on that, that driveway.
Yes.
And, and that this approved plan seems far simpler, less disruptive and requires much less impervious or permeable surface. So I'd like to, and I'd like to know what changed and why the, the different design. With that, with that whole oval and extra pavement and, you know, the whole nine yards.
Okay, I can give you an answer. I don't have it quantified as to what was shown on the original. I think we can all agree that the home shown as a conceptual plan back during the subdivision phase is smaller and different, different type of design. The current owners of the property have preferred not to have a garage on the upper level. We decided, or the architects decided with the owner that we could access the property, not see the driveway and hide the cars, if you will, underneath the front parking court. So that's the genesis of the design. The owners have preferences. The architects interpreted them and they developed the site plan that we propose currently. I have not, as I said, yeah.
Is there, is there any reason from a topographical standpoint, why this original design could not be utilized and spare that large oval driveway?
Right. Well, the, I guess the short answer is that the elevation of the two dwellings is the same. On the original one back in 17, it was 50. Currently, the architect, excuse me, was 51. Currently, the architects are showing 50.5. So the home that was presented in 17 anticipated a basement. This one also anticipates a basement. So the, I, again, I don't have a short answer for you on the difference in the area of the two developments. But the owners have offered this preference. I will say that everything that's being proposed is in accordance with our site plan criteria. And we've met the requirements of drainage and setback. So from a site plan standpoint, we're all in compliance.
But just as, you know, free form looking at that, I had, I didn't take any measurements. But is it, is what I'm saying reasonable? Is this not much simpler and much less paved surface, if you will, than, than the newly proposed?
There is, I would say, you know, intuitively and observation wise, there's less pavement altogether, yes, on the original conceptual plan. But if we're attenuating all the effects of the pavement and we have the ability to get into the, the area below the parking court so that we don't see any of it, I think that's the result of good design by the architect. So I don't have a problem with it because we've been able to handle all the, the volume and treat it all in accordance with our drainage manual. So I think that the owner has
It occurred to me that this earlier design is in line with the comment in, in the original approval that these impervious surfaces shall be limited during development of the lot. This, this, this design appears to be more limiting in terms of those surfaces.
More limiting, yeah.
Well, yeah, there is less is what I'm saying.
If there were, if there were more driveway and more permeable paving also, would that mitigate some of your concerns?
Well, I think there are two things. One is we're, we're trying to, it seems that the spirit of the original approval was to keep the impervious surfaces, and I'm equating that with the driveway, should be limited. And I guess we can all come up with our own definition of the, of the word limited. And in addition to that, it's saying that these permeable pavers should be utilized wherever possible. So I think they're two separate but related issues. And they, they raise very, you know, important concerns by, on the part of the, the town. And I, and I believe this commission.
Well, the only thing I would say in closing in regard to that, your concerns is that on the original conceptual plan, there wasn't an intent to use permeable pavers or pavement in the front courtyard. The only area that was designated was on the north side of the dwelling. In essence, we've, we've replicated that.
Yes, but it sounds, Mr. DeAndrea, it sounds as if what you got from the commission when the subdivision was approved was an instruction to modify what you had shown them and to minimize it. We asked for the transcript yesterday from that meeting and did not yet receive it. Okay. So that we could look at what the discussion was around the proposed development and what we specifically had said. Because frankly, we don't remember. I imagine you don't exactly remember either. It's been five long years, not quite, four and a half. So, oh. So five, five and a half, right? So, but the intent would have been when the commission, remember that these statements that we, that I read you are modifications to the, to your proposal as submitted. So the commission approved it with conditions. And the condition was that you maximize the use of impervious and that, that's what they were looking for so that they would have wanted at the time, we would have wanted more use of impervious than you were showing. That's my take.
I would
If you remembered, Mr. McRae, have you, oh, Mr. LaRoe has his hand up.
Yeah, Madam Chair, thank you. You, you're, you're right on the point I was about to make was that I think it'd be helpful if the applicant can explain how the conditions of the subdivision decision in 2017 are being met and quantifying in some way how the impervious area is being limited in this design versus and, and again, I understand, Mr. DeAndrea, you, you're talking about, we're looking at the, the concept plan and we're not obviously approving or upholding that as the, the only limits of the construction. But there are these conditions in the subdivision decision that need to be honored. And, and if you could perhaps speak to how that those are being met, that may be helpful.
Right. Well, I can answer that by just quoting from the, the whereas, and it says, "Blacktop and impervious services shall be limited during development of the lots with permeable pavers utilized where possible." So that's the way it reads in, in the decision. So I'm asking
And the language you're using is where appropriate, where most appropriate, which I'm still reading as being a little different. What Mr. LaRoe asked you is right on the money. How are you implementing what the commission was clearly conditioning this approval to get a more environmentally sensitive, lower impervious in an area where they felt it was necessary? And by that I mean all of us. And then hold on a second before you answer, Mr. DeAndrea, Ms. Jenkins has her hand up as well.
I, I think my concern as well is the house is larger and there are also three terraces associated with the house as well as the pool surround. So in addition to the driveway being longer and, and involving an auto court, I was also concerned about just the general overall impervious.
Okay. So if we were to address your concerns by adding more permeable pavement to influence more inflow from the surface into the ground, I would think that that would be something that you would be in favor of.
We would
Regardless of the area.
I'm not sure what you mean. It sounds almost like you're, you're going for a loophole. There's just the way you phrased it.
I'm not, I'm not going for a loophole. I'm just
Mr. DeAndrea, if I can for a second.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. McRae.
So in, in the original, there was no, there was no, in the conceptual plan, there was no pervious pavement. It was all, it was all just it was all just by two minutes concrete for the whole driveway.
Here, no, no, sir, actually, I I tried to make that that uh point.
Said that differently.
Yeah, on our on our conceptual plan at the time, the parking court the parking court in the front on the east side of the dwelling was not proposed to be permeable. Only the driveway court on the north side proposed by two minutes concrete courtyard. And remember, at that time, we had already presented a um preliminary drainage report to prove the feasibility of using enough permeable pavement on the north plus the rain garden as the primary components of the design. Since that time, you know, we've had some minor changes in our drainage report, uh drainage manual and and interpretation of how best to us um accommodate those conditions. So in this case, as we designed the drainage system, we didn't need more permeable pavement to accommodate. However, we can modify the design and include more permeable pavement on the flat portion of the driveway.
Mr. McRae, without the without the the transcript, you and I are have our hands tied a little behind our backs right now because we don't remember. But my read, right, but what I'm thinking is that what we were looking for was a greater use of permeable, right? That's your take as well. They had, right, they they didn't have any, and we wanted a greater use. And if you I keep reading the sentence, we've all read it a million times now. Blacktop and impervious surfaces shall be limited. And permeable pavement shall be utilized where possible. So we were looking for greater environmental sensitivity then. Um, so, Mr. DeAndrea, if you're willing to do that and consider also uh Ms. Jenkins's comments, I'm sorry, Nick, did you want to answer me on that or?
Well, I I when I was uh wanted to talk to Mr. D'Andrea about, I guess.
Okay, go ahead.
The parking court in and to the north, that's that's uh permeable pa permeable pavers.
Under the current plan, yes, and on the original concept, yes.
Okay, um, you do, basically, the slopes of the driveways kind of limit areas where you can really put in uh the previous uh asphalt.
On the on the entrance driveway, yes, sir.
Right, could uh the loop that goes around that follows the contour near the front of the uh uh this site, is it possible there where it's relatively flat?
Yes, sir, that's exactly what I was implying, that while we need more driveway to get into the design under the the parking court on the east side in this design, we can use it in there, although we didn't need it. So we can use it, we can have belts and suspenders if you wish, or perhaps eliminate one of the galleries. I'll have to study that if it's totally in compliance, but yes. You know, beyond the the cost implication, we could use more permeable pavers or pavement on that uh flat stretch on the south leg of the oval.
Okay, and the rain garden is larger than it was in the uh subdivision proposal?
The 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 um discussions we've had throughout with the land company, we're trying to minimize the the um elevation, if you will, along the street, no walls. And so we try to keep the rain gardens as shallow as we can.
But is it, is it, I think, Mr. McRae, you meant, is it longer and wider, not is it deeper?
Is this, yeah, is the surface area larger than what was originally shown on the uh cut in the concept plan?
Yeah, ironically, I'm able to overlay them virtually the same length.
Yeah, so you really actually, so back we go to, you didn't actually compensate for the greater amount of, I think that's where Mr. McRae's going. I'm sorry, Mr. McRae, is that where you're going? You haven't actually.
I just, I know, because I wanted to kind of clear clear out, there's an opportunity to add more, which I think Mr. D'Andrea has agreed to to do.
Correct.
Uh, everything is winding up actually in a better location, which is the 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 uh soil and sand filter of the rain garden itself. Recharging because that, you know, the impervious surface, I it's it's asphalt. You know, the the hard asphalt, and I think if he's putting in more pervious in the front, he's got the back area near the uh to the north, he's kind of going there in the proper direction. The only thing I would add is if it's possible to look at any of the deck or patio stuff that is surrounding the house, there would be another another location, as as Ms. Jenkins had talked about. Uh, maybe around the 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 pool, that kind of stuff. There's opportunity here, and I think, Mr. Uh, D'Andrea, just you know, take the opportunity to take a look and see what where else it can go based on grades and uh soils conditions, that kind of thing.
Right, I have to look at, we were, again, I mentioned that we were trying to minimize the any the activity near um the boundary of the open space. But I will check our test holes and see what what availability there is there. We're not inclined to want to build any more walls, so we were trying to keep it simple over there. But in the patio around the pool, if it's of any value, we can suggest um draining it into a reservoir below and then see if we can get it out.
Okay, so, Mr. DeAndrea, you're good at low. You, I'm sure you can find ways to do to do it in lower impact. While you're at it with this, uh we we discussed yesterday uh DPW suggestions, drainage suggestions to us as well as what Stafford said in the report, that the dri rain garden that you make the drain garden a temporary sediment trap.
Yes.
Uh, okay, and that then you also following that you you do a more detailed planting plan for the rain garden for the future.
I mentioned that, yes, and we agree, yes.
And that construction, and then they make a comment about the landscaping plan versus the civil plans. Apparently, there's some discrepancy. And um I believe you did respond already that you're working on the staging area and how you're going to handle the construction phasing.
Correct. We we are, uh, we're working with the architect on that and the contractors that they've been discussing with initially, yes. We've also, yeah.
Yet are there, is there anything else the commission would like to see from the applicant when the applicant returns?
Uh, I do have a question for something right now.
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. D'Andrea, um, in terms of the grade plane and uh the parking court in front.
Yes, sir.
Um, it does the the lower level of the parking court affect uh the FAR, the building? Has that been accounted for?
Yes, sir, I had a I had a very specific um conversation with Steve Formica and Jody Couture in the zoning office early on. This dates back to um October um twenty eighth. And I summarized the the discussion and that I met with Steve Formica and the CEO. Um, Stephen and I reviewed the um issues, and then Stephen met with Jody Couture, the CEO um co- um coordinator. Um, their decision was as follows, and my question was this. If I have the garage under the parking court level, is it considered to be in the garage as long as the floor of the garage is more than three feet below the grade plane? Because we do not have three feet of fill on the driveway. And so that was a critical element of design. So the response was that as long as the floor of the garage is more than three feet below the grade plane, it does not count as floor area because it's in the basement. And the caveat to that was that the parking um court um elevated at elevation forty-nine point five must comply with setbacks. Um, um, obviously, because it's part of the structure, and the grade plane must be taken at the outside of that semi-circular parking court. So we met both of those criteria. Yes, sir. Thank you for asking.
So, Mr. DeAndrea, um, back to, I'm sorry, Mr. McRae, did you have a follow-up question?
No, I think we're good. Thank you.
Okay, so, Mr. Mr. DeAndrea, again, we're looking for you to increase the the pervious pavement.
Yes.
We're looking for you to minimize per impervious wherever you can. Looking at it, you're and Ms. Jenkins pointed that out. You have an increase in impervious. Again, the subdivision was looking for a minimization of that, so if you could work on that, and then the other things we discussed from the DPW suggestions that we require. Um, I believe that's the only comments we have for you.
Thank you.
Okey-dokey.
Just, I just wanted.
Yes, sir.
About one thing, so.
Can we lower the plan now? Or do you need the plan, Mr. Levy?
Yes, yes, so this underground garage adds an interesting complication to the uh new design. As as was remarked before, I mean, you have increased the amount of uh asphalt to the design. Isn't there a um a less geometric way and simpler way to u- use a basement area for um for the cars? Or, I mean, you have this uh carport on the side of the house. It seems like um I mean, can you just give give me kind of insight?
Yes, sir.
They felt compelled to do this in the first place and.
Yes, sir. So on the um the architectural plans, I'm gonna flip to the right page here.
Hmm, not that one. All right.
So on the um architectural plans, you'll see that the uh parking court on the north side is very functional because of the way the architects have designed it. That's the the entrance into the pantry mudroom, if you will, or whatever. But on that north side, that's where they enter towards the kitchen. So deliveries would come up. Family gets out, they enter through the the um north side, and now they're in the uh the uh living area of the home. So that's the way the architect designed it. They also didn't want to see cars outside. So they designed it to follow the contour around to go in underneath um the uh, what do you call it? The guest area, if you will, in the front of the home. So that's the way they designed it. That's what they developed as the way in which the owners would prefer to um live in their home. And we made it work from a drainage standpoint and a grading standpoint. I think we can accommodate the concerns of the commissioners relative to increasing pervious area. Um, and maintaining this geometry. Again, I want to point out, Mr. Levy, that while there's more pavement to get under the functional area of the garage where they will normally um park their cars, the convenience of the small parking court on the north is something that allows them to get everything into the house without carrying it upstairs. And we, and when you're on the street, you don't see that driveway because of the change in grade and the landscaping that's proposed around the rain garden. So from an aesthetic standpoint, as well as functional, I think they did a good job in in interpreting what the owners would like to li- um how they would like to live.
Oh, I often see these uh uh these nice carports uh used so so that they they are populated with cars. This seems as though um this is this design uh doesn't, it means that you can, you know, obviously, the so it's nice to be able to store your car inside, but but the whole idea of these carports is to have a place where cars uh the park. So now you don't need the this carport for parking anymore. It's just for driving up and around and going out and parking underneath.
It's it's a truly, the north side is truly, in my interpretation of what I've been told, it's really an accommodation to get up to that area, drop off your your groceries, so to speak, and then go back down and park your car and and take advantage of the living space that's in that lower level. So.
I think it's, it kind of harkens back of Mr. D'Andrea to uh years ago, this is, this is very much of a formal design. Uh, you know, uh, you have actually the the back of house area, which is the the uh back parking lot into the service entrance of the house, the mudroom, the uh pantries, that kind of stuff, they write to the kitchen. And then the formal entry at the front door with the parking court. So, you know, guests pull up and are there. And normally, in this case, there would be a detached garage someplace far away. Uh, you know, in a corner someplace where the cars are kept. In this case, actually, it's just underground, and so you don't see the cars, you know, you don't have that motor court in the in the uh view of the of the formal spaces.
Correct, I agree. So I'm not, I'm not a designer, but I could ask the architects to give you a summation for the next time we meet.
I think, Mr. Levy, is only I his question sounded more to me as if you could make for less pavement.
It just seems like uh there, this is a nice um in order to create lovely uh spaces, sometimes you have to waste space. So that's kind of this uh the concept seem going that's going on here. Um, and um.
All right, I think I I think, Mr. DeAndrea, you know what you got to do by just be advised that we'll have the transcript by the time you get back.
Appreciate it.
We just didn't realize we were going to want it this time. I think people thought we'd remember more. That's maybe if COVID hadn't been in the middle. All right, thank you very much, sir.
Appreciate the comments. Thank you very much.
Our next application is East Putnam LLC at thirteen eighty-one East Putnam Avenue in the LB Zone. This is to change uh the parking requirement for uh a site with two retail spaces to switch between the two.
Madam Chair, I don't, I'm not familiar with the uh names on the application, so if you're here to represent the project, please raise your hand. Oh, there you go.
Scott Ackerman, thank you, sir. Mr. Ackerman, anytime you're ready, if you want to turn that a bit, hello.
Hi, sorry about that. Thanks for taking the time. So I'm I'm Scott Ackerman. I'm the owner of uh CP Fairfield War LLC, which is uh DBA Club Pilates Greenwich. Um, it's my fourth Pilate studio, so we had one in Darien, opened November twenty seventeen. Um, Westport in September twenty eighteen and New Canaan in July of twenty nineteen. Um, and so we from this the meeting, I think the debate is with requests with respect to the parking spots that it has been initially zoned for twelve spots for its use. And my application is for fifteen. Um, so just to answer some of the questions um with respect to the setup and things like that, um we have twelve reformers in each studio. Um, so obviously, a maximum of of twelve members in each class. And just to give you some idea of where never at, I mean, obviously, on a key, and it will be, but just to give you some numbers uh for the three studios in twenty twenty-one, uh we were at sixty-five percent capacity, so an average roughly seven and a half participants per class. Twenty twenty-two, uh we did have a jump to eighty-two percent. So it's nine point eight people per class, and with that, I have one instructor leading the class, and I have uh one front desk person. We also do private training, uh but that's really a small part of the overall business. Uh, in twenty twenty-two, we average uh three point eight privates per studio per week. So it's really one every other day, essentially. Um, and with respect to hours, I have classes and the the Greenwich schedule will mirror the other studios. We basically start at either six or six thirty in the morning, and the last class in the morning session is typically eleven thirty or twelve thirty, so ending at around one thirty. Uh, then we have a break and we start again at typically uh four thirty in the afternoon.
And how much of a break do you have between sessions, between?
Uh, it's ten, it's ten minutes between class.
Okay.
Um, so, so with respect to the occupancy numbers, even if we were at that maximum, you know, where we are now, that nine point eight plus an instructor and a front desk person, it's it's really still twelve. Uh, and if we we do have those, you see those two private training rooms. Um, but the private training and and you can, from the numbers, right, it's that three point eight per week per studio. The private training typically is during the off hours because um my biggest issue is I don't have enough instructors right now. So the instructors typically will teach that block of classes and then teach a private after. So, and and with respect to estate treasures, I spoke, you know, I spoke with the landlord. I think it's in the plan if you go down to one of the pages with respect to the parking there. Um, my hours in estate treasures, it actually works really well together. They are their hours are ten to five thirty. So for the bulk of their debt. Their hours are ten to five thirty. So for the bulk of their day. I'm well, I'm not not that I'm closed. Our doors are open, but there's no participant. I get that kind of day from twelve thirty to four thirty. Essentially, there's no participant or or one thirty depending on what the schedule.
And so what you got from her was their hours of operation. Uh you heard our discussion yesterday.
I did not.
Oh, okay, you did not. So um our zoning regulations require that for every. We have one, we have a parking space for every hundred and fifty thousand cubic feet of um square feet of retail space. You need. You need your space requires twelve and estate treasures requires twelve. If a straight treasures was to move out. We would and someone else came in that did bang up business. We would, they would be noncompliant if they had given you their parking spaces. They would be. Not in conformance with the regs and they wouldn't have enough parking. So that was our quandary. You have, the the way this was done. Is you have allotted to your space the number of spaces you require under the regulations. Even if we did it based on how many reformers you have. You would you, well, if we did it by how many reformers you have, you'd be short spaces because you have fourteen reformers, you said, right? So you would then need fourteen. So if you do it on square footage, you're supposed to have twelve spaces. And she's supposed to have twelve spaces.
I have twelve, the it's actually twelve reformers in the main studio and the two. Private training rooms, but uh like I said, the private, the private training is.
But with the way we do it is it's one parking space per piece of exercise equipment. Or um for each participant in a class and the instructor. That's how the regs are written. So you could do that, but that would require you more parking. Is my arithmetic right, everybody? I think so. Um but jump in if someone wants to correct and otherwise. And so the question is, when you work with this person who doesn't need the parking. If they were to. Move and someone else came in, you would have taken away the parking that's required for that other retail location. You see the bind we have.
Yeah.
So I don't know how to solve this for you. Does uh Patrick, do you have any suggestions?
Well, I I think, Madam Chair, if I if I correct you correctly, um it's an either or statement, right? It's the participants in the class or the equipment. So if the applicant is stating that the private rooms only be used when the classrooms are not. Um then I don't think they have a conflict there, but I do.
They need twelve spaces, though, then.
In in for the large room, you're saying, right, the group room.
Right. So and they want to increase the number of spaces. Do you know, they want to take spaces from estate treasures and that's what we're saying. Why would we short? Estate treasures. And did you have any suggestions for resolving that?
Um yeah, the only uh uh I I don't have much in the way of. Besides creating parking spaces, but um the only other option I would see.
Got your wand?
Yeah, my magic wand uh would be if we um if we limited class sizes before an hour and after an hour, because again. Like you had mentioned, uh estate treasures is not open, but that would be. Only limited to the time that a straight treasures is uh the tenant next door, because the next tenant who come in comes in may. Want, you know, to have more regular hours or hours that are more conducive to their business. And then we're gonna have to reorganize this again. So. Um you know, the the cheers, we don't want, we don't want to make it work for just the tenant that's there now. It needs to work for all tenants.
And estate treasures would have to sign off that they're willing to give up their spaces, correct?
I well, I I thought the applicant said that he had that from the property owner. The property owner would be.
No, she's, I think he's just talked to. Well, why would you make a tenant nonconforming? Now, I mean, the property owner may be, did the property owner have the right to make his tenant? Nonconforming parking situation?
Well, if we if we did the operation model, it would be, it would be, uh the concept would be like parking for the peak. Where you have uses that don't conflict with the hours of operation. So, you know, uh when business is open during the daytime, there's X number of spaces needed. And in the evening, there's X for the other. So that that's the that would be the concept. But again, that's, it's a lot of um. It's a lot of maneuvering and 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 approve, you know, organizing the decision in a way that that everybody understands what their limitations are. So. Yes, you're right, Madam Chair. I think I think estate treasures would have to be willing to stick to the hours of ten to five, I think, is what I heard. And that if and then the property owner agreeing uh to the same. And then the applicant agreeing that if anybody wanted to change those hours, they would have to come back to the commission and we have to re. You know, readjust that, but that that's a lot of maneuvering.
And a little discomfort, two things, a little discomfort. I rent the locale for estate treasures. I'm mad I'm estate treasures. I rent the locale thinking I'm being given twelve spaces and my landlord changes my lease and says, no, now you're only gonna have ten or nine. Maybe I didn't need them, maybe I did, but that's not how I leased a space. Dennis Yaski, you have a question?
Yeah, I guess this is too complicated for me, but. What it how about doing a deal with estate treasures, short term, nothing to do with zoning? And that, hey, he'll lease the spaces that he thinks he needs if they don't need it. Um am I missing something or what? Has he already tried that? I don't think we changed zoning. You just talk about it. It's a it's a circle. We can't get out of it.
Okay, Mr.
I'm sorry, the the space Mr. Yaski has to be, it it we have to limit the space by the use. So the the parking.
No, I understand that, but he does his own deal.
He's before us now. You can't ask him or go out and break the regulate now. Okay, so what may I jump in and let's do this? How about Mr. Ackerman meets with Patrick, who says, yes, there's a lot of maneuvering, but there's probably a way that we could work this out. And Mr. Ackerman meets with. Mr. LaRoe, and they figure out how if this could be done somehow. And I've got three hands up. It is after you're done, Dennis, then it's Bob, then it's Nick.
Well, I'm not done. Yeah, no matter what you do, you're gonna violate our zoning, right?
No.
If if the if the if the if the applicant is going to, um if the site, I should say, is gonna exceed its parking demand. Uh that's gonna be an issue. So again, we'd have to figure out how they wouldn't do that at every hour of the day.
No, I understand, but um the the next tenant that comes in. Uh you know, you you're gonna limit who that tenant might be perhaps. Um and I think we're just playing a lot of games. Uh to help, and I understand he needs help, but I I would strongly suggest he. He just strike a deal with his neighbor and ended at that at this point. But why don't somebody else who's much smarter than I am might be able to figure out. Uh how to fit this box into a circle.
Mr. Baralek is next.
I am no way smarter than Dennis Yaski, but I but I completely concur with what he just said. Uh I I it feels to me like it ought to be possible for Mr. Ackerman to knock on the door next door and say. We we know that the rules require both our sites legally to have twelve parking spaces. We're not gonna change that. Uh but for as long as you are in that in that in that facility, uh and I am in this facility. And as long as as our hours are conducive, how's about you allow me during the day to have two or three more parking spots? When you leave, that deal is is no longer in existence because it was just personal to the two of us. It doesn't run with the land. It doesn't go with each of our facilities. And you uh you if you. Antique store owner, if it's not working for you, you have the right to come and say it's over. I need the extra parking spot. I don't even, don't even, I I'm not even sure why. Uh planning and zoning needs to be involved in something like that because they're making an an arrangement on top of. The existing rules to conform their reality to 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 what's going on.
Just remind me not to ever make you the zoning enforcement officer, okay? Mr. McRide.
Uh I think uh Dennis and Bob both had, you know, got it on the on the spot here. It's. Our 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 regulations dictate twelve and twelve. We cannot make a nonconformancy.
And we can waive them. We can waive our regulations.
Right. So as it is, is if for some reason, everybody shows up for Pilates and there's less spaces for. For antiques or vice versa, it's actually between them as tenants in the building. And like everybody said, it's agreement to them. They need to have for both sides twelve spaces. There are twelve out there. How they use them is up to them. As long as they they're changing the the approval, right? They could actually, you know, they could one car, twelve cars. You know, it that that's it. You're limited to twelve twenty-four spaces. The big thing is that you shouldn't be parking in the uh residential spaces. In the ADA spaces unless you're permitted to do so. But really, I don't think this is our purview. And you know, there's twelve, the twenty-four spaces are there, use them as you want.
Okay, I'm gonna let Mr. LaRoe go.
So I I I understand the concept and I don't have any issue with what's being struck. The issue is that our regulations. Require a certain number of parking spaces on a site when classes are being taught. So. The 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 reason why it's before the the commission is because right now. They have a retail use that requires X and a class size that requires more than the the remainder that's left. And that's why it's between. The other and the applicant was not proposing to do these sort of cooperative parking arrangements that you guys are suggesting. So that's why it's here. It's not. To bother the commission or to that we're not being um we're being too myopic. So that that's.
In fact, what you're saying that the applicant is in violation of zoning.
If they go to, if they go to more than twelve persons in a class, yes, they would be, because they don't have enough parking to support that. So.
They're not. He's not suggesting that, is he?
Yes, he is.
Yes, he is. He wants.
When did he do that? He said he had twelve people.
He said, but but his his application before us is for a class of fifteen.
And I think he really ought to go next door and knock on the door and say.
Okay, okay. Yep, got that. Mary has her hand up.
I guess my only question is. We we have tenants agreeing to something presumably with our blinking or whatever. What about the owner of the building?
Right. And that they would have to be signing off. So if if I'm hearing the commission correctly, I am. I'm I would be happy to negotiate a a a deal, a cooperative arrangement that would not violate zoning in this matter. However, I just want some clarity on a few things. Well, one thing is it would it would have to be. For these tenants. And then if either tenant switches out, we would have to be back to to staff again for any new tenant. So.
Maybe to the commission.
Right. So the property owner needs to know that they're gonna be burdened with that with the tenant switch out. The other issue that I would like some clarity on today, if we're going to go forward with that, is is the commission okay with the ten minute break in between sessions?
No, not okay, not okay. So, Mr. Ackerman, you've got three studios. We fancy ourselves experts. On classes. Okay, we have lived many painful moments with people booking their classes too close together. You have had your classes because of COVID, you have not been in a hundred percent capacity. Hopefully, as we move out of the pandemic and all of that, people will be more and more a hundred percent. At that point, our experience has been that ten minutes is not enough. Okay, um our biggest ones for that were SoulCycle and Equinox. Very busy gyms in town, uh very busy facilities. What happens is the the students all know each other after a while and they stay and they visit. Or they whatever, but it takes more than ten minutes to transition. And in the meantime, you don't have enough parking to accommodate the in and out. So we would like you to talk to Mr. LaRoe about a greater gap. I'm personally not wildly happy about the wink wink deal that breaks the regulations. Because those things come to bite us in the. Rear end or wherever you want to be bitten at some point in time. It sounds good. But they create problems down the road. A new tenant comes into estate treasures. You get replaced by someone and there's a huge argument because there was this longstanding agreement. That violated the zoning regulations and now somehow everybody thinks it's gospel. We've lived that. Okay, that's um so I would like to, as Mr. LaRoe says. If he can do something that doesn't break zoning regulations, more power to all of you. That would be great. Because that's what keeps a town's traffic. Nice and neat and orderly and definitely gap your classes ten, more than ten minutes. I know you're the guy running the business. But really seriously, we were so burned by some of these and how there wasn't enough parking over the transition. So as you get closer to a hundred percent, what that's what we tell you. Once you see it filling up after COVID. Then you begin to regap it.
Funny, I oh I mean, I would I obviously hope that would be the case. Um but it's interesting that even with, right, the Darien studio has been. Around for, it was our five year anniversary in November. Um we've. Only been this busy this year, even pre-COVID.
Well.
I'm I'm hoping that you're correct.
Yeah, word of mouth.
I think it's gonna sort of happen. Unfortunately, I think it will happen slow a bit.
There, yeah, there are also those of us who don't like reformers. So you know, you do have a specialized clientele, but um. It word of mouth and then COVID hit. You you were fortunate that you've done well and you've stayed in business. Uh. Okay, Mr. Yaski, you wanted to add something?
No, no, we beat the subject. I I am active to hear back from Mr. LaRoe, his solution.
Okay, well, we may not hear back from him because I think one of the things we're saying to him is. It since he's not gonna bust the the zoning regulations, he can handle it. We're empowering him to handle it administratively. We're giving him guidance.
I'd just like to know what the solution is.
Yeah, but.
I'll share that, Mr. Mr. Yaski.
If you're very nice, Mr. Yaski.
You don't have to be nice either.
God, technical question, a procedure question. Mr. LaRoe, how would you wanna handle uh what's in front of us now? It just a withdrawal?
No, 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 don't worry, not a withdrawal. We'll 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 just handle it as an administrative change of use application. And again. Nobody, nobody is seeking a waiver of parking from the commission is what I'm hearing. So therefore, we're gonna have to work out a scheduling agreement. Um and I'll I'll need I'll need the property owner and the and the other tenant to just be part of that. And and once I sign off on those things, we'll. We'll have us uh we'll have something that works.
And Mr. Ackerman, I'm sorry, but the and the commission hates it when I say this part. We also live in slippery slope land. In another month, someone will come to us and say, you know, you let that Pilates guy. Take away so and so's parking. Why can't I do that too? And they're all like, oh, let's just find the wink wink solution. And I'm like, no, because then someone down the road is gonna come in and wanna do it. So let's try to do it so it's legit. But so it works for you. And if it doesn't work out, come back and talk to us.
Okay.
I have a hand up. Go ahead, sir.
Sorry, from my perspective, um what will what should the follow up process?
You're gonna contact, you're gonna contact the town planner, Patrick LaRoe, and the two of you are gonna hammer out something that works. Hopefully, and if it doesn't work, you'll come back. We'll leave the application open.
Well, it would be four of us, Madam Chair, it would be both tenants and the property owner and myself.
There you go. Well, but start out with that and then you'll come. And then if it doesn't work, your application will remain open so you can come back to us.
I appreciate that.
Okay, um there's a hand up in the audience and his name is Brian Dean. Is he with you, Mr. Ackerman?
Brian's my general contractor.
Okay, so let's see what Mr. Dean has to say. And by the way, folks with this, we're turning quickly to public comment. Uh Mr. Dean, if you would, go ahead.
Uh good afternoon, everyone. Um I just realized, looking at the parking plan, that the two parking. The two parking places on the left-hand side were not identified as parking places.
No, but we did. We there's you have that um I counted them and I kept getting one more parking space than than we're had in the report. Okay, I kept counting them over the weekend and I kept not coming out to the numbers we had in our report. I saw those two parking spaces. You have the handicapped, you have the the ones for the apartment uh and the two on the side. Yeah, so we all counted those. Your humble commission did count all the parking spots. Yeah, we. We with our little thumb, with our little finger on the plans, we do count them.
Very good.
Yeah, we did. Okay, uh do I have any other comment from the public? All right. So best of luck, Mr. Ackerman.
Great, thank you. Appreciate your time.
Hopefully, you will work this out.
Yeah, hopefully. Yes, thank.
Don't you love being town planner?
I do every day, Madam Chair.
All right, I'm yelling at the commission. Okay, with that, we're beginning the public hearing. Mr. Basili, I think you're all systems go. All right, I'm assuming, yes, okay. The first item in the public hearing. Is GP Holding Company Inc. for a final coastal site plan and special permit. To demolish the existing theater and in its place construct a mixed use restaurant and retail space with a pedestrian plaza. And also to reface the remaining part of the train station. At 228 through 28 Railroad Avenue. And it's in three zones, oh, four zones. CGB, CGBR, the Central Greenwich Impact Overlay and the Coastal Overlay and Flood Hazard. And with that, all the regulars are seated. We begin with Mr. Cohen.
Evening, Madam Chair, Bruce Cohen, again representing the Applegan PP Holding Company, Inc., Greenwich. Plaza affiliate, and this is a continuation of the public hearing that opened. November 22nd. And I I'm sure although all of the commissioners will remember what we're talking about. There's a picture of the general area anyway. This is, as I say, a continuation of the final site plan, special permit approval. For a complete. I guess renovation, restoration of. The retail block on the north side of the railroad station. South side of Railroad Avenue between Art Street and Steamboat Road. I think that Michelle is probably doing the slide, so if we could go to the next one. There is an idea of the project as it's proposed to be completed. The in place of the theater, which for years had been located at the. Northwest, sorry, northeast corner of the site. There will be a new structure that will contain. A restaurant and hopefully two retail shops. Resolving in a reduction of the gross floor area of the of the site. Of the improved site from 16,000. On feet to about 7,800. So there's a really significant reduction in. In floor area. In addition, there are a number of nonconformities that will be. Corrected or improved by virtue of this change, including a reduction in building coverage, a correction of a. Front yard setback in the CGBR zone. A number of nonconformities, most importantly, the parking. Condition will remain the same, but. Not not get any worse than it is. With me tonight to to talk a little bit about the. Design, but mostly to bring bring us all up to date. As to the last few changes that resulted from the commission's last hearing is Frank Pyle. A project architect from Bayer Blender and Bell. Also to discuss a couple of the traffic issues that were raised at the briefing yesterday. Is John Canning of Kinley Horn. Eric Brains, the project landscape architect is here. Should we have questions for him? Just by way of summary, you'll remember a couple of years ago. This, a much larger version of this project. Came before the commission and on a preliminary and. What was was approved preliminarily, at least to allow us to proceed to. To ARC. The the project that was proposed, I say, was much bigger. It involved not only the north side of the railroad right away, but also. The south side, a new railroad station on the south side was proposed, some significant changes in. In surrounding. Streets were proposed with a cooperation of the town. A new larger theater was being proposed. And to do all this, we were suggesting not only an increase in the floor area, but also. But also a change in the zoning regulations to accommodate it. Although I believe at that time the commission. Had favorable views toward what we were trying to do. That arrangement was conditioned, as you may remember, on reaching. An agreement with the town on a number of aspects of the project. Including issues relating to the south side. We were never able to reach that agreement and so. The Greenwich Plaza folks had determined to come back to the commission with this. Which is, you know, has gone through a pre-application. And has has gotten numerous comments. From the Commission, Department Agencies and a couple of small comments from. From the public at it's at the last hearing, which we'll discuss with you. As a result of the time that's gone by since. We last, well, before the commission, a number of departments have had an opportunity to review this. DPW has now approved drainage plans. Project Engineer has responded to other comments from DPW. And provided the acknowledgement required by the Sewer Division. We received a favorable ARC review. Favorable in the sense that they determined we not return to ARC. But that based upon the plans that we presented to them. They would like us to return to ARC somewhere. Between design development stage and construction drawings. And we would suggest or recommend to the commission that that. Step be somewhere around 50% of the development of construction drawings. We have made numerous plans, which have been filed with the commission. To to outline the proposed. Construction phasing plan. And I say outline because. There's a great deal more specificity that's going to be required, which I'll talk to you about in a minute. We've added a number of bike racks that have been noted by conservation and also by. Beta, the town's traffic consultant. We've made some design changes which. To the buildings themselves, which Frank probably will talk about with you. Including the addition of some additional egress doors. To the platform from the north side, which was raised at the last hearing. And then. Finally, we've made a number of. Added a number of notes to the civil plans to indicate the work that. DPW had been requesting at at our, after the adjacent sidewalks. Handicap ramps and and crosswalks. I'd like, before turning it over to Frank Pyle, I'd like to quickly go through a number of the issues. That were raised at the briefing yesterday and. For that, let's see what we got. Can we turn to the next? Yeah. This is a plan having to do with accessibility. At at times when the the station is closed, as you know, and we did provide to. To Mr. LaRoe, an agreement from 1987, which Greenwich Plaza at that time entered into not only with Metro North, but also. But also with the town of Greenwich, in which certain maintenance obligations were allocated. But also it provided for opening and closing time of the station, which we've been, we've been adhering to. I think the commissioner and its commission and its comments yesterday suggested would be nice if. The hours could be lengthened. We think that would be a nice idea too, but we've got to do that. With with Metro North.
Mr. Cohen, excuse the interruption, but I'm not sure that we were really driving at. Lengthening the hours as much as that we had a concern about the. ADA access being relatively difficult after hours to. There were two issues with when the building is closed. The first issue is. That if you are going southbound. You have to go to the other side of the train station, the south side of the train station. If you're ADA. And go up the elevator, across the bridge and down the elevator. So your. Access after hours is a lot more complicated because the building is closed. So what we were asking is, is there a way? That somebody could still arrive in a wheelchair on the northbound side of the, on the north side of the station. And have it not be as big a deal to get. In so that they could get, that was the first issue we were asking about. We recognize you're not required. We recognize it's a private building that you can close when you want. But that ADA accessible bridge is kind of a hassle after hours for someone who wants to go into the city. First thing. The second thing about the hours of the building. Is that Mr. Canning has pointed out to us that it's not ideal. To have a drop off and pickup area on Steamboat or Arch, and yet when the building is closed. People are gonna come off the platform, down the steps, and they are gonna wanna wait as they do now on either Steamboat or Arch. That's the anecdotal. I don't commute anymore, but that's the anecdotal that I have. Mr. Levy is our resident expert on commuting. From the station and he will comment. He drives those, so he is. So that's what we were looking for. And Mr. Canning didn't wanna do anything on Steamboat or Arch. I heard the arguments, but hey, the people are waiting there. That's where they wanna be dropped off and picked up when the building is closed. How do we manage that? And then the other one is. Is there any way we can facilitate the ADA more than it is? We weren't asking a private building to open more hours. We were saying, can you find a solution?
Well, part of the solution, I think, would be to have the building open more hours and and we are going to work with. Metro North to see if that could be done because that does exactly. Ms. Alvin, what she suggested, which is to allow access to the to the. Southbound tracks from the from the railroad station, which I think is the easiest solution. Unfortunately, the situation as it exists right now is one which has existed for, I guess, 50 odd years. There are two access ways to the to the southbound platform. When the station is closed, there's stairs to the east and west side of the site. But unfortunately, as I think Mr. McRae yesterday correctly. Discuss the out of the access that handicap folks would have. The only way to do it is exactly as you said, and it's shown here. Fortunately. Marked in red on the bottom of this picture is are are the handicap spaces. So a a handicapped patron could pull right up to the elevator door. Take the elevator across to the to the southbound platform, not not a terrible. Access method, not not as good as going right through the station. We grant you. We'll try to do something about the station being more accessible. However, right now. This this little sketch shows exactly how it works. It works and it works well. Although it's not as direct as as we would like.
Well, I'm not gonna answer you on that point because I'm just seeing that we have the chair of the. Of the Selectments Advisory Committee for people with disabilities is listening in. And when we turn to public comment, we're gonna ask him to comment on options that he would recommend. That we consider. I don't, I think there, I don't know if another one of the members of the committee is here, but I'm seeing Mr. Gunsberg. And I am gonna take advantage of that opportunity for him to comment. Because as Mr. McRae is fond of saying, whatever we do now, we're gonna live with for 40, 50 years. And he then says, so we better get it right this time. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna just quote him and. Let's look and that's our question to you. So that's the issue. We don't wanna step on your private rights. On your private property rights, but we do wanna make it the best we can. Mr. LaRoe.
Mr. Cohen, that that agreement that you showed us from 1987, first of all, kudos to your staff for finding that in the.
Indeed.
And. Why was the town a party to that? Exactly. I I'm just trying to find the tie in. I'm not that I'm objecting to it now, but. It just seemed interesting that, you know, the discussions that we've had with this, we understand that the Metro North is a is a. Is a neighbor and a user of the property or has, you know, you guys have. An interrelationship with your client's property, but I'm I'm just wondering why the town. Felt that they or or why the town had any, you know, negotiation involved with that hours of operation.
So not only do you want us to find this ancient letter, but you would like us to tell you what the town had in mind when they signed it.
I was told that time travel was part of your services.
I can't tell you exactly, but I can assume that because this is a public facility. Serving the people of the town of Greenwich, that the the selectmen may have been interested in in reviewing this arrangement. And it does talk about not only access, but how, you know, maintenance obligations are being maintained. So I I don't know the answer, but be because this is a, I would call it a quasi-public building, not withstanding the fact that it is privately owned. It, to me, the town does have an interest in it, whether or not they care to be aboard a revised. Hour schedule. I don't, I don't know. But in any event, I I heard what you said, and this is Alvin. As of right now, the most we could do, I think, is to try to extend the hours so that everybody can have access. At a greater period of time to the station. However, the idea of using the a new drop off area at the. Corner of Steamboat Road and Railroad Avenue is something that we've asked John Canning to study. He has studied it. And he'll talk to you a little bit about that in in a minute, if I may. Moving on, there's another issue too, having to do not only with ADA access, but everybody's access. Having to do with the. The construction logistics. There are gonna be some important issues that we're all gonna have to address that will be of public interest. When we start construction, because we are going to be constructing not only. The the train station, but also the access stairs on the north side. And so. This is something that we will, we are proposing to discuss with the veteran and and with conduct. Assuming the commission ultimately approves this application and it's going to require some very. Interesting and important phasing of accessibility issues. And so what we would like to do on that. Madam Chair is to come back with that and and file it with the commission at the time of building permit. In other words, a very detailed construction phasing plan relating to access to the railroad.
Patrick, are you comfortable with that?
I I am, and and I I actually appreciate Mr. Cohen suggesting the commission because I feel like that type of arrangement would. I I would like to have the commission's input on or awareness of what that that looks like. And and I mean, anything else, I think you've heard me say this before at the briefing, Mr. Cohen, you know. Parking closures, meter closures, road or 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 partial road closures, any, if that has to happen, I I. I don't need to know the dates and the times, but if that is being considered, I think we need, the commission should be aware that those are. Things that are gonna be in 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 the soup that. You know, staff certainly can help, you know, address and organize or or make sure that we're we're doing it in an order that makes sense.
Okay, good.
The next thing that was raised at the briefing that I'd like to talk about, I think, may come up on the next slide. We shall see. It's always a surprise. Michelle?
It's already up, Bruce.
This is the next one.
The bike racks.
Yeah, it's the bike racks. So an issue has been raised about bike racks. We've got more bike racks. That I think we know, we have now got room, actually. Not only has have bike racks been proposed for the two locations on the north side that you see, we've added. Five to three, so and each bike rack takes two bikes. So on the north side, we've got a total of eight racks for 16 bikes. five to three, so, and each bike rack takes two bikes. So on the north side, we've got a total of eight racks for sixteen bikes. However, last year, the, the folks at Greenwich Plaza, because there was a need for it, installed at the location that you see on the south side, thirteen bike racks for an additional, for an additional twenty-six bikes. Actually, the to prove that they're there, I think we took a photo of them. It may be the next image. Ah, we did. Oh my goodness, there you are, thirteen in a row on the south side. And some of them are being used. They're, I'm sure they're going to be used more and more. And in fact, there is capacity, at least on the south side and possibly on the north side to, to add to, to the, to the racks. Right now, the total on both sides are, prevent a total of forty-two bicycles to be stored. And we believe that as of right now, that's probably more than sufficient, but we do have the capacity to add more. The next thing that I'd like to talk about has to do with the possibility of taking a piece off of the wall along Railroad Avenue. And there it is. Since we've, that issue was first raised in, I think it was last November. Our clients engaged a structural engineer really to, to assess the wall. And it's been determined that it was built as a part of a series of retaining walls, which show on this photo pretty well. In other words, it's not just this wall, but it's a couple of other walls, including one along Arch Street, one closer to the railroad tracks. And then what, whatever it is holding up the improvements to the top of this slope as well as to the railroad right of way. It's been determined that to make any change to any of these walls without, without considering that a major engineering effort would be, would be dangerous. And so our problem is really, and I think the, the wall itself shows on the next image. You can see that it's, it's just not easily sliceable. It's a, it's a very serious retaining wall. And I think that the interest that the commission has, or at least I'm assuming it is, is an aesthetic one, which can be enormously approved by patching, repairing, painting, and, and even there's an area that we can do some landscape screening, which I think may be shown next. Not that one, that's existing, that's proposed. And it is proposed because our landscape, our architect has determined that we can install a, a successful area of, of landscape screening along not only this wall, but the rear wall as, as well along, along the railroad track. And the final question that I'd like to just mention, because it was, there was reference at the hearing, it's a briefing about the tree wardens jurisdiction over, over our planting plan, particularly the street trees. Our plan is certainly to review all plantings with the, with the tree warden and to take recommendations for him. What we would not want to do though is to be involved in that normal post, tree posting and public hearing process, which I don't believe is really what required in this case. As you can see from this drawing, the blue section of the, of the property, which is owned by the applicant is all within their, their property lines. An easement was granted to the town by the railroad, as you noted, Ms. Albin, in nineteen thirty-seven. The purpose of the easement was, was to construct and maintain a highway. The language of the tree ordinance, however, gives the jurisdiction that, that I'm talking about, which involves posting and public hearings and that sort of thing in connection with trees located on any town-owned property. That's the language of of the ordinance sections thirteen point six and thirteen point nine of the, of the Greenwich Town Ordinance. And so our view is that this, those trees are not on street, on town-owned property. The town does not own that property. However, the commission should be assured that we are not going to leave the town tree warden out of our consideration. And I know that Mr. Rains is planning to review all planting with him.
Well, we definitely appreciate your willingness to work with the tree warden. I, we did look into the matter and the state statute on tree warden authority actually seems to give him authority over that area. So perhaps, Mr. LaRoe, you could forward the state statute to Mr. Cohen, but I think the most important thing is that you're willing to work with us. I do believe that you would be expected to follow the process based on the state statute for tree warden authority and where it is. So, Mr. LaRoe, if you want to forward that.
Sure. Well, he doesn't, he doesn't have to do that. The section is twenty-three dash fifty-nine.
That's exactly right. So the way we read, the way.
And that provision.
No, this is the general statutes, exactly. And the way we're reading it is because of the language about, about the public right of the public road. We read this as being a public road and therefore that this is within the tree warden's authority.
Oh, I hate to get into this kind of discussion.
But you could please.
Because I never win, but let me just tell you.
Yes, you're not going to win. You're not going to win. We're very grateful for your willingness to work with the tree warden. And we strongly encourage that if you would like to have a debate about the interpretation of the statute, that you consult with our worthy land use council. I believe you know him. The man with the mustache.
The mustachioed esquire.
Mustachioed esquire would be happy to discuss it with you. So please feel free to discuss it with Mr. Wetmore. But he did refer us to the statute and we were comfortable with our own read of it. But again, the important thing is you're working with the tree warden. We're happy to simplify your process. But Mr. Cohen, you know, I don't want to set a precedent for the town where an applicant says, oh, you only have an easement, even though it's forever in perpetuity. You only have an easement, so you don't have any authority. It's a dangerous thing for the town. You as a town resident would want us to protect the town. So please feel free to duke it out with our land use council.
Thank you, Ms. Albin.
You're very welcome, Mr. Cohen.
I'm dying to talk about that statue, but not with you. Anyway.
We liked, we liked what we read. I think the commission, the commission, the town planner was able to get it to us and we have. We've all looked at it and our read is yes, but we can facilitate your process. There's no reason to make getting to the end result complicated.
Good. So with that, I'd like to turn, if I may now, to Frank Pyle, who's going to talk a little bit about the design. Particularly from the point of view of changes that may have arisen at the last P and Z hearing. And then he's going to talk a little more, I think, about some energy efficiency issues that have that arise in connection with this new project. So if I may, I'd like to turn it over to Frank.
Yes, Mr. Cohen, I just wanted to mention something before it gets lost and I forget about. So the the green wall idea looks very nice. And it's a good idea. So I'm looking forward to understanding how it will how something in that place can grow. So I just wanted to mention that.
Because the one at Equinox, we've seen some that have been resounding failures. Mr. Levy's nicer than I am a lot of the time. Not always, but the, we've seen some that are resounding failures. So we'd love to know that it's going to thrive and really look as intended.
We do too. And fortunately, our very excellent landscape architect, Eric Rains, has assured us that plantings are available in this particular location that would be successful. And thank you very much, Mr. Levy, for not talking about the tree warden. Frank?
Okay. Thank you very much for saying, good evening commissioners. I'm, for the record, I'm Frank Pyle, a principal with Fire Blender Bell Architects in New York, and I'm happy to be here this evening to speak a little bit about some responses that we've made, the comments received. Some changes, some enhancements and some minor modifications we've made to the architecture in response. Here, the, just for reference, of course, the existing elevation and proposed. What's important is just to confirm that everyone's aware that it's one project, but we consider it three separate parts and three components. The centerpiece, if you will, the, the arch stone is the train station in the center at the highest point of Railroad Avenue, flanked on either side by ten individual retail lease spaces, lease units. And then on the far left side, which would be the far eastern side, the corner of Steamboat and Railroad is a new restaurant space with two spaces in between, two, two new restaurant building entirely new from the ground up. Two spaces within to replace the existing theater, which is now no longer in use. Thanks. Next. So straight to the train station entry. Here, of course, existing conditions, just to remind everybody what has been there for these, for these many years. And our proposal, which we presented last November, we received two comments specifically. One addressing the width of the canopy over the entry, and we were asked if we could extend that. And you'll see in the next elevation, that's exactly what we have done. We were also received an architectural comment as to the extent of the limestone and its visibility from the street. So if we jump to the next, what we'll see is we have extended the canopy, the full width, the building. We actually think it architecturally is, is an improvement. Providing a little bit additional shelter during inclement weather, also from the sun. And providing maybe a little bit more of a significant architectural announcement of the entrance to the station. As for the enclosure, we've also increased visibility of the signage as well, both on the front and then on either side, given the fact that most people will be walking and approaching the station, either from either east or the west up the hill on the sidewalk. We provided that signage as well. Wrapping the building, we've extended the limestone all the way back to, you can see that there is a bump out. That's actually the enclosure for the the elevator and the small niche area around it. But we've also shown that there's, there, there is fencing that we will be installing to obscure view to, to the mechanical equipment behind. So we're pretty confident that having wrapped, extended the wrapping, the actual veneer of the limestone further back to the south and then adding this the screening for the mechanical equipment that the perception of the building will be that it's fully clad with the limestone material. And here, just a few, or one of our nicer views that we're very pleased with at nighttime. And here, what you would see from across the street, and here, there's the limestone on the side. For the interior, we were asked very specifically if we could add an additional set of doors. This is the existing condition, of course, as you come up the stairs to the upper level platform level. This is what we presented last November. You'll see that there are three sets of, of double doors towards the right-hand side, being the westernly side. Originally, we had thought that maybe we would keep, we would not include a door there. Because what we've done is because we have extended the building all the way to the, further to the south and fully enclosed what had been an exterior freight area and an underused, underutilized exterior freight area. We've included that and made it more public space, creating more of a, an entry foyer, if you will, for the elevator. We didn't put a door there, but we were perfectly receptive. We think it makes perfect sense. And that door can now be actually really sort of more focused on, dedicated to people who would be coming up directly out of the elevator and then heading directly towards the platform. So here we have, we've added those, this is an additional set of doors going from three to four. Here is the south side, looking back towards, looking towards the north. The original had the three doors with none on the right, as you see. Call your attention to the existing condition in the upper right-hand corner. You see all the way to the right-hand side is former service area with a loading area for baggage and equipment that's no longer used generally by the, by the railroad. And we've captured that space and made it public area and, and added the fourth door. Next. Here, just an additional view of those same conditions. Again, we've removed the canopies above just for convenience to be able to see the building. Next. There were some questions to, to, for us to enhance, to, to speak a little bit more towards the efforts that we've made for energy efficiency and to reduce offgassing and so forth in our approach to the construction of the building. Architecturally, we have a number of opportunities for us. The construction of the project is a combination of re-cladding, actually removing all of the existing building of the, the, the retail buildings down to existing structure. And then a reconstruction of those, of that building envelope. The train station itself, we will be removing the roof, but we will also be able to enhance all of those envelopes, if you will, to a much higher R-value, providing much more of a continuous insulation. We'll be using a great deal of exterior glazing on the station itself. That will allow natural light to flood into the building, reducing lighting loads and, and commensurate electricity loads. The lighting that we do provide will be controlled, not only for code compliance, for safety purposes, but then also to enhance the interior environment architecturally and also the appearance of the building. But all of those lights will be LED, they'll be highly energy efficient, and they will all be controlled by systems, by, by a control system that will have opportunities for different amounts of light at different times during the day. As far as mechanical units, it's, it's a very simple approach. It's not complicated here at all. And it's a combination of reuse of existing units. For example, the two units you can see in this roof plan on top of the train station building, those were installed about five years ago. So they have a great deal of, of life left in them. They will be carefully removed and stored during the construction process. An entirely new roof and a new insulation system will be installed, and then those will be reinstalled. As far as the retail spaces, you can see five and five on either side of the station. Those will be some combination of, of new and reused based on an assessment of the condition. Once we get out there, they're a little bit further along in their life cycle. So I would say that at least fifty percent, perhaps more, would, are likely to be re, reinstalled with new. Those, of course, you know, efficiencies and mechanical systems improve all the time. So those will be much higher and code compliance and, and energy efficiency. The restaurant building itself, which is from the ground up, entirely new building, will be a combination of base building units that we will install ourselves, but then also anticipating a restaurant tenant and very likely a specialty restaurant tenant. That operator would come in with, with its own usage and requirements based on the, the type of operation, type of food that they are, are producing. And they would be responsible, obviously, for their own ventilation, their own safety and fire suppression systems. So those would all be installed by them, but it's in everyone's best interest, obviously, in the owners and in the tenant and the town for, for, for the most efficient and the most state-of-the-art equipment to be installed at that time. And I believe that's it. Is there, nope, next, as far as.
Just quickly, just quickly, Mr. Wells, do you have any comment?
Yeah, just a couple of follow-up questions. Thank you, Mr. Pyle. And could you comment? What is your source of heating for this project? Using gas, electricity?
It is gas. Yes.
Yeah. And then the second question, you commented that much of the, that you're going to use part of the roof for a, a green roof, if you will.
That's correct.
And I'm just wondering if you have room for a green roof, why don't you have room for solar in place of the green roof?
I don't think that there is really enough area. The initial calculation, sort of, you know, back of interval calculations that we did were that the ROI, the return on investment for the amount of, of panels that would be installed. There were also issues of accessibility to get there for the amount of mechanical equipment that would be installed on the new restaurant. What we're showing at this point is really. What we're showing at this point is really just conceptual. It's very possible that, you know, because of access restrictions, requirements or the amount of equipment that a specialty tenant might require, it might even further limit the amount of area available. I just know from my own experience that the amount of area required to really reap any financial benefit is a lot larger than I think we're able to to provide here.
And you're, I'm also looking at the the retail buildings on both sides of the train station, and it looks like mechanical is in the farther north third. You you still don't think that lower two thirds is not large enough to make it economically feasible for for solar?
I don't think so, again, because of the amount that would be required, the area then for for storage and for distribution. You know, how it would then be distributed, either going back to the station itself or to individual tenants below. I I'm not saying it's not something that could be further studied, I just have a question, sort of a gut response to the amount of area available and the type of use here that where it would be immediately applied.
Okay, thank you.
Evening, Mr. Prowl, I I just wanted to ask you if you had any information on the platform work that the MTA is involved in right now, they're going to replace the 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 structure, was it the the overhead structure?
That's right, the canopies, that's correct.
So do you have any information on that?
We had, actually, it's very optimistic. We did meet with ConDOT just before the holidays, if I recall correctly, like the week before Christmas. And they were very optimistic, they couldn't really commit to specific dates, they did say that there was money that they were counting on, a substantial amount, which they would use to upgrade the track bed and many, if not all, of the station platforms and canopy systems along the route, really almost from Rye all the way out to New Haven, I can't speak for them. What we did ask, though, specifically was if and when they, if they could possibly prioritize Greenwich, because of its, you know, close proximity to the city, and also because of the work that we're doing, it would be advantageous to both of us, both to, you know, the the transit agency and to the owners of Greenwich Plaza to do that work at the same time. They still need time to get their ducks in a row, I believe that they've organized it in terms of phasing. They have some assurance from the Fed that they'll be getting money to do this work. But what they need to do then is to now hire an engineering firm to produce the documentation, to do the actual design. I asked explicitly if we, as designers of our own station, would be able to participate in that process so that we could coordinate. In other words, you know, the design does not have to be prototypical, we can do something that might be unique with the design of the canopies and something that would coordinate architecturally with the building as well, and they said, yes, that was that was a possibility.
Oh, that's very good news.
Yeah, yeah. I can't say when, we're hoping that we can coordinate again that process so that, you know, there isn't one project, and then we have to wait for the agencies then to do their project. It would be best if we could somehow push them a little bit. We all know how that difficult that can be.
Just that you don't wait to hear from them, you have to keep abreast all the time of what your plans are and then hope for the best. But there there is, they are, they are not going to be looking out to help you out unless you make
No, but we were, we were very pleased, it was a terrific meeting that we had, both with the soon to be former Commissioner of 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 Connecticut Department of Transportation and his hand selected replacement. They were very enthusiastic about our project, very supportive, and I think they really want to have, not only to support and encourage us, but then also to be able to work with us to
Yes, but that is the point, people come and go, and you think that you've talked to someone who understands what you'd like, and then they're not there. So even though there's
Very good point.
Person appointed, you don't know what the situation will be, so you really have to have a
Great.
You have to fairly dogged in dealing with them.
Agreed.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Prowl, we've got this slide up, you had said that there was a new fence or screen around the mechanical units.
Yeah.
I see the faint line there, what is that fence made out of?
It will be steel slat, vertical steel slat with you know, a post structural system. But we've used it, I think we used a very similar system on the roof of of restoration hardware, the former post office, and that was selected specifically because Mr. Malkin could see it from the balcony of his apartment, so.
Right, okay.
We did that, we we picked, we picked one that was aesthetically pleasing, but that also was, it was translucent enough, I mean, I shouldn't say translucent, it was, it was you could air and, you know, air could move through it, so it didn't require a heavy structure, but it was a visual screen to the equipment behind.
Okay, thank you for the information, I think actually from from seeing here, I as a concept, if those machines and the fence could be centered, that would help a lot with additional additional visual screening, isolate it more to the to the middle of the roof.
You need, yeah, hold them back.
Great, I'd like to go back to, kind of go backwards here.
Before you do that, some are, some are intended to remain, you know, and the penetrations through the roof and so forth. Okay, so that that requires some assessment as to, you know, condition of that of that equipment.
Right. I'd like to go back to the to the wall, Ms. Cronin, if you could bring up those, that slide.
Thank you.
Okay, stop. Okay, my question is, it's a retaining wall, but what is it retaining above the surface of the the parking lot?
Great question.
And I guess the next one is the the landscape plan, the one above this. Well, actually, that's a, that's a good one, too. That one, I think what we're really, we're looking at this is kind of opening up a little bit to see up towards the platform and trying to reduce the just the sheer verticality and blockiness of that, the visual block. You're spending a lot of time, if you go to the landscape plan, Ms. Cronin.
Isn't this what the ARC was calling dismal?
Yeah.
It's less dismal.
The the other, the the Arch Street landscape plan rendering?
A true road.
So she's looking for that, so the slope on Arch Streets, there is a lot of you know, landscape, looks like a lot of mature trees someday, and then it goes right to the the wall and stops, it's almost as if that that slope should continue around the corner and up the street at that height, and I'm I'm I just getting back to what is the upper portion of that retaining wall holding back? And you're doing so much demolition to the building anyway. Why would it be an 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 issue of actually taking off the top of that wall? Something to address in the future. The depth of the canopy at the front entrance, thank you very much for actually going through that and actually returning the the limestone. I see the width side to side, that's greatly appreciated. I'm just wondering, as Mr. Cohen had pointed out, you guys actually own a good portion of the street there. Could the depth of the canopy be pushed out towards the street or towards the curb? So there's actually more space underneath, both in length across the facade and depth out to the street itself.
I'm not sure I followed that, you want it to do what, Mr. McCray?
So so you see how he extended it side to side along the facade? What I'm saying is, could it be actually deeper? So from the facade out towards the curb line, could it actually be deeper?
To be honest, I think a simple, simple response is is no, because we are limited by its proximity to truck height. It could, if we brought it out any further, it would be within striking distance of a bus or a truck that is approaching, it doesn't, it's hard to read from the from the renderings, but if you were to see it in plan, we are required to hold it back off of a given distance from active traffic.
Well, Mr. Prowl, what what height would it have to be so that wouldn't be an issue?
Well, what would happen is you would, it would be so high that it would no longer really be a shelter from the elements.
Yeah, okay.
So it's it's a trade off.
Serious.
It's a good question, but I I, by the time we got to that height, it would really no longer be a canopy, it would it would be an element that was not really providing much of a shelter.
But Mr. McCray, if I read your, what you're saying, the first thing is you're a hundred percent with ARC, although Mr. Cohen is saying less dismal, that it did that facade, that Arch Street side is just not great. And then I'm reading you as wanting more architectural interest in the front?
I I know, I know, I think I'm just, it was, it was the specific detail of the canopy depth.
Having it to speed deeper with more
Mr. Prowl, yeah, Mr. Prowl answered a lot of the questions that I had the last time, and actually made changes, I'm just actually going through.
All right.
I I think the openness of the of the lobby, upper lobby is great. Ms. Cronin, if you could bring the upper, the platform view again up, the one with the dotted in canopy would be great. I think one of the things I said, she suggested at the the last meeting was a visual identification of the station, the platform. I'm glad and really appreciate that you actually put the canopy in so we can actually see the limitations here. And again, I'm thinking, you know, is there something on the brick facades on the glass that actually could indicate Greenwich? You know, you coming off what platform and I am, so on and so forth. I know the the canopy may be, may change someday, but because you actually own the building, is there a possibility to put a graphic for hours of the lobby? Greenwich Station, so on and so forth, just so there's really something there.
You see that this canopy complicates things.
Yeah, let's see, the canopy is there, it can be may not even change, but they own the building, they own the two
They only own the building and they don't own the station part is part of the, that's, that doesn't belong to them.
Well, I have a question then, because that's very important, the signage. Are these these brick walls on the either end of the and entrance storefront places where you can put signage, and would that be a good place?
You could, I've done a lot of this on a lot of stations and a lot of, and and it's always a very balance, it's very tight balance between the amount of signage that you want to have and also the type of signage that you want to have, because any opportunity for signage is also an opportunity for advertising. Not that I don't want my clients, you know, to be able to benefit as much possibly financially from their opportunity to advertise. However, what we would, what we would want to do is to identify likely places, preferred places, if you will, sizes and types of signage, whether they're illuminated or whether they are, you know, informational or whether they are branded in some way. And we would want to, you know, to identify all that, and then we would want, the next step would be to work specifically with the railroad for the kind of signage, because they have their own branding, you know, they have their own types of fonts and station identification systems, and then we would want to be able to have our own that would be unique to Greenwich. All of that is a is a design exercise. Yeah, which, once, once we get through this process, we would, we would embark on that next process as a subsequent phase of design.
All right, so it would be, it would, and it would go to the sign committee at the ARC, and hopefully our signage regulations will give some guidance on that.
Yes, because this canopy is obscuring virtually everything.
But I think I I think actually that that was, that was something that Mr. Prowl actually luckily provided for us to see.
Yeah.
And we are, you know, the canopy is there, whether we like it or not, but the building definitely has some facade that actually, you know, signage could be used, and it's at a, at a location where people coming off a train will see it.
Right, and ironically, it's not even continuous, so when you get out, there's even a space between where you get wet, you know, so as large and as visually obstructive as this structure is, it doesn't provide by the protection that you think it would, so, as I said earlier, we consider this an opportunity to work with the railroad to to be able to do that.
Okay.
Right, so Ms. Cronin, if you can go back to that that Arch Street, I I think actually it just really kind of looking at that, it's the the rendering of the proposed landscaping.
Yes, thank you, I'm sorry about that before.
That's quite right. Yeah, that's the one, okay. So lots of great things happening on the slope, it goes up to a little short retaining wall and then parking lot. It would seem to me that actually if we're proposing some kind of a landscaping on the wall, I think to make it less dismal and it open up the corner is knocking off the top, top edge of the of that wall, where it's not retaining anything.
Well, it's retaining the cars from driving over the edge.
Yeah, but if you get, you know, you look at the pictures of what's happening inside.
Yeah.
There's a significant curb there.
Okay.
So what I'm saying is, yeah, I'm saying is that, okay, great, a lot of time and effort being put in here to landscape that slope as we see it in front of us. It's, let's cut that wall down, let's continue the slope around, so it's a green wall and opening up a little bit more of a vista right to the to the station itself and the end facade of the building.
Mr. McCray, is it, I I was assuming that that there, there is some risk of to the integrity of the whole wall, if you start lopping off part of it, I I and not to be the devil's advocate, but I was hoping that that's would be the explanation they provided. But I hope you're right, and I hope they can reduce.
Right, Ms. Cohen, do you, the slides of the as built, you know, the existing conditions, those two photographs?
Two photographs of the wall?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's a little bit complicated, just for the record, Michelle Cronin. We, I I tried to get a better understanding about this, so we can certainly look into it, but there there's structure in here that it it has to be this wide and at least this tall, there may be an opportunity to take maybe eighteen inches off, but when our client spoke with the structural engineer, he was like, I just wouldn't even touch it if I were you. Just because it's so integrated with the whole
It's so old, it's so old that you, any kind of a demolition would compromise the west of the wall, that's what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Yes, there may be rubble in there, it may be originally a rubble wall that's been reinforced, you know, at various times over various decades.
So question for you, Mr. Prowl, is basically the line of questioning that Mr. McCray is pursuing is very similar to what you heard from ARC, correct?
That's
I mean, he was in an ARC for seven years for, it stopped for him, fourteen years?
Yeah, and then it kicked me off.
So you have to be on fourteen years before you become a full member of P and Z, okay? So it's the same line of reasoning that you were pursuing with them, and your plan was to go back to them with fifty percent, when you're at fifty percent, right?
Yes.
I'm wondering if based on what Mr. McCray is saying, even though it's a do not return, whether you'd be willing to go in sooner and just have a visit with them, because we're all stuck on this, we'd like it to be nicer. And it is, it part of it is adjusting our, adjusting our expectations after the 2019 plan, which was a much bigger plan. But if if you guys would be willing, and don't answer me now, because you'll need to talk to your client and just see if they're willing to go back and just visit with them, because I'm hearing the same issues coming up over and over again. Everybody would like to see a better resolution, maybe you could do it sooner, Mr. McCray, are you agreeable with that?
Yeah, and I think it's actually, you know, an understanding of how much the wall could be removed physically without compromising the wall itself. You know, you've got the greens, Mr. Rangers actually got green walls inside and out, which helps, but I think it's actually getting back to that thought of dismal area, see it
Poor guy, Mr. Brett, yeah, okay, now
Not to put it on my, my clients, but it would likely require a more substantial investigative, you know, study involving probes to determine, you know, the condition, you know, and the the structural, you know, materials of the wall and so forth.
Okay, how would you guys feel, Mr. McCray, are you, are you amenable to moving on to traffic and parking?
Oh, absolutely, Mr. Canning has got the hot seat.
Okay, I didn't, let's do that then. Thank you very much, Mr. Prowl.
My pleasure.
Thank you, yes, pass the baton, and because we're trying to get this done in, you know, not too many hours. And I know we've got public comment as well. So, uh, traffic and parking, Mr. Canning? Mr. Canning?
I think we scared him.
There he is, I'm seeing him, but he doesn't have his hand in, okay, I'm gonna bring you in, Mr. Canning, maybe. I hope he didn't walk away from his station, yep, no, he's coming in, okay. All right. And we do have a, I suspect we have a fair amount of public comment, so I'd like to get to it, we can always come back to discuss more. Okay, Mr. Canning, are you in and ready?
Yes, good evening, Madam Chair, I remember.
Good evening.
Um, but thank you, Mr. McRae, for not putting any pressure on me this evening, I appreciate that. Uh, it's good to see everybody, it's good to see everybody, um, I would like to start, if I may, by discussing uh, the Railroad Avenue in front of the train station, I think we have a a slide for that, I know you had some uh, uh, questions about whether we could have uh bump outs at that location and uh how effective the crosswalk is. We did uh review the accident history for Railroad Avenue in front of the train station and determined that there were no accidents reported involving pedestrians on Railroad Avenue in front of the train station in the past seven years. And we would note that the uh rapid rectangular flashing beacon that we are proposing is a safety feature that has been proven effective at getting motorists to slow down and stop when pedestrians are in the crosswalks. We did look at the uh bump outs, we prepared this sketch, would look at how the uh the bus that operates along Railroad Avenue would negotiate at the bus stops if we put bump outs there to uh facilitate pedestrian crossings. Uh, on the north side, the bus would have to pass the bump out before it pulled into the bus stop, which would require it to push further into the drop off area, reducing the number of drop off spaces by two from five to three. And on the south side, um, we would have to create a new bus stop before the bump out because we would not be permitted to create a bus stop in a crosswalk. And that will reduce the number of uh parking spaces at that location by four from six to two. Uh, I I would point out that the existing location has functioned perhaps not gracefully, but at least reasonably effectively for the past many years and with higher traffic volumes that are now projected to prevail post COVID and post the project. So given the minimal scope of the project and the history of the current setup, we would not recommend these changes other than repairing the crosswalk and installing the rapid rectangular.
I I'm missing the point on that, why?
Because you're gonna lose drop off and lose parking.
But enhance safety?
I'm not, I'm not necessarily sure, uh, it'll be an enhanced, I mean, we've looked at the accident history and there's no accidents in the past seven years involving pedestrians in that location.
All right, we're gonna have to check, we're gonna, because.
So I think.
Go ahead.
So what you're saying is that that the crosswalk with the um rapid repeating signage uh in its its current geometry actually is working. Um, would would you attest that? Because basically people are, you know, it's it's very hard to navigate and people are slowing down.
Without having studied it in depth, uh, there there is signage out there in the middle of the street and there has been for decades. Uh, a sign that says stop for pedestrians in the crosswalk, it's a raised crosswalk, all of those measures are intended to slow motorists down. And apparently it's working.
Okay, and then.
Supposed to enhance it as was suggested with a a rapid rectangular flashing beacon sign.
Right, right, okay, and then the uh it would still maintain as a as a raised crosswalk?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
So here's my question, Mr. Canning. And it's one for the whole commission to think about. What do we prioritize, safety? Improvements that are to enhance safety in the future or motor vehicle convenience? Do we focus on pedestrian safety, which is what Beta has recommended to us? Upgrade the existing race crosswalk? Um, the addition of bump outs, restriping, resurfacing, and possibly the installation of a rectangular rapid flashing beacon? Um, do we enhance the safety? Or do we make it better for the motorist? Okay, so just, this is just a question, because that's what they're saying, you don't have accidents, go ahead, Mr. McRae.
Got a dumb question. Um, the crosswalk now, um, has got the imprinted asphalt side to side, street curb to curb.
Right.
Um, and it's raised curb to curb.
Correct.
Okay, so then in in a sense, if I pull in, uh, you know, if I'm pulling into that space, I can actually pull in it or pull off over the the raised curb. Um, uh, o- over the ra- race uh crosswalk and and pull out again. Um, is it possible, and hear me out on this, I mean, if I'm an idiot, just go ahead and say so. Could the first, first um few feet of the raised crosswalk where it's actually in the parking lane against the curb uh be constructed in such a way that it actually looks like it is it it's a bump out?
So before you go there, Mr. McRae, so what what Beta says is vehicles stopping and queuing within the crosswalk area block access and visibility for pedestrians. Bump outs would eliminate the ability of vehicles to stop and queue on the crosswalk. So what they're looking for is that their argument is you're losing the visibility. Now, we haven't had any accidents and it's been a long time, how far back did you go, Mr. Canning?
We went back to, we checked my records here, uh, I think we went back to 2016.
Oh. Well, there's two years that you have to ignore in that, right?
Sure, yep.
Um, so that gives you four, three years of reasonable data. Um.
For 2016, 2017, 2018, 2019.
Okay, so you have four years of reasonable data. But that's the question, do we have enough data, are we doing enough? This is the same issue, traffic is intensified. Um, you know, Mr. Canning, you keep hearing us talking about it, vehicle fatality per, you know, fatalities per for motor vehicle mile traveled, all of that has increased. Although I saw a recent report that it had decreased again. Um, okay, let's, let's move on and we'll keep struggling with this.
I just, let me just see if I can understand what I'm, what I don't like about.
Well, you're the expert, you're the guy who uses the station five days a week.
Yeah, so um, it's it's somewhat undefined and it's 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 a little bit um, uh, organic, the way it works and it is, you know, it wasn't kind of, doesn't look planned all at one time and it's not seamless, it's quite uh it's a little confusing, first of all, because of the 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 way that it's put together, it, you know, the way, right? The way what you're doing now as you come through here, if you didn't know the train station was there, you just pass right by it. So uh, the redesign of the facade is gonna help there. Uh, but is there anything else that we can do to alert the the car driver of uh, whether it's changing the pavement, uh, making it rougher uh, or or colors or, you know, a little bit extra signage that will formalize that that area and make people feel like they've arrived on the roadbed, not just the facade itself. So, uh, you know, what 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 things can we do that give, that really activate the the that roadbed and make you feel like you've arrived? This is the entrance to the train station and here's the place, you know, you're, this is an unloading area and a a a a a slow drive through area and a pedestrian crossing area. That's all part of the uh, uh, something that looks like it's well organized.
Well.
Well, um. Um, Beta is recommending, if this helps you at all, I think this is what you're asking, Mr. Levy, the installation of a rectangular rapid flashing beacon and the applicant is willing to do that.
It's an idea, I mean, uh, and it certainly might be a nice thing, but I, something that is some kind of strobe going off, doesn't seem to be very
I know.
A nice thing to 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 put at the entrance of 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 the train station, seems like it could be more annoying than helpful.
Where I'm a little conflicted is that DPW has, is in support, correct, Mr. LaRoe, Mr. Uh, the DPW is in support of these beta suggestions, that's what their comment says, right?
They they are, they they've echoed the 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 idea that this would be a a safety improvement.
Okay, I I appreciate the idea that it might might have some benefits, but the question is uh, to the, to all the traffic moving through uh the uh this roadbed. Uh, it might also be annoying.
If that's exactly right, Mr. Levy, and now is the point, the point that I made before was we are a car centric nation, I won't argue with you there. And I think we're all agreed that we've historically been car centric and who do we prioritize now? Do we prioritize the cars and they're not being annoyed or do we try to make it safer for the pedestrians? And that's the question, is pedestrian safety important enough right here? Mr. Canning is saying no, let's, can we move on to the other stuff we wanted Mr. Canning to comment? Because I think we're gonna rabbit hole on this one, unless somebody can resolve it, um, I'm a little stuck.
I do, I do have a thought, an idea, uh, just, I I make notes as I'm I'm talking here real quickly. Um, Ms. Cronin, if you could bring up, um, there's a slide of the facade that shows the crosswalk. Um, and while she's doing that, I think actually we're listening to what everybody's saying here. If the facade creates this kind of axis across the street to the crosswalk, but it's offset. Um, yeah, that's it. And what I'm looking at on a street view is that, uh, I guess maybe the uh uh property owners installed um uh, some sort of a bollard, you know, earmarking the 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 lane itself. It's almost as if, um, you would want to take the or rebuild the crosswalk so it's centered on the doors. Add more of those decorative bollards that they've put at the street, so it really defines, here's the front door of the station. And continue that right across to the other side of the street. Uh, raise crosswalk, rebuild, uh, the rapid signs and then additional um uh, bollards over there, it goes goes back to something I think we had said a long time ago, where we're actually trying to talk about a plaza, entrance plaza. And I think this is the kind of thing, it's actually taking the um, the center line of the facade and letting it bleed right out onto the street to say, here's the front door, here's the crosswalk to the front door. Uh, the bollards creating a defined space of uh the cur- the the sidewalk. You know, not changing any of this sidewalk's geometry, it's just kind of a a visual marker, but on both sides, that way the facade comes down into the street and across the street. I think it actually may even make it safer. Um, and I think in conjunction with actually, you're going to rebuild it, just rebuild it a few feet in one direction. So it's all in the same place and creates a a larger plaza right there, and I think that might be a lot safer. And I think actually if if as part of the raised crosswalk, as I said before, if the first couple of feet could be, you know, concrete or or look like it's an extension of the sidewalk, even though it's not a real bump out to a raised side crosswalk, I think it may it may even be treated as such.
Yes, the color of of the uh, the concrete uh sidewalk going across would be an improvement to uh what's there.
Yeah, not not all the, not all the way across, just out, you know, for the 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 lane of parking or the drop off. So it looks like there is an extension of the of the sidewalk, but it really not, it's not, it's part of the raised crosswalk.
It's the color that's that's important.
Yeah.
So how about this, um, Mr. LaRoe, might you discuss this with DPW traffic folks and see um, and put it before them, oh, what Mr. McRae is suggesting and what the applicant is saying and whether we can figure out how to move forward?
Yeah, I mean, I I would also appreciate if the applicant had some possible solutions besides the status quo, I think also, because it's a little hard, it's so hard to um uh, to offer um things when when the answer is is no or it can't be done or we we're not able to do that, you know, I I think you know, there may be some simple solutions rather than the the more elegant ones that 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 we're talking about and and we can get the job done doing it a little less um structural way.
Okay, that's a great idea, so Mr. Applicant, um, can you consider whether you've got some more ideas to discuss with Mr. LaRoe? Mr. Canning?
Uh, speaking for Mr. Cohen, I think yes.
Okay, all right, shall we go to the other, we got two, we got two, three others, the pickup, drop off, the um, and really the. And the, and you wanna, and we wanna talk to you just, you to put our, put us at ease about the parking.
Yeah.
Mr. Mr. Canning, your your microphone is a little muddled, so I don't know if you can adjust that, thank you.
Not sure. Is it better now?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Um, so, um, we looked at the possibility of providing a drop off area on Steamboat um, just south of Railroad Avenue before the uh underpass, the bridge. And uh, to do that, we'd have to provide sufficient room on the sidewalk for pedestrians to get past the stairs. And then you'd have the drop off and you could accommodate two vehicles. Uh, I've expressed this concern to the board, to the commission previously, that if you formalize it and encourage people to do that, it may become popular, particularly during the brush hour in the afternoon. And if you get more than two vehicles at that location, you'll have a car in the crosswalk at the intersection. And if you have more than three vehicles, you'll have a car at the intersection. Uh, it's not something that I would like to endorse personally, I believe that that that's potentially problematic. I do understand that later in the evening, this may be the go to place to be picked up, but traffic volumes are much lower at that hour. And and we believe that the this continue, this can continue to be accommodated later in the evening. And perhaps if the uh building is open later, it would be reduced. So that would be my recommendation in this regard, and that's the reasoning for it.
You know, again, our problem is the anecdotal one. We all live in this community, um, people stop us and they say, oh, I always drop my daughter off there. When she's gonna go into the city, it's the, it's the handiest place, um, I hear your point. Um, steamboat, it's tough to put a pull up, pull over there, anybody else got any thoughts on that?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I think you raised the point earlier, sorry, Mr. McRae, uh, that um, if the hours of the the um, the station are such where they're closed at eight o'clock and people are catching trains into the city at after that presumably, then then there's sort of no incentive to be even on Railroad Ave, and therefore those those locations becomes a de facto drop off areas or or the inducements to do that. So I think um, I think Mr. Canning's point is well taken, but I think also if if the building is open a little more later i- in the day, uh, that would probably preclude people from doing the things that I think the commission is experiencing.
Okay.
Well, so right now you have certain this 30 foot wide area uh, which would be a drop off area, uh, but what if we're only one car? As opposed to 33 feet?
Well, I mean, if you make it for only one car, somebody else, the way I view it is somebody else is gonna see somebody looks like they're moving and they're going to pull up behind them and wait. I I would prefer to design a a proper functioning drop off area in a proper location to try and shoehorn one in at a the corner of a busy intersection.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, it was a good idea though, Mr. Levy.
Well, so, so, Mr. Canning, where would, where would that, you know, is there a, is there a spot on the uh, on the site where that would, you know, could be facilitated? Because I think one of the things that I see here is we have a a pedestrian plaza off the retail. We have these wonderful new stairs that run up to the platform, so on and so forth. Uh, you know, and it's just saying, okay, how do I get to the platform? I get dropped off right here. And I think, uh, uh, going back to what we had said yesterday about safety in the streets. This I I, in my opinion, that needs to be done better, we have to do something here because this is the place people get dropped off and picked up.
Can we take away from the two lanes on the other side? And and adjust that so in order, you know, if you're gonna turn left, uh, instead of having such a long ramp up to on, uh, and because it, because it it changes to two lanes about where the bridge is, I guess. Um, so make it uh, for shorten that distance.
Sure, so, Mr. Canning. Sure. So, Mr. Canning, if you had actually more room, um, towards the facade of the building, could, could a drop, a proper drop off and pickup be accommodated here? Or is it the slope and the adjacency to the, to where whatever has a corner on issue?
The, the issue in my opinion is the distance between the narrow bridge abutment and the intersection of Railroad Avenue with Steamboat. It's a very short distance. I would like to have the, the entire distance between, or almost the entire distance between Railroad Avenue and the Greenwich Plaza driveway on the other side, that would be wide enough to accommodate a drop off eight, six, nine cars perhaps. But I don't.
Right. Okay. So, yeah, it's that corner, it's that corner where the, the abutment is that actually is your, your pinch point.
Yes.
You can't, you can't go any farther in there.
Correct, exactly.
So, if, if, if this, this particular, uh, uh, part of Steamboat had a, had a lane that would, would swing back and forth. Would that be the, uh, something that would actually make it work?
Potentially, if, I'm, I'm just zooming on my, uh.
So that, let's say that's, you know, it's, there, there's a swing lane there that after a certain time switches.
Well, if, if you eliminate the left turn lane, that, that goes from northbound Steamboat onto westbound Railroad Avenue, you could push the center line over and then you could create a curbside lane uh, for drop off and pickup. But you're obviously, you're reducing the capacity of the intersection, so you.
The intersection and that intersection, good.
It's, it's the less of an, I mean.
Yeah, I think after hours, it doesn't really matter. You want to go to, I mean, the problem is that after hours, you can do whatever you want because there's nobody out there, right? Okay, Mr., you want to go to Arch?
Okay, um, Madam Chair, we're, we're going to Arch Street to discuss.
I, we had similar issues about access.
Oh, yes. Yeah, it, well, so there was a question about Arch, uh, Arch Street as well. It's the same issue, basically. The, the abutment there is five or six feet off the curb. And you've got two, two northbound lanes. It's actually, in my opinion, a worse location for drop off and pickup because it's much busier. You've got the highway enters, uh, exits onto Arch Street at that location and people are making a beeline. Trying to get up to Field Point to go up around Town Hall. Others are going for Railroad Avenue. And you've only got a hundred, a hundred and twenty feet at that location before the bridge abutment. So it's the same issue.
Right, this is, this is almost.
Wait a minute, um, somebody new in the conversation, Madam Jenkins.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm troubled because there are only three ways to get to the platform. Arch Street, Railroad Avenue and Steamboat Road. Arch Street is, I agree, it's the heaviest trafficked. It also has that neck breaking staircase. So the two other alternatives are the front of the station where we won't do bump outs because it's going to slow traffic. Or Steamboat Road where we won't do a bump out because it's going to slow traffic. There has to be some acceptance of the fact that pedestrians need access in a safe way. And, and if it slows the traffic down on Railroad Avenue, maybe that's a good thing. And by the way, the traffic that's coming up from Arch Street, there's a visibility issue there because it's uphill to, to that, to that, uh, crosswalk. But the, the Steamboat Road thing, you are making it more attractive. When the building is locked, people are going to use that because they don't want to go to Arch Street. And again, if they're going to close the building at seven o'clock at night, people between seven and eight thirty at night, you're telling me that people are going to go to Arch Street and run up and down the stairs coming home? There has to be some accommodation for the people using Metro North. And I understand it's only seventy percent of what it was before the pandemic. But I, I also commuted in and out of that station for twenty years. And people will use Steamboat one way or another. And if it slows traffic down, that's going to be one of the, one of the costs of accommodating the fact that you have a train station in a place where it probably wouldn't be if it were designed today. There just has to be some accommodation somewhere. If it's not going to be Railroad Avenue where I think it makes the most sense because you've got a new building there, you've got to allow it somewhere else. I'm sorry, I, you know, I've, I've, I, I use that platform and I know the problems, especially when the building is locked.
And we're going to hear from the public any minute. Well said. Now, we're going to hear from the public any minute. So can we just go quickly, uh, Mr. Canning, what I'd like to do is let's talk about the parking. And then let's, I want to hear from the public, um, I, I know the ADA person has had his hand up three times now. And I want to get to that because that's the, that's who we need to hear from in the public. Is the people who are using the station and there's several people I'm hoping here. Next question for you, Mr. Canning, you've analyzed the traffic, I mean, the parking.
Yes.
And go ahead.
So, I, just to correct the record, there are actually four ways to get out of the train station. You've got Greenwich Plaza on the south side, which allows access, uh, from the northbound platform. Um, just to, to put that out there and there's drop off and pickup activity there regarding parking. Based on the code, the property is currently required to provide a hundred and forty-five parking spaces. And with the proposed changes, that number will not change. Effectively, we're swapping out a sixteen thousand square foot, six hundred and fifty seat cinema for seventy-eight hundred square foot of retail space, retail and restaurant space. And our analysis indicates that there will be a minimal parking increase on weekdays and a reduction in parking on the evenings and in the week, in the evenings and on the weekends. And that there's sufficient available parking onsite to accommodate this nominal increase. So we, it's all in our report. We revised it based on Beta's comments and I'm happy to answer any questions you have on parking.
Yeah, here's the question I raised yesterday, Mr. Canning. We know you're not changing the parking demand, but we know you're putting in a restaurant that you want to have be successful. And what we know, so just walk me through this, your point is that at the time of day when people are going to be using the restaurant, they're going to be able to park in the plaza because it's going to be night. What we know is that people tend not to use that parking. Women people have testified before us, you heard it in twenty nineteen, people tend not to use that parking. And we know we're tight for parking on the avenue. Is there any way that we can make sure that restaurant is successful by directing its users to use that parking? Or do you think when they don't see anything on the bottom of the avenue, they're just going to gravitate there?
Valet service?
Valet service. And where would you put the valet?
In the, in Greenwich Plaza, just because they will walk there, you'll drive them down, their car down there.
They'll drive into Greenwich Plaza, they'll know that someone's there. Now, you're in the town part of Greenwich Plaza, right? So you'd make an agreement with Greenwich Plaza, with the town, that you would have a valet service there at night. You might have just solved another problem for us. Somebody drives into the Greenwich Plaza parking, the valet greets them. And then when they come back, the, 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 the person can have their car back. Valet not obligatory perhaps?
Uh, it perhaps not obligatory.
But if you are nervous about being down there, you have someone who will assist you.
Yes.
Okay, and your clients have agreed to that?
Uh, I have not brought it up.
Okay, see if they don't, see if nobody, and a valet operation might be willing to do it, the town would have to agree too. Because that's the town part of the lot that you'd be using. But we tried valet with limited success on another part on the avenue. We had no success, but honestly, it was in the middle of COVID. And, uh, you know, there were people who didn't want strangers in their cars. So, okay, that one is solved. Any other questions on the, I think that would help if you guys could work that out. Anything else you guys want to ask before we go to the public comment?
Want to understand how that works. So the, the, um, uh, the car goes up the ramp and, um, at the, um, northbound part of the train station.
Well, I mean, you have a number of valet options. Right now, as the, uh, Chair has suggested, it would be on Greenwich Plaza, which is owned by the applicant. And therefore they would have the right to use it without any license agreements, I guess. I haven't even spoken to them. They're, they're two separate parcels, I believe.
So then how does the person who gets out of the car, what, are they, are, they're walking around, say, underneath the Steamboat Bridge, over to the restaurant?
Uh, that, that would be, they could walk down the plaza, up Steamboat to the restaurant. They could go over the railroad bridge. Another possibility, uh, Madam Chair mentioned that you had tried valet on the avenue is you have the drop off spaces, uh, on the south side of the railroad. So after seven o'clock, they're not that busy. You could have a valet operation there. You'd have to get a license from the town. These are options that you could pursue. And that would be closer to the restaurant, obviously.
And they would valet in the, uh, parking lot?
They would valet in the, uh, level, in Greenwich Plaza, one of the levels of Greenwich Plaza garage.
Yeah, garage.
So it's, um, I think, Patrick, this might be worth something taking offline because I think they would need to access the town part of the parking. But it's an idea because what I hear is, the other thing is just lighting down there. Of course, the town is guilty of that. What we heard the last time was in twenty nineteen was lighting and whatever. Okay, shall we turn to public comment?
Yes.
Can we take down the thing?
Thank you.
Mr. Gunsberg. Thank you. And anybody else, um, who wants to speak on this application from the public? Uh, please raise your virtual hand. I was assuming there were several people. There may not be. Because we have a lot of people here, but, okay. Mr. Gunsberg, if you would, go ahead.
Madam Chair and, uh, esteemed members of the committee and, uh, our new, uh, head of, 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 of the commission, Patrick. Uh, I have a couple of comments. First of all, the, the secondary one was when you were talking about the entrance on Railroad Avenue and the raised crosswalk and, and the, in the beautiful, uh, push button signage that stops the, the traffic. I, I found that to be an excellent addition to, uh, getting back and forth across Railroad Avenue. Uh, so that's just an aside. Uh, I am not happy with the elevator issue and the, the building being closed. There, there's a couple of reasons. Number one, uh, the, the, the two elevator solution, uh, to, to getting across, uh, from one platform to the next means that both elevators need to be working. So you have multiple points of failure. Uh, number two, the other issue is those elevators are owned by Metro North. The building is owned by the building. Who's in charge? Who's going to take care of me, uh, or, or somebody in a wheelchair that gets stuck up there when one elevator stops working? Especially if it's a power chair that's over a thousand pounds. What, we're going to get the fire department to carry people down? It just, it, the building needs to be open. Uh, or there needs to be a, a secondary motorized way to get up onto that other platform. Uh, that can be used up after hours. Uh, anything else would just opens things up for issues that we've seen in the past. And, and, and I know that things have gotten better. I know there's an app where you can see which elevators are up or down on the Metro North. I, I'm well aware of that, but it's only as good as movement in your report.
Alright, so first of all, um, access to the platform to go towards the city, you're saying very problematic to not, to have to go to the south side and then cross? Okay, and then you're saying the improvements that have already been made to the crosswalk at Railroad are satisfactory as they stand, or, or does that work?
It, it works for me. Uh, I, I don't know about anybody else.
Okay.
You know, I, I walk. Uh, I think, I'd like to hear from somebody who uses it, who has a wheelchair. But the other, the other issue is I walk, I, I have no issue getting up and down off that platform. But somebody who did a wheelchair, especially these new, newer motorized wheelchairs, they go upwards of thousands of pounds. You're in a lot of trouble if, if you're stuck up there. If you're really stuck.
Okay, so, um, but the crosswalk on Railroad, sorry. Sorry, um, it's quieter than a German shepherd, Mr. Gunsberg. So the cross, the crosswork on, on Railroad is alright.
Yeah. Yeah, I found getting, you know, getting in and out that way has been no, no issue.
Okay.
Traffic stops. Yeah.
Okay, alright, so that's an answer to that question we were struggling with. Ms. Cronin, you have your hand up. Did you want to ask Mr. Gunsberg a question?
I just wanted to respond to something. Um, I don't know too much about the state's plan. But, um, what I'm told, um, by the owner who, who has talked directly with ConDOT is that part of that plan involves putting in a second set of elevators, um, connected to that pedestrian overpass, so that there would be redundancy in the case that one of the elevators failed. So I did want to let him know that that is part of the state's plan and to work towards bringing, um, the building up or the, those improvements up to code.
Okay.
That, that would be an awesome improvement, uh, overall. Uh, who knows when they'll come and, and I, I'm just trying to envision where you put a second elevator. Having, having done that, uh, that trip more than once, just because. Cause there's one shaft and it's, uh, it's actually the width of the, of the platform and it goes down to another shaft, uh, which is a little, it has some room up on the side, but not much. Going down towards those stairs that everyone's talking about that are, that are, that are steep and, and whatever.
Okay. Alright, well, thank you very much for that input. Hopefully, uh, hopefully we can figure something out. Uh, that is, I didn't realize that, that ConDOT owned the elevator.
That's, that's the biggest issue. And on top of that, in the past, when I, when I have been involved with people who have gotten stuck, nobody knew where to find the keys to the elevator. Police department didn't have the key, the fire department didn't have the key, and of course the building does have it. So it was, it was a, it was a very long evening for, for a friend of mine.
Yes. Okay, and, but the rated capacity of the current elevator does hold uh, those new wheelchairs, the ones that, um.
Yeah, the, the elevators, when they work, it's great.
Okay, alright, okay.
They're, they're fantastic elevators, but, but you don't know when they're not working. So if you, if you, uh, parked, if you come back in, even if, if you go, if you go the opposite way, you have to go back to the other side where, where your van is or whatever. You might be stuck on the platform for hours until there's some kind of remediation or.
Okay.
Yes.
Alright, okay. Um, anything else?
No.
Okay, thank you very much, sir, and thank you for the patience. I know it was a long wait. Thank you.
Thank you very much and thank you guys for always, uh, having your ears open to what I have to say.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Alright, does anybody else from the public wish to speak on this application? This is the Greenwich Central Train Station. Uh, there's all these people here. I thought that was what they were here for. Okay. Alrighty, so, um, you've got some follow-up items on this. Uh, one of the, uh, I still think we should work the, the crosswalk issue. Patrick, is there a way that you could work with DPW and Beta and the applicant to see if there's some ideas that, um, everybody can agree to?
Absolutely, Madam Chair. I think, I think there's some suggestions that can be made and, and, um, understanding that the applicant doesn't want to impede the traffic and, and is trying to do a balance, I think.
Um, the.
We're in a, we're in a positive situation here, so.
Whether the valet issue is workable. Whether the valet issue is workable, in all honesty, we get it. We totally understand. The demand is one hundred and forty five spaces right now. It'll be one hundred and forty five spaces. But we know it's tight and. It is in our, in part our obligation to make sure that your retail businesses work there and your restaurant works there. And we know that there's an issue. As the avenue has definitely bounced back. And if you all don't eat down there, you should try to find a parking space down there. We're glad it's doing well. Steamboat. An arch. After hours, you can pull over to the side during hours. It sounds like it, you lose too much in the flow through of the traffic. Mister, then I'm jumping back now to the architectural, Mr. McRae and Mr. Levy talking about the wall. That and how that looks, us asking you if you'd be willing to talk to ARC sooner, even though, so you could come up with some more ideas. Have I left out anything on the follow up? DPW was okay. Patrick, have I left out anything on the follow up of things that we need to make sure to get done?
Signage on the glass or some kind of signage on the platform?
Well, I was thinking we would just refer them to work with the ARC sign committee once they.
Put that on the list, that's.
Yep, just put it on the list and have them work with ARC. I thought that would be handy rather than hold it up right now. Because it'll be complicated.
Right, because I think Mr. Prell, we had discussed each one of the. Each one of the new facades has a different style and has the opportunity for different signage. That's correct, right? That's what it was agreed on?
Mr. Prell?
We discussed it, but I have to say that's something that needs to be studied. I mean, it'll be something that we'll have to to take a look at. I'm sure it'll be an iterative process, but.
I think that might be a really great idea, actually, is to. I don't know if you did have this discussion with the ARCs. Is maybe in the interim, actually have just a specific signage discussion with them. Because I I would hate to see all this time and effort being put in by your design team. Where tenants come in and have crazy sign ideas and just, you know, mess up the whole architecture.
No, normally what we do, you know, for any retail development, for example, at Grand Central, there's a criteria that's. We develop and that is included in their lease that gives them the ability to do certain things within certain limitations.
Great.
Okay, one more question on follow up. Where are you guys with sewer? You've submitted. You figured out what kind of flows would work for the theater that has not had much business in quite a while and. How to compare that? Where are you with that, Mr. Cohen?
We've provided an acknowledgement to. The sewer division and whatever they need by way of permitting, of course, will do. We, the one challenge they've given us is to locate some ancient sewer lines in the street, which we have yet not been able to. Accomplish, but we will satisfy those issues as well.
Have you given them the flow data that he asked for in his first point?
I'm not sure.
Okay, as the submittal. Who was that?
I believe that we we did provide some. Information to them.
So does that mean, Ms. Cronin, that he is going to? Give you a sign off? Because he's putting that in the P and Z phase, so we don't have sewer sign off yet. You've acknowledged his comments, but that doesn't mean he's okaying it to move forward. Do we have it yet?
We have not provided anything since his last comment.
Which is dated November sixteenth. Okay, so you.
Provided, he provided comment after that, and I believe he was okay. Pat, didn't he issue comments of this?
I got, I I thought, my recollection was the same as the chairs that they were looking for.
The chair is scrolling busily through this, so the chair is not really recollecting. She's scrolling and is not seeing another set of comments.
They were dated.
On January nineteenth, Mr. Fomenola stated that the supplement. The applicant has recently submitted the sewer flow data. We requested that data is currently under review. We haven't completed our review.
So we gotta hang tight. Okay, so we're hanging tight for that. DPW is asking you to implement the beta recommendations, so we need to work with DPW to get to something that they'll agree to. Am I leaving anything out?
Would like to pursue the issue of the going back to the ARC if you can.
We asked you, we were, I heard everybody okay with the fifty percent, but it seems like if you could get some.
I'm talking about the wall.
Yes. It's a discussion of of the wall.
Would you be willing?
The signs. Because I think actually those are the two things going back for them, the fifty percent construction documents.
Yeah.
After an approval or a denial, whatever you get, that's, that's where that happens.
Well, after denial, we won't bother, but if it's after an approval. We certainly will go back to ARC. The issue is on the wall. I don't believe that there's much my client is going to be able to do on the wall, given the the input that he's gotten from the. From the structural engineer. The wall has been there since before the Ashforth family purchased that property in the sixties. It presumably was put the way it is by the railroad or whoever was that built it. Because that's the way it had to be. We don't want to start making it around with the responsibility and potential liability that it's going to take. Without a very, very thorough structural engineering study, probably probing and whatever else it takes. It's.
So what do you want to do? You don't want to go to ARC now or you're saying?
No, with fifty, with fifty percent construction drawings on all issues, but I don't want to leave the issue of the wall. Other than what we're proposing to do with the existing wall, open for new determination.
Okay. Alright.
Just to, just to respond to that, I'm not too sure what other the other members think. As you said, Mr. Mr. Cohen, that wall has been there since the beginning of time. We have an opportunity to take a look and see about, see what we can do about that wall, so it doesn't need there to be there for the rest of time. I would appreciate if anything that could be done to spruce up that wall and cut it down would be great. I know Mr. Raines had put in. Some kind of a green on that wall. I'd like to, you know, I think ARC would love to see how that's going to really work because. Right now, the sidewalk and the wall meet. There's no places to plant anything. And, you know, is the, is something planted or growing on the wall going to compromise the wall in the future?
Okay.
So if you do go back to talk about science to ARC, talk about the wall, please.
Yes, we will.
Okay. Tree warden, you're going to work with the tree warden. You're going to talk to Mr. Wetmore. You'll determine if it needs to have a hearing together. But in any event, you're going to work with the tree warden and figure out what's an appropriate path. We did read your letter. We recognize, Mr., I think Mr. Raines had given. You that comment, Mr. Cohen, that you've already, you're doing the maximum caliber, that you're using Silva Cell for the trees.
Yes.
And that you're trying. Okay, alrighty. He'll be very pleased with the Silva Cell, I'm sure. Okay, anything else that we've forgotten or anything? Right, I, those are the only open items. If you could follow up and come back to us whenever you're ready. It's a. We're going to need an extension if that's okay with you. To whenever you wish. It was a must close tonight. If you could give us an extension to the net, to the next meeting that Patrick can schedule you. And that you can have everything done, we could hopefully wrap up then.
So just to be sure that I've got the list, we're talking about concluding the the sewer division's review.
Yes.
Talking about possibly coming back to follow up on with Mr. McRae's thoughts were on the the crosswalk. As kind of a new entry approach.
Alternately on that one, Mr. Cohen, if working with Mr. LaRoe. And DPW regarding those, because DPW is now saying, hey, implement the beta recommendations. If you all can get to an agreement with DPW on what's a good compromise. Then come back with that, because we've heard that that crosswalk is working for one person. And maybe. Yeah. So, and there's no accidents, so I think we've kind of given up on the steamboat and arch. Pullover areas. So if you can get DPW.
Gotcha.
You haven't, okay, he hasn't, Levy hasn't, but. If you can get DPW to reach, because DPW is also asking us to implement those. Sewer DPW, the wall, signage, we could probably leave till you get to the, to, you know, you want to go to the sign committee with ARC. I'm forgetting something. Oh, the valet, to work on the valet, see if we can make that valet plan work. Alright. Anything else? Alright, so we'll see you when you come back?
Nope, you're muted, Mr. Cohen.
But I think he said yes. And you'll give, you'll give Mr. LaRoe an extension so he doesn't go to jail?
Bruce, you're muted.
Yeah.
And thank you for the bail money.
I I got, I heard you, Pat. We'll give you an extension.
Thank you.
Great, thank you all very much. Thank you. I think we're moving forward here. Alright. You all mind if we don't just go to dinner just yet and we do the next application on one oh nine Byram Shore so that we can. We can. Let Mr. Bazili go home?
If it's quick.
Yes, it's going to be quick. We'll talk fast. Hello, Mr. Hegney.
I appreciate your confidence, Madam Chair.
You, yeah.
Maybe it won't be fast. Okay, WH House LLC. For final coastal site plan and special permit to construct a pool, hot tub terrace, poolhouse and office resulting in a total building volume. In excess of one hundred and fifty thousand cubic feet on ten acres. At one oh nine Byram Shore Road, Mr. Hegney, if you would go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, Tom Hegney on behalf of the applicant. As the chair indicated, this is a proposal to add a dipping pool, hot tub. And poolhouse and a small office on the ten acre site at one oh nine Byram Shore Road. Along Long Island Sound. There is an existing house in excess of twelve thousand square feet, cottage. Garages and other outbuildings, and we're submitting this obviously because it's greater than one hundred and fifty thousand cubic feet. We're ending up with a total of approximately nineteen thousand square feet, whereas fifty nine thousand square feet could be built on this ten acre parcel. In the one acre zone, we're three hundred and twenty feet from where the poolhouse would be to the road. And about another four hundred feet to Long Island Sound. I wanted to touch on a couple of things that came up with the briefing yesterday. One was. Is a special exception needed? Looked back actually through the file and in two thousand and eleven, I did get a special exception for a barn, which was about twenty eight hundred square feet. Because at that time, the regulations required that. In two thousand and eighteen, the commission changed the regulation. Actually, with the consent of the ZBA, so that items like this would come to you. Rather than to the ZBA and then come to you, since you're looking at the special permit standards, which are essentially the same. And considered legally the same as what the Board of Appeals would look at. So it's an accessory building. It has to be subordinate in size, location and design to the main house. So we have a twelve thousand square foot house, a fifteen hundred square foot. Accessory building that meets the the height requirement of being no more than twenty five feet high. The Board of Appeals in looking at these would say, well, if you met those standards and you meet the. Standards of not causing traffic hazard, not creating a physical hazard, not creating a nuisance with pollution. Not discharging harmful waste, that then they were obligated. Rather than a variance where they have discretion to approve the special exception. And I would submit that all of the conditions that normally you would look at as part of a special exception are present here. And that this does warrant. Being approved by the commission. We have engineering has signed off, not just for P and Z review, but for building permit. We, I did just get this afternoon the signed letter from my client. On the sewer plans, which sewer comments which we received yesterday. And that was submitted. The other question was really from the. Conservation comments and thanks, Jackie, for putting this one up. The the oval that you see in the center between the two driveways. About half of that is all ledge. It's not just the little part that's near the cottage at the bottom of the oval. It's really the whole half of the easterly portion, which would be the right hand half of this. Is essentially a rock knoll. I did send in a photograph after I visited the property this morning. And it's, it's a meadow. The whole area there is just one meadow. Thanks again, Jackie. The whole half of that oval is looks like that. It's meadow grass. There's a shallow ledge everywhere. In talking with our architect, William Welch, he is looking to work with the contours of the ledge. As he constructs the the poolhouse and pool. Pool is only going to be four feet deep, so it's. New term dipping pool, ten by twenty foot dipping pool and. This is the rendered landscape plan that he sent me this afternoon. He is looking for including some trees in the area, some sixteen trees. And would like to have some flexibility, both with the footprint of the poolhouse and the tree location. To work with the ledge, so where there are pockets where you could plant a tree, he'll do that. And where the ledge works better for the proposed poolhouse. We're not talking about moving at hundreds of feet, but if it's a few feet here or there, he wants to be able to have the flexibility.
So you would take the poolhouse off the ledge? Is that what I heard you say?
I was thinking, none of us need to go off the ledge, Madam Chair. It's working with the ledge, so the driveway is at elevation twenty five, then slopes up to twenty nine. With a four foot wall along the driveway. And then the entryway into the poolhouse would be at elevation thirty one point five. Elevation for the poolhouse itself is at thirty one, so you're working with the contour lines moving up the slope of the hill. So you're not looking at doing a lot of cutting on it. And my my client has said that there will be no blasting here, that we're going to work with the the rock as it is. There was another question about.
Excuse me, if I may. Did I hear you correctly? It's a ten by fifteen, one five pool?
No, ten by twenty. It's ten by twenty and four feet deep.
Okay, and and we're looking at it sort of in the upper left quadrant of this schematic here, correct? And.
We have the poolhouse and then to the right, that is a terrace. And then the pool is the small rectangle.
Right.
Square being the hot tub above it.
This, this is quite a. Seemingly grand poolhouse for this size pool, right? Am I looking at, it's it's kind of dwarfs the pool, right?
It's, it's fourteen to fifteen hundred square feet. It will be used as a recreation space for the family. And so they're looking at having it appropriately sized. You can see the other buildings, the cottage just to the south of that. Which is about eight hundred square feet. The garages are also in the eight hundred square feet. Area. This is very much a family compound that has been developed here, working with the land, having a. Uh, working with the land, having a, uh, uh, using a lot of natural landscaping as part of it and having also manicured areas.
Well, I think the reason there was some discomfort, uh, a couple of people made comments about the size of the pool house yesterday. Uh, first of all, you start out with the zoning enforcement officer mentioning that the kitchenette doesn't really comply with. What it's supposed to be, with the wet bar. And then it's just the size and what it contains that it's really. A dwelling. It looks, it sure looks a lot. And I think that was just, wow. Fifteen hundred square feet is a lot.
Yeah, we, we do have a dwelling. We have the main house, but we do have a dwelling, which is the cottage, which is, is just below, uh, to the south. Of the proposed pool house. That, th- this is very much a recreation facility. Uh, for, uh, the, the children of the family.
But it's twice the si- it's twice the size of the cottage. Am I right?
Yes. Well, roughly. Yeah, the cottage is about eight hundred square feet. This is fourteen to fifteen hundred square feet.
So is that. Right, as a, as a recreation space, we've got the, the pool changing area, walk-in shower, a full bath. Then inside that or adjacent to that pool bath use. We have a viewing room, an office, another full bath, a kitchenette, that kind of thing. I, I guess i- in a sense then, i- it's ten acres, Mr. Hegney?
Yes.
In a one acre zone?
In the one acre zone, yes.
Right. So I guess, I, I, I think, I guess in our regulations would allow. Um, separate, separate, um. Residences subservient to the building because you have the acreage?
Ye- yes, you could have, uh, accessory dwellings, uh, because you have ten times the area that's required. Required per dwelling. So it would be permitted and I've done that in a number of properties around town over the years. We are not looking to have this as a dwelling. The, the note, the notation of the wet bar by the, uh, zoning enforcement officers is, uh. Uh, is something that we will be, uh, yes, we, we will be modifying the plans to reflect that.
And the cottage is a true guest cottage?
Yeah, that, that has, that does have a kitchen and it is considered a dwelling.
Well, and zoning wise, if you wanted to do it as a dwelling. You could, right?
True.
So.
That, that is not, that is not the intent.
So from a zoning point of view, the location isn't right though, right, Mr. Hegney? But if you wanted to do it, this is kind of like just going through what our regs do for everybody. If he, if they wanted to do three dwellings, since they have ten acres, they could.
True.
Yeah, they could do ten. Right?
Yeah.
Ten, ten separate dwellings because it's a ten acre lot.
Are they limited? Does anybody, uh, does, uh, Mr. Hegney, you used to do, you used to be on the commission. Uh, are we, are. I, I didn't think, I thought there was a limitation on how many dwellings and how they're located relative to each other. I gotta look it up.
There, there is a requirement that you must be twice the side yard setback.
There you go.
Separating them. So here, in that case, it would be fifty feet here.
Yeah, so there is some limitation, but in any event, they could do this and, um. Mary, but that's a discussion that, you know, just to your A D U discussion. Okay. Um, what else, folks? We've got, um. We had. We had the question on the. Accessory structure, we have to say that it's okay for it, for it to be as large as it is. Um, sewer, the only thing that they wanted done now. Is the acknowledgement of the comments. There's a permit from two thousand and eleven that needs to be handled, but they don't care if that's done. They're fine with that being done prior to permit. Z E O, they have to fix. The kitchen. Uh, drainage, um, is signed off, except they're asking for a more detailed plan for the rain garden.
Yes, I would like to be able to provide that as part of the zoning permit sign off, Madam Chair.
Um, okay, we would have staff review it then. And then I'm trying, and then you had a question about that tree, the other thirty-eight inch tree. Hold on, I'm going back to. Conservation came in later. Conservation had a comment. On that.
That is just above where the rain garden is shown. Um, it's the tree right above that and it is a magnificent tree. And my client will take whatever steps are, are necessary to preserve it.
Okay, so what, one of the things that puzzled me was DPW drain, I didn't call you out on the fact that. The rain garden planting wasn't shown and yet, um, Ms. Mock points out that you don't get credit for it unless you've got the planting plan.
Uh, the, this was reviewed by engineering, uh.
Yeah, and they're fine.
The civil engineer, uh, had shown the, uh, soil mix that's required. Uh, to qualify it as and have it function as a rain garden.
Got it.
Um, and we're, we're happy to provide planting.
So what you're saying is that DPW was okay with it because the soil is going to work?
Correct. And, and the test hole that was dug, uh, and talking to Bob Smarslack, our civil engineer on it, he said. It was like septic material. It was, uh, sand and bank run gravel. He thought it was. The ideal spot to put the rain garden. He was, he was very pleased with the results.
I take it back. They approved you for building permit, DPW, but they do want. They do want you to do a detailed plant, planting plan. And then the other thing was the construction staging area.
Yes, I talked to the architect about that. There are two paved areas. One is a pull-off. Just, uh, to the west of what, uh, the, where the cottage is. That can be used as a staging area and also the parking court over near the garages. That would be used as the other staging area.
Alright, now coming back one more time and. There's. I, I don't understand this, this whole thing with deep.
Uh, I was puzzled by Mr. Goucher's comments that, I, I have not. Had that kind of question come from him before. It's usually a question that comes from the, the town engineer. And of course, uh, we do have the sign off from, from engineering. So I'm, I, I'm not sure quite where Mr. Goucher was going on this and again, we're. Almost four hundred feet from the water with this rain garden.
It's, it's a kind of an odd thing, Mr. Hegney, uh, cause it, it's. He's commenting on, uh, January twenty-third. Right, yeah, January, uh, twenty-third, uh, in his email, um. And then the line is, I suggest that you wait for town engineering report before you decide how to move forward. But, uh, engineering was on the eighteenth.
Exactly.
And it kind of signed off on everything. So. Ticking a neck, I think actually, as I see this, John Goucher may have not been, um, apprised of the situation with engineering. Um, he, he's kind of saying the same thing that they were saying, but I think it's been resolved by engineering itself. So at least that's how, that's how I read it.
May I, so I, maybe what we should just do, Mr. Hegney, is suggest that you co- you contact deep. Um, and advise them that there is engineering sign off. And we will just ask you to do that and that, um, deep would then advise us if they have any further questions or comments. Is that a good way to do it, Patrick?
Or staff can do it, Madam Chair. I, I think.
Okay, great. And you guys, you guys will write Goucher and say, hey, we do have engineering sign off. Um, we gave you the additional information. You've got the additional information. We did have engineering sign off. Um, please let us know if you have a problem and. Because if he's got a problem, we'd have to do something different, right?
Well, his, his jurisdiction is, is not, we, we don't. If, unless he says it, it's not consistent with the, the coastal area management.
With Cam.
He's, he's not, he's not going to that point.
Okay.
A warning question, so I wouldn't.
This is all in the X zone.
Right.
Not anywhere near the coastal jurisdiction line.
Yeah, the, the whole thing was a little puzzling to us. Okay, um. Now, back to the pool house and, and the outcrop, the rock, the, the stone outcropping. Is everybody okay with what Mr. Hegney has suggested?
Yeah, he's gonna, yeah, it's a little bit of wiggle room at like six feet or fifteen feet. What I just, I want to make it. Make sure he's not sliding things around all over the place here. Okay, it's a, it's a couple of feet in either direction, Mr. Hegney. That's what's contemplated.
Yes, yes, we're not looking to move it from the location that's proposed here. We think it will work with the contour lines, but there may be, uh. Spikes in the, the, uh. Uh, in the ledge that we may want to move it one way or the other to adjust for that.
Huh, I'm just, I, I, well, maybe he's following up. Okay, alright. Okay, anybody else have any questions or comments on this application?
I was just curious about the, uh, the rain garden. It says inkberry plants and twenty percent mix of English ivy. So that's ground cover.
Not happening.
Uh, that, that was, uh, my architect, uh, playing landscape architect and we'll have the landscape architect put that plant together.
Oh, let's not do English Ivy, okay?
Understood.
Uh, we've got Ms. Pruitt listening. We're gonna have Ms. Pruitt review your rain garden, okay, Ms. Pruitt? She's not answering us. Did you fire her? I'm not seeing her.
No, no, she, she gave you a thumbs up.
Thumbs up. Okay, so Ms. Pruitt, you make the call. And, uh, let me just ask the public, does anybody wish to comment on one oh nine Byram Shore Road? One oh nine Byram Shore Road. Any members of the public wish to comment? No comments. Okay, um, commissioners, um, what would you think of closing this application? Does anybody?
Don't see we have anything that's still outstanding, other than things that your staff is going to verify.
Right, the rain garden deep. Um, somebody should take a look at the final position of the pool house, um. Uh, the tree protection for the, for the, um, thirty-eight inch tree. That it be in place, construction phasing. What am I missing? There's a big one I'm forgetting.
Special exception.
The special exception that, um, the excess of eight hundred feet is okay.
Staging of the sole and, and so on erosion plan.
Staging, staging, that's what it was. I was forgetting about the staging plan. So, yeah, all of that can be done. And, and Jackie to review, staff to review the, um. To reach out to deep and to review the, the detailed planting plan for. The rain garden. And since DPW has signed off, I think only our staff needs to look at it, right?
Yeah, I have no issue with that. Yep.
Yep. Okay, and, and I think Mr. Wells is fine with the E Mac report. Okay, Miss. Okay, alright, so if no one objects to closing the application, it is therefore closed. Alright, application is now closed. Thank you, Mr. Hegney. And, uh, goodbye, Mr. Bazili. We're gonna let you go home. We'd like you to note that it's seven twenty-three P M.
Oh, thank you very much.
Enjoy your dinner. Alright, everybody. How long a break do you want?
Next time.
Twenty.
Twenty, seven forty-three. We reconvene. See you guys. Be there.
Pat, do you have that PowerPoint?
I do. I do. It's the second page of the one and the thing.
Yeah, I didn't. Download it because I saw you threw it up there faster.
It's okay.
Seven forty-three.
Yes, ma'am.
Two mice on this computer. There we go. Perfect.
Not real mice, hopefully.
Okay, I'm still souping. Hi, guys. Did everybody eat?
A little bit.
You know, it's funny, we used to just muscle our way through. Till two o'clock in the morning. You remember those days, Peter Levy? We used to just show up and muscle our way through and it was, we'd start at seven and if it was two, three o'clock in the morning and now. Gets to be seven o'clock and I'm like, oh, dinner time. It's amazing how you get, how you lose your toughness once you have the soft life.
Here's to the soft life.
Here's to the soft life, right? Uh, we got Tom Hegney back, huh? Of course we do. Alrighty, and we have. We have, we have. We have a full commissioner. We're missing Arn. Alrighty. We're just gonna wait, give Arn a minute, okay? Cause he's normally very punk to all. Is it still cold in Florida, Bob?
Uh, not as cold. Although the. Poor landscaper guy came out today and told me how many of my plants were gonna die because of how cold it was. That was good news.
Really? Wow.
That's what he said.
How cold did it get?
Oh, I, I didn't think it was that cold. I thought it was cold last winter and they survived. Talk about tough, right? Talk about.
Is this a legitimate effort to engender sympathy?
No, it's an illegitimate effort.
So, I, I, Bob, I wa- I was, I was directing my comment to our chairperson. Anyway.
Oh, you mean because I'm saying that here we are in cold, knowing, no, it's not that bad though. It's what, it's dirty. Could be worse. Okay, Arn is here. We now turn to our discussion items. Uh, the first one is the Greenwich Library for a pre-application review. Pursuant to section six thirteen through seventeen, et cetera, of the Town of Greenwich Building Zone Regulations, Mr. Hegney will be presenting, uh, this is for the Cos Cob Library, which is at five. The address is five Cinaway, which I. Know I should have known because you said it's the front yard. But I never knew it before. Alright, Mr. Hegney.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. For the record, Tom Hegney on behalf of the applicant. I, I am here on behalf of the library, but I am no longer president of the Board of Trustees. I am, uh. Uh, just performing as my pro bono service, uh, for the library system. Uh, you all know where the Cos Cob Library is. But although its address is five Cinaway, its actual frontage is on, uh, suburban avenue. Because it does not front on, um. On Cinaway, which is sort of an interesting thing because you all think. Everyone thinks that it has frontage on Cinaway because you drive through the municipal lot. To get to the, uh, uh, the library parking lot and, and the library itself, so, uh.
No, I always started running down the post road. Okay, I never had any idea. Okay, go ahead.
That, that would be the firehouse, Madam Chair. Uh, so the, the library was built in the late eight, uh, seven, uh, late nineties. It's a single story building, uh, approximately fifty-four hundred square feet. Uh, it has mechanical systems that need to be upgraded and replaced. Uh, we need to reallocate space and for various programs. Uh, and we need to enlarge the, uh, community room. Uh, that's, uh, that and providing some outdoor program space, uh, under a trellis. And providing some storage, uh, that's, that's this program. Uh, the Board of Trustees, uh, through its Building and Grounds Committee, started this process. Uh, around the time we were wrapping up the eighteen million dollar renovation of the main library. And thought that, uh, we would look through staff and through the, uh. Uh, members of the, uh, Cos Cob friends, uh, to see what we could do here. Uh, this is an eighteen thousand square foot. Uh, this is an eighteen thousand square foot parcel. It's a bit tight. Uh, and we were looking to see how we could better utilize the space, uh, at the library. We hired, uh, or the affiliate grounds committee hired, uh, Michael Tribe of Peter Giussafi Associates. He had been our lead architect on the renovation at the main library. He was also instrumental in the addition to Byram Schubert. More than ten years ago now. Seems time flies when you're doing that. As part of the renovations to the main library, uh, we were able to completely redo the theater. We have added large and small meeting rooms, study rooms, cafe, uh, large reading room. Uh, all at the, uh, at the main and, uh, uh, this branch in Cos Cob and the branch in Byram are, are not meant to be full libraries. These are branches and we have one main library. It's a hundred thousand square feet and provides all the services that you would want in a library. And that in response to comments from the public in, in terms of developing that program, uh, we're looking for meeting spaces, uh, and different sized spaces for either performances or, or presentations. So, uh, this dovetails with that. We, we had looked at, uh, increasing the size of Cos Cob and, and renovating it, uh, before we started the renovations at, at Maine. And, uh, put that aside until we had finished and so see what we had and how that could be used. Because we had the pandemic coming, uh, in between there, which has obviously affected, uh, how the library's been able to function. We looked at, uh, a couple of different ways of dealing with this. Uh, it's a single-story building. Uh, we asked the architects and their structural engineer uh, to look at what could be done in terms of utilizing a second floor. And given the construction, uh, we were advised by the structural engineer that adding a second floor was not something uh, that would be feasible. And that's part of what brings us to asking for the relatively small uh, storage compartment on what would be the upper right hand corner of, of the, uh, the plan that, uh, Jackie has put on, uh, the screen. This also shows on the left-hand side, uh, the addition that we're proposing. Uh, it's a forty percent increase of the, uh, community room. Uh, so it would go from five hundred to eight hundred square feet. Uh, it is comparable in size with that addition, uh, to the community room that we have at, at Byram Schubert in, in Byram. We, uh.
Mr. Hegney, just a question. You said, when you remodeled, uh, I'm assuming that you mentioned the the work on the main library for a reason. When you redid the main library, you added meeting rooms and facilities there. How does that affect how you developed your plan to do this at the Cos Cob Library? Just to be clear.
I, I, I appreciate that question, Madam Chair. Uh, the, the main library is to serve all residents in the town with different needs and, uh, and, and different uses. Though, though, note that the surveys that we did, uh, both in person and, and, uh, through internet services found that meeting space was at a premium in town. Before this, uh, even the Planning and Zoning Commission would have difficulty finding a, uh, meeting space at times, uh, in the town hall. Um, and so we developed, uh, all different sized meeting rooms. They, uh, they can be as small as, uh, for six people and for as large as forty. And, uh, that, that has been something that, uh, the, the public has said they want. Uh, it's not something you're necessarily gonna have at a branch. Uh, you're not going to have meeting rooms. You wanna make sure you have a proper collection, uh, that it serves, uh, the, uh, the users and the patrons that come in to the library. Uh, you want to make sure that you have some computer terminal space, uh, for people who bring their own or, uh, that don't have their own and, and need, uh, computers. Uh, and you want to be able to have some community room for people to gather, uh, if it's, uh, a local issue, uh, that they want to, uh, to get together with, so.
So you're saying in working, in working on the, the central library, you looked at the central library as providing issues that were cross, that were townwide, meeting space for townwide issues and general meeting space. Um, what about, uh, so and then you, that the Cos Cob Library would meet local needs as well as, um, for the youth program, the children's program, I imagine?
Yes, and, and that's part of why we're looking at having the, the trellis and the patio outside for conducting uh, children's programming, uh, when it's appropriate. And all of this comes about through working with our own staff and, and the, uh, branch manager uh, at, uh, at Cos Cob, uh, and seeing what the needs are, uh, whether the, uh, uh, collection, uh, can be, uh, reorganized, uh, to be more effective to those, uh, to, to provide what the public is, is looking for on an immediate basis. But also, uh, it's all part of one library system. So if somebody needs a book in Cos Cob, uh, they don't have to go to the main to get that book. The, it will be delivered to Cos Cob and they can pick it up there. So there isn't the need to have the hundreds of thousands of volumes that we have at Maine in each of the branches. I don't have to replace that, uh, everywhere. So, uh, uh, we, as you can see on this screen, we have the three hundred square foot addition to the community room, uh, the, uh, uh, the, the two additions to the east side along, uh, suburban that we're, are going to present to the Board of Appeals tomorrow night, uh, the shed for storage and the open trellis with patio. Uh, what we also are doing here is, uh, changing the, uh, how the parking lot works because by adding the three hundred square feet over the parking lot, uh, we were going to lose one parking space. Parking always being, uh, a premium, uh, we eliminated one of the drives so that you have a two-way drive-in off the municipal lot. Contain the thirteen parking spaces that are on site now, along with maintaining the handicap space closest to the building. The other benefit that we have by making that change in the configuration is that we add one more space in the municipal lot, uh, that we can, uh, then fill in. I thought it was gonna be two, uh, but, uh, Redness and Need told me that, uh, uh, given the fact that we have to have the two ten, uh, wide parking spaces at either end, that it was not something that, uh, that would work with two spaces, but we have added one.
So if I could just clarify, clarify a couple of things again, Mr. Hegney. First of all, the alternatives that you looked at, you looked at whether you could go to a second floor and that wasn't structurally feasible. Um, and what you knew is that you needed the space in the community room, that you definitely needed a larger local meeting space. Uh, when I've heard people talk about the Cos Cob Library, they say, you know, it's chock-a-block with programs. It's very full and that it is square footage is too small for the size of the area that it serves. What I'm hearing you say is if I was to take the total available square footage of Central Greenwich, Byram Schubert and Cos Cob and add them together and look at the service area that they have, you would have enough square footage relative to national standards or whatever standards are used?
Actually, in excess, I believe, on those standards, it would be for a population of about a hundred thousand.
So we have, and that's excluding Parrot. I was leaving Parrot out of it because it's not officially part of your system, but technically it is. So, um, as, so you're saying you have enough, if you look at the aggregate facility, facilities, to serve the needs of the entire community and you're just going to sort it out differently?
Well, that, that's, that's true. You, you do want to have on the local level of the community space. And that has been something that has been an issue for a while. We also looked at just reallocating the space within the building itself, uh, to create a larger, uh, uh, community room. And that would have taken some of the space, uh, uh, near where the, uh, uh, circulation desk is, uh, taking some of the storage away. Uh, so we did look at just working within the skin of the building itself and thought that, uh, we were giving up too much space, uh, that wouldn't be used, uh, all the time necessarily as part of the community room. And, uh, and this would allow us to be able to, to do that with this modest addition.
But just to go back, so the, it, not that this is a rezone or a reason to cite the P O C D, but as the Commission thinks about this, this use, guiding principle six to provide the best quality infrastructure and municipal facilities and cultural institutions. What you're saying is if you take all the square footage that we have of library space today and you are rational in your use of it, you, you are more rational in your use of it, we exceed, we far exceed the standards that one would have for a community?
Yes, yes. And, and frankly, uh, Greenwich Library is, uh, one of the busiest libraries in New England. I think that at one point it was only Boston's Public Library, out of public libraries, uh, that was busier. Uh, we have facilities that, that people in town want and use to a great extent. And that was the reason why we spent, uh, the eighteen million dollars on, on the main, uh, library. Uh, adding only frankly, a, a few hundred square feet, not, not much different than we're adding here. But we're able to reconfigure it in a different way, uh, to be able to get, uh, more activities out of the space uh, than, than existed previously.
So reconfiguring existing space so that it is more rational and meets both local and both the neighborhood needs as well as the full town needs is where your focus has been?
Yes, and, and that's really what we're trying to do here, too.
Okay.
Uh, we, we are, uh, we are reconfiguring space. We're looking at shelf space and, and how that can be, uh, can be modified. Uh, and that worked, I have to say, very, very well in the children's room on the third floor, uh, at the main library. It also worked well in the, uh, in the business, uh, section in the, the Peterson Way, uh, at the main library. So, uh, we're, we're looking to carry those same concepts, uh, to Cos Cob and utilize them to provide for better utilization of the space we have here.
Okay, all right.
I, I did want to touch on a couple of things. Our neighbors immediately to the north, Mr. and Mrs. Green, uh, I know sent, uh, an email in, uh, they're one of the people that we've been, one of the, the neighbors we've been talking to, uh, uh, as part of this, developing this plan. Uh, they are concerned about, uh, uh, security and, and having proper screening and, and a potential flooding. Uh, those are all issues that we have been talking about uh, with our architect and with the, uh, staff at the library. Uh, and when we come back to you with the, uh, with the act, actual application, uh, we'll be, uh, addressing those and continue to work, uh, with our neighbors on it.
One of the letters that we got, um, objected to the fact that you're gonna need the front yard variance for the storage shed.
That, that's true, but for both that and the trellis and the patio, uh, and we, that's why we submitted a, uh, variance, uh, application to the zoning board of appeals. And, uh, uh, my thought in submitting this is that although it's the front yard for zoning purposes, it's really the rear yard for the library. Uh, because the library faces both the municipal lot and, uh, Sineaway. Its address is Sineaway. Uh, and we, I, I think with proper screening, uh, and, and security, we can, uh, utilize this space. That this is a small lot. Uh, we have a lot going on here. Uh, we think that this space, which is not really utilized much at all right now, uh, can, can be utilized, uh, appropriately. There are three, I'm not sure I'd call them trees, but they're either large bushes or small trees, uh, that are in that area. And we will be working with our landscape architect uh, to, uh, come up with, uh, replacements for those. Uh, some we may look to put on the municipal lot. We'll work with our tree warden, uh, to, uh, to see whether and where that's appropriate.
And at this point, you would be following the new landscape regulations?
Yes, yes.
Which have, which are specific to parking lots, have a specific area, specific for parking lots as well. Okay. All right, so the, and your argument just here on the shed is that you really can't locate it anywhere else, correct?
True. This, it, it, it is a tight site. Uh, we do have landscaping in the, what would be the northwest corner or upper left-hand corner near the parking lot. And of course you have, uh, uh, patio and, and sidewalks, uh, in, in front of the, uh, the, the main door of the library.
To me, what's in the shed?
Uh, it would be, well, that's a good question. Uh, I didn't actually ask that. Uh, I was told that there was always a need for, uh, a good deal of storage. I don't know if, uh, Joe Williams, the, the, let's see, the board.
Hand is up, hand is up. Wait, Joe Williams, come back.
His board meeting started at six thirty, so if, uh, the new president has moved it along well, uh, Joe will be, uh.
Who is the new president? Is that?
Peggy Call is the new president of the.
Okay, hello, Joe Williams.
Hello. How are you?
Okay, so the storage shed.
Yes, that's a combination of, uh, materials that can weather well, that can, uh, stay outside, that are used for, uh, programming within the branch, uh, and also for materials for facilities, which is needed for the maintenance of the branch. So it would be a combination of the two.
Okay. I mean, I've seen you have easels out for the children's things or something, those kinds of things.
Things like that. It's, you know, a random, uh, it could be random brick of brack as long as it's good for, um, exterior storage.
Mr. Williams, uh, there's an existing, uh, structure now that you're using for storage. Why can't you expand in that area?
Well, that's actually to Mr. Hegney, I think. Mr. Hegney?
Uh, that, that is very tight to the property line, Mr. Levy. Uh, I suppose we could look at, at doing that, uh, in that area. It's, uh, we could blow it up just a little bit more.
Yeah, I'm really blurry on mine. This is the one that's super blurry.
This is the, the Redness and Need survey.
Right, the one I'm looking at is in blurry and so it's about three and a half feet off the line.
It says existing shed to remain.
Yeah, three and a half feet off the line and it's actually, there's a fence there on, on the property line too, so it's probably, probably less than that.
Yes, yeah, that's, that's the area, Mr. Macra.
And there, there's windows on that side, I think?
Well, or the alternate thing is possible, which is get rid of the existing shed. And boy, if you added six inches width to the proposed one, you would be good because that existing shed looks tiny.
It is very small.
So that might be.
The other way around, where, you know, uh, I, you know, this, this, um, patio area is along the street and, uh, and there's a sidewalk there, I think. Um, and the idea of having a, a shed in the front yard, I, I just don't think it's a good idea, but and if, if you could put it on, along the side of the building, it just makes a lot more sense.
Well, the other thing is there's shed and shed. If you could make it look nice. I mean, I'm assuming you're not gonna do one of those.
It would, it would be better not to have to do that.
But I'm thinking if the Greens have a problem, why not take out? Why not take out what's intruding into that space behind the library? So that they can do better, so Mister, so the, the library can do better screening across the back.
Well, I don't see why you can't put the sheds further away from the building back in the parking lot, I mean, there's, there's, there's plenty of space there.
Cause it's not ours, not theirs.
No, it's part of the property.
These spaces.
I'm not sure there's really room in the parking lot itself.
They can't give up the parking, Mr. Levy.
No, not in, there's, if you, if you look at the parking, you have the part, you have, as you come into the lot. There's parking on the left and parking straight in front and parking on the right, so there's a nice big square of open space that's cut out. You can put a little, a, a structure there.
In front of the library?
No. No, no, this would be, as we're looking at this plan, it should be in the upper left-hand corner of the, the property. There's a, a green space area, it's kinda, it's a landscape. I think the only thing with that, with Mr. Levy is that, that that corner has provides screening for a neighbor.
Yeah.
On. What's the difference? Screening on, on the suburban avenue or you do the screening over there in that corner, I, I just don't see the difference. It's a, it's a distinction without a difference. So it, it's just makes a lot more sense to put, put the, the structure back there. And it would help with the screening, actually. So I, I, I just don't, I don't think that putting it on the street is a good idea.
Well, Mr. Hegney, you're gonna go to the A R C with this.
Yes, we will be going to A R C.
So why don't we suggest, Mr. Levy, why don't we have Marissa pass on to the A R C that at the pre-app, the commission questioned whether the, whether this was the least obtrusive place to put the storage shed. I, I would also say to you that if they're using this stuff frequently, it's nice to have it be near the building, but I get your point, you want it to be as pretty as possible. Why don't we just pass that on to the A R C and have?
Could be closer to the building. You, you could, you could put it just behind some of those parking spaces next to the building and the extension. That's not a problem.
But then it's right out in the open. I don't know. Okay, so, so, Mr. Hegney, we will pass that on to A R C that they should look at, that Mr. Levy has raised whether that is the least obtrusive place to put it, if it's ideal and, and they can look at it with you.
We, we will look at that with our architect as well to see if we can have an alternative proposal.
Yeah.
Mr. Hegney, I just wanna ask you also about the entrance. Right now, it's kind of nice the way it is.
Yep.
It would be kind of a shame to just have, to reduce the size of it. So.
Well, they're not reducing the size of it, cause.
We're gonna make it just instead of, you know, one way in and one way out. Just.
What?
So, no, no, the, the, it's being consolidated, right now, there's, there's, there's two different ways in and out kinda thing. This is gonna be consolidated, so they can have some more, more parking, and actually, it looks like if I'm not correct, Mr. Hegney, actually some more area that's kind of an island for planting or continuing to planting it in front of the library itself.
Yes, there would be a more of an opportunity to plant, because that's where there's currently asphalt in an island. As, where, there would be an island where there's currently asphalt.
Right.
Okay, I thought you meant the entrance to the building and I was really having a heart attack, okay, go ahead, you meant the entrance to the property, okay. It's like, no, it's gonna be the same, okay. Alright, okay, so you're thinking it'll be consolidated to get that parking space, okay. There's a storm drain, okay, alright. Any other comments? The key thing is gonna be to do this so that it is most fitting with the surrounding neighborhood, least intrusive with the neighbors. And it, it seems to me that to be able to get screening behind what I consider had always thought was the rear of the building, forgive me. The better that is, because that's what abuts the Greens who are affected by your variance. So the more you can screen along that side of the building. The side that's parallel to the post road, which is what you're planning to do. And you're not changing your ADA parking at all?
No, we are, we are required to have one space and we, we have one space and it's what closest to the building.
Do you, a couple of questions, cause they're coming up nowadays. What I see when I'm in the, in area of the Cos Cob Library is a lot of strollers. Is the stroller, while you're doing this, I am assuming that you're gonna continue to service this walk-up stroller business you have. Are, is it, is the library maximize its convenience for your stroller business?
Joe, I'm going to.
Just throwing it out there, you don't have to answer that now, just think about it, because the, you all know, Cos Cob had a huge influx, most of Greenwich did, but Cos Cob has had an influx of young families that are using this facility. And is it friendly to them, cause my sense is that's who you're gonna cater to, right? That's what Central isn't gonna offer them, those day-to-day young children's programs, right?
Well, the main library does do that too, all of our locations offer regular ongoing children's programs. And they're some of the most popular programs we have throughout the system. And one of the challenges that we have even at Maine is, you know, corralling numbers of strollers and the like. And that, that is an ongoing challenge and it's a matter of interior space planning and designating places where strollers can go. So we have, we have the challenge at all our locations with that.
I'm just thinking, while you're doing this, these small logistical improvements in the operation of your library, might you think about that? Because this is currently and for the next ten, fifteen years, gonna be a young neighborhood. And can you accommodate the walk-in traffic that has a stroller better? And maybe, to me, that's important, because you're encouraging the walkability of Cos Cob. Which we've been trying to do throughout.
Maybe a storage shed someplace, right?
Yeah, very funny. I was just thinking, what about, do they make stroller racks? And do you have bike racks here?
We're going, we got feedback from the community that asked for bicycle racks, so that's going part of a later.
Yeah, I, people don't wanna drive here. So that would be pretty cool if you could accommodate those people, that's what I've heard. And I haven't been to one of these meetings for several years, but th- this is what we heard, I think, when we did the Cos Cob plan. Okay, so that's the only guidance I can think of, does anybody else have questions or comments for?
I, I could, I just could ask about some feedback that we've gotten. Mr. Hegney, could you comment on the idea of Plan B?
Oh, well, fir- first, Mr. Levy, I wanna say there is no Plan B. We have submitted to you. And that's the only plan that has been reviewed over the last twelve to eighteen months by the, the boards, Building and Grounds Committee. It's the only one that has been reviewed and approved by the Friends of the Cos Cob Library. It's the only one that's been reviewed and commented on by library staff, particularly those at the library. And it's the only one that has been approved by the Library Board of Trustees. Which is going to be the body that is providing the funding for all this construction. Which is likely to be, when all is said and done, something in the two million dollar range. So I, I have seen the other comments that have been circulated around the community. But there is only one plan, and this is the plan we're looking to have you review, comment on, and that we're looking to bring back to you as a, a full site plan application.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wells.
Yeah, I just had one thing, Mr. Hegney said they're gonna be exploring more, addressing the flooding issue, just to focus that a bit. Maybe when you come back, maybe you already know, is, is the existing, is the first floor of the current library one foot above base flood elevation? And obviously, I assume the addition is gonna be the same level, so that's, that's one question. And then the other one is, you're gonna be adding a fair amount of impervious you know, surface to this area. If you could come back with what, how you're gonna mitigate that, cause you are in a flood zone. And then number three, would it be possibly use pervious materials for your patio? Would that, would that work? When you come back, I'm not expecting.
There was a commissioner who didn't say it tonight, but somebody said at the briefing yesterday. If you've got little kids, do you even need a patio, can you just spread them out on the lawn and isn't that nice for the kids, so?
That was me, cause I see them out on the lawn all the time, they all seem happy, but maybe, you know.
No, what's wrong with the little grass in the suburbs? I guess I shouldn't put it that way. Okay, if nobody has any more questions or comments for Mr. Hegney? I'll turn it to public comment, the first person to speak, if you would raise your virtual hand, so I can get an idea how many people wanna speak, cause there's still almost thirty people here. Alright. Alright, I'm gonna ask you guys to limit it to three minutes, if you don't mind, remember that this is a pre-app, you're gonna have lots of opportunity to come back, so Stacy Green is first, and if you would limit your comments to three minutes, Mr. LaRoe, if you could keep an eye on that for us. And she's in Never Neverland, there she is, hello, you muted yourself, go back to unmuting. There you go, you're good.
Okay, uh, uh, thank you, Madam Chair, and I appreciate hearing Mr. Hegney's update. I think that was really clear and made me feel a little bit better about the, the changes. Also, Joe Williams, and I spoke at length about this. The concerns that I have about the patio, aside from flooding, which I'm, I'm pretty confident you'll address. Or at least make the best effort to do so, is not even so much of the shed, but just making sure that there's closure. So my thought was, when there are children that are in that patio area, what I don't want is for kids, I've done it as a parent, you look the other way and you have the kids kinda run back and forth. Having them dart out from one end of the patio to the other, playing tag when parents are getting sidetracked. And so I think there's a lot of traffic on suburban at certain points of the day. And so I wanna make sure more for, more so than anything is that there's a safety feature in place. So maybe it's somehow fenced in or blocked in, so the only way to get in and out is from the entrance of the front of the building. So that was really a concern, and the other concern is, you know, people kinda loitering at night, I don't really know if if that'll happen, or if there's a way to prevent it. You know, I think the three hundred square foot addition is reasonable, and I don't have any objection to that as well. Just to touch on Plan B, which I know has nothing to do with this meeting. But is being aggressively sold and discussed in the neighborhood. So what my thought is, and you're the experts, and I've, this is the first time on a planning and zoning meeting, so no disrespect if I'm coming across as telling you what to do.
No, no, everybody tells us what to do, no worries.
Maybe there should be a Plan C, like if you need a little more square footage, like maybe make it five hundred square feet, you know, now. And have it your ducks in, you know, kind of ducks in a row, then, you know, what is that saying, measure twice, cut once? You know, I feel like he, there is a theory that very soon that this Plan B is gonna go into place. And it makes no sense to me to go through the legwork of putting an addition on when you're going to come back with funding, to tear it down, start all over again. And there's gonna be significant issues with, with the plans that they have in place as far as tearing down houses and building other parking lots and my concerns on, but I, I just think, maybe there, maybe if there really is a need to go a little further to meet the needs, so that doesn't have to be looked at again anytime.
Mr. Hegney, I'm gonna ask you to answer that question, cause I asked you a lot of questions about that, and I think it'll, it'll be better if you answer it, okay.
And, and Mr. Williams can, can add in. We probably wouldn't be looking at making a significant addition to this building anytime in the future unless appropriately located property. Frankly, that would be your property, Mrs. Green. Became available. And so if, if you ever wanna sell, you, you know who to call first. But I, I don't see, given the configuration of the building and the property and, and the limited parking that we do have available, I would not see a significant addition occurring anytime in the near future.
Okay, well, there is a deal pending apparently, just so you know. At seven, or whatever, across the street, so. Anyway, that's the rumor mill.
Okay, that's the rumor mill, not only is it not the application before us. But one of the reasons we asked Mr. Hegney all those questions is what they're saying is Cos Cob is not, is undersized if you think it's by itself in the universe. But it's not undersized if you look at the whole of the town's library facilities. And therefore, if you use your existing structures intelligently, you don't need to expand. And we see Mr. Hegney all the time, if it turns out that he changes his mind, we could, you know, exert proper punishment. But that's our understanding of how they've been thinking about it. I do very much appreciate the comment you made about the kids, it's a great point. You're right, kids wander, so thank you very much, I'm gonna move you out and let the next person speak, it's Francie Alvarez. Okay.
If Francie is there, Madam Chair, I've been trying to promote her.
Yeah, me too, she or she comes.
Oh, there she is.
Sometimes when you say people's names, they walk back to their computer, that's a trick I've learned.
Hi, here I am, sorry.
You know, they wander off, they go, they make cocktails, just kidding, go ahead, Ms. Alvarez.
Okay, thank you for this opportunity to speak. I'm speaking today as a member of the Greenwich Tree Conservancy. We are opposed to the Cos Cob Library's Plan A to cut down mature trees where there's clearly an alternative. The G T C has provided signage to many of the trees on this property. This signage provides an opportunity to educate the young children walking from the nearby Cos Cob School to the library. On tree species, to learn about tree species and the many other benefits that trees provide. It is our understanding that there is a Plan B. So I'm just gonna speak to it a little bit, which would save these.
But, okay, so Ms. Alvarez, I'm sorry, that's not before us.
Okay.
Can you just stop the clock for a second, Patrick? Ms. Alvarez, that's not before us, the library is not submitting anything but what is before us right now. And full stop, there's no reason to tell us that a different application is better, because that, you know how it is with us. We only can deal with what's in front of us. I would like Mr. Hegney to comment on the tree removal though, and then we'll let you start the clock again, Patrick. Sorry, hold on a second, Ms. Alvarez, how many trees are you removing, Mr. Hegney?
Three, that are between the building and suburban avenue, not the ones that are in, that are along suburban avenue. These are multi-stemmed trees, roughly three to, one to three inches in diameter with multi-stems coming up, and we are working with our architect and landscape architect to, to see how we would replace those, not only on the library property, but also in conjunction with the tree warden. On the municipal property, which is immediately to the south. You don't really sense where the property line is for the library and the municipal property. But we, we think that it could be enhanced there and are, are going to include that as part of the plan that we submit to you.
Well, I cheerfully volunteered the tree conservancy at our briefing yesterday, because I believe, Ms. Alvarez, that you do give trees to this type of facility. So if, if they showed us um, a plan of how they might plant that entire parking lot. Um, have you seen that, Ms. Alvarez?
I have not seen that. Uh, I think.
Okay, can you pop that up?
On the number of trees also. Um, presently there are four trees that border the sidewalk. Three of those trees appear to be in the town right of way. As we move on to the property to the side of the building, first there is a lengthy hedge and then next to that, five mature trees. To install the new patio with a trellis, the hedge and these five mature trees, I believe would be removed. Um, also the roots of the town's, uh, three right of way trees clearly grow into this, uh, green area. By installing a concrete patio and six pilings to support the trellis is likely the roots of these trees will be damaged. We've seen trees die all over town two or three years later due to construction. These trees are town trees and our tree warden needs to review this project to, and possibly hold a tree hearing.
Um, on the tree, on the, on the trees that are street, street trees, yes ma'am, and on the municipal trees, yes ma'am. It's up to the tree board and absolutely. Um, so Mr. Hagney, you answered that you were removing three trees. And you are planning to plant. Do you know yet?
So on the landscape plan that we are, that has been filed with what you have in front of you, which is, uh, on slide eight.
Slide eight.
Presentation material, uh, we're showing, uh, five trees. Um, and I had been talking to our architect about, uh, augmenting that as well.
Mr. Hagney, the, um, the hedge stays?
Um, well, that's one of the things, another neighbor, uh, commented, Adam Nellawatchek, uh, who was at eleven suburban avenue. Uh, about, uh, opposing it and concerned about screening. Uh, it's a privet hedge right now. Uh, the thought that would, is that that would become a, uh, evergreen hedge rather than a privet hedge. So that, that's another one of the things that we're looking at, uh, modifying.
As I'm seeing on the street view, you know, the, the trees between the sidewalk and the hedge seem to be in pretty good condition. They're actually maturing and actually were really nice. But we're moving that hedge and putting a new one in. I don't see the point of that because this one's, it looks pretty mature, tall, quite thick. Um, I think I had actually really adds to what's happening there. And I kind of think would go to mitigate a lot of the concerns, uh, in terms of screening from the sidewalk. Uh, if the four trees or the three trees on the inside were removed for the pergola. This is actually, you know, twofold. One is the borders for safety and the kind of a screen for the pergola in the patio.
Uh, the only concern, uh, Mr. McRae was that it, it is a deciduous hedge, although it's very thick as a, as a privet. Uh, that something more along the lines of a, uh, of, uh, evergreens would be more appropriate. We can certainly look at that.
Well, I, there's a lot more guidance. If you hadn't have, had a chance to, um, read the new landscape regs. You'll find that the screening between, uh, a residential and a non-residential has been beefed up. So you may find that as you work with it, you will be changing it anyway. You are, that you kept, could. I mean, you could argue that you don't have to remove the existing, but you could. Okay, so.
Just getting familiar with the new regulation.
Okay. So, yeah, I mean, I figured we only just. So Ms. Alvarez, we're looking at the, we're looking at, um, we're looking at replacing the trees. Uh, but we will make sure that when the site plan comes in that we get more. Um, and that we beef up. Anything else?
Well, yeah, would it be possible to have the tree warden take a look at the trees and the, and these plans now? Um, you know, rather than waiting, uh, I know it's going to go for a variance and I think it's important for him to have, uh, to be able to weigh in on that. Uh, given where it stands at this time.
The street trees.
Yeah, the street trees. And if they'll be affected by taking down the, it in the patio, for sure.
Um, can we, how would we do that? It's in a pre-app which doesn't stay open. Well, I guess ZBA would have to do that, right?
We would have to discuss that with the zoning board of appeals. Yes.
Okay. All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, our last speaker is Peter Berg. And again, I know you're used to the three minutes. Maybe he's gone to? No, he's here. Okay. Everybody goes and makes cocktails. All right, Mr. Berg, if you would unmute.
Am I unmuted?
You are unmuted.
Uh. And my, I have to turn my volume down a bit. So, uh. Whoa.
Where'd you go? I know it looks like you hit your camera instead of, instead of your volume. All right, now you're unmuted anyway. Put your cameras on. Sorry, we know what you look like. You can just go ahead and talk.
So. So can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Uh, good evening, Madam Chair, Greenwich Commissioners. My name is Peter Berg. I am an RTM member from District Eight Cos Cob. I am a former Greenwich Library trustee, former co-chair of the Cos Cob Library Building Committee. I, I heard you say that, uh, there's no plan B, but in fact, there, there is a plan B and I really need to, uh, talk about it. May I?
Well, you may make your public comment regarding what you think should be a plan B, but only the applicant can represent whether there is more than one plan that he has submitted. This is not a plan that you are submitting from Greenwich Library because that's what Mr. Hagney, you please feel free to make your comments.
And, uh, and I do need to, uh, correct Mr. Hagney. I don't believe it's correct that the Friends of Cos Cob Library have endorsed the Greenwich Library plan. I'm quite certain they have not. In fact, there are no Cos Cob organizations of residents that have, uh, that have, uh, endorsed the library's plan, and there are many that, uh, have endorsed this alternate plan. Uh, plan, this alternate plan, I'll call it plan B, does not need a variance for patio or storage shed in the suburban avenue setback. It is not constrained by parking because it proposes to acquire number seven suburban avenue to expand the existing parking lot at number five suburban avenue. So Patrick, if you can show you, uh, slide one, like calls that. Slide one is an email from Mr. J two of Riverside. The owner of number seven suburban avenue saying that he favors a larger Cos Cob Library and will consider an offer from Greenwich Library to purchase his property. Slide two is a GIS map of the neighborhood. You can see Cos Cob School on the right. Cos Cob Library to the left and the two property, uh, in between. Note also that the property in front of Cos Cob Library is the suburban avenue park. Slide three is the existing Cos Cob Library. Note that the parking lot, entrance driveway and exit lane, the exit lane where drivers can safely drop off books and pick up passengers. Slide four is the Greenwich Library Plan. Note that the exit lane is lost. You can also see, uh, the proposed storage shed and patio, uh, in the street setback at the top. Slide five is the proposed plan B site plan. It was drawn by Laura, Laura Kaler of Riverside, one of the two original architects of the existing Cos Cob Library. This plan proposes a new wing, uh, and, uh, new wing. The new wing includes a large new community room, an entrance foyer with coat closet, two additional bathrooms, a storage closet and a utility room. The, uh, the exit driveway and the safe drop off is preserved. A gazebo is proposed in front of the library in the town park with new lawn instead of a patio. Slide six is the proposed expanded parking lot.
Three minutes.
At five.
Yeah, we saw, we do, we do have your submission. Um, that is three minutes, Mr. Berg. Uh. If, um, and we do have, we have all read what you submitted. Um, uh, Mr. Hagney, would you like to respond? Thank you very much.
Let me just say, plan, this plan is supported by the Cos Cob community. It's a better plan. So, so please send a message to Greenwich Library to put your plan on hold and pursue this alternate plan. Plan B is better. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Berg. Okey dokey, that's the last of the speakers. Uh, Mr. Hagney, would you like to comment on that?
Uh, yes, Madam Chair. Uh, a- as I said earlier, uh, this is not, uh, developed and avoid, and it's not developed just by a small group. Uh, it starts with the library staff. It starts with, uh, uh, seeing what patrons at the Cos Cob Library, uh, find is, is needs for the community. Uh, it involves friends of the Cos Cob Library and, and their comments and concerns. It takes into account neighbors, immediate neighbors such as Mrs. Green, who you've heard from before in terms of uh, size of an addition, uh, and also, uh, uh, meeting with the public. So, uh, all, all of that has occurred as part of, of developing this plan. Uh, I, I don't believe there is an appetite, uh, either by the Board of Education or the library, uh, to purchase uh, the property on the other side of suburban and their concerns about having the primary parking lot for the library on the other side of a road, uh, and that, that's a, a, a serious concern, uh, that, that the, uh, that the, uh, trustees of the library have. So, uh, we believe that this plan that we have before you, uh, can enhance, uh, the library, provide additional services to patrons. Uh, and, uh, is appropriate, uh, for, uh, the property that we do have. And, uh, and that's why we're bringing it to you.
Okay.
This evening.
Well, you have.
Anything you wanted to add, uh, in this regard?
I don't think so. He's muted.
Yep.
So I, you've got our guidance. Um, look at the shed location, you know, we, we, we gave you our thoughts. Um, trees, shed location, uh, protecting the kids. I thought that was a great comment, Ms. Green made. And what's, and flooding, um, I don't remember this, the building itself flooding during Sandy and Irene, which were the worst threats to.
Never flooded.
But, uh, I remember the water came up pretty high, but did not go into the building. Um, okay, Mr. Hagney. So we'll see you when you come back. You're going to go get your variance first.
Hope so.
Okay. All right. Okay. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you.
Our next discussion item is CoCon LLC. And it is at Six Neil Lane. It is to convert, uh, to potentially rezone a portion of the property to the LB so that the building at Six Neil can be increased. Um, Mr. DeAndrea, the commission had asked if you would arrange for a better engineer on this project?
I would agree with you.
We thought you might.
There aren't many around, and so.
Alrighty.
We'll do our best. We're all familiar with that expression that, um, and it may be better.
Yes.
Ready to go?
The lawyer who hires his own.
That's exactly right. You, you can read my mind, but I'm going to go with it anyways, and I'll start with a little bit of history. In nineteen fifty-seven, Rocco DeAndrea, um, and his wife Yulie. It was, he is, the late Rocco, he purchased a small piece of property on the Wesley side of Neil Lane. At that time, it was a two-way street. Currently it's a, it is a one-way street. Um, the property that he purchased was located in what was then known as the BL Zone. And Rocco planned to construct an office building on the small, um, property with an area of six thousand eight hundred eighty-nine square feet. Um, in nineteen sixty-three, uh, Rocco did manage to construct that building. Um, and he did it to house his surveying business that was started in nineteen forty-seven. That building had a small footprint of only twenty-three hundred and twenty-nine square feet, and today it stands virtually unchanged. Um, also in nineteen sixty-three, Rocco and his wife Yulie, uh, purchased a parcel of land from a neighboring property owner. That property had frontage on Sheep Hill Road. Um, that portion of the property was and is now, uh, located in the R seven residential zone. Um, if I may, the, the walls of that small building were constructed with concrete block, single pane windows and virtually no insulation. As Rocco continued to grow his business, it expanded into surrounding towns. Then he designed many subdivisions, um, all over Fairfield County. And then in nineteen seventy-seven, one of his sons left a consulting firm in Stanford and came to work with Rocco. And then a little later in nineteen eighty-two, another son, also a professional engineer, left a consulting firm in Colorado and also entered the, the, uh, business with his father. And those two sons continued to grow the building and now it's evolved into a, um, planning, surveying and engineering firm, still working all over Fairfield County, Connecticut and New York. And as a result, the staff at the, at the, uh, company known as Rocco V. DeAndrea, Inc. has expanded and really stretching the limits of that small building. And truthfully, the front of the building needs a new facelift, um, to improve the efficiency of, the energy efficiency and of course handicapped access. So the purpose of our discussion tonight is to request your comments on the proposal to construct an addition um, to the rear of the building. That addition is proposed about, uh, as approximately eight hundred and seventy-two square feet, very small, to be truthful. And it's shown on the, the panel, as you can see, in comparison to the property and the size of the existing building, it's a very small, um, addition. And that would be for the purpose of accommodating the engineers and surveyors currently employed by Rocco V. DeAndrea, Inc. Due to the, uh, location of the zone line between the R seven, um, area and the LB zone. And for those who can't see it clearly, the LB zone runs parallel more or less to the back of the building and extends north to south. Um, um, across that, um, boundary. So under existing conditions and the zoning that's applicable, the addition could not be permitted under current zoning. In order to construct the, the addition as proposed, we would be requesting a zone change from R seven to LB. Immediately adjacent, um, to the, to the, um, property in the R seven zone is, is, um, property zoned as LB. It extends westerly from Neil Lane. The immediate properties to the, in the southeast corner is a, uh, four-story building, two, two, um, two towers, if you will. Four stories each over, um, an artificially elevated platform. So it, it looms up above the property in the R seven zone. Next is lining, in line is a two-story building with a liquor store and a bank. And at the southwest corner of, of, um, the R seven zone is a construction yard as you are, um, familiar, it's a, there's a pending application for a multi-story eight thirty G residential tower.
Yes, indeed.
I didn't hear that. What was that?
Yes, indeed. We are familiar.
Yeah, it sounded more like a squeal or a scream. I didn't know if there was.
I was trying not to. Go ahead.
But in comparison, the proposal, um, for the R seven, current R seven property is for construction of a two-story addition when viewed from the south and west. However, if viewed from Neil Lane, the building will still appear to be one-story structure. The area of the R seven zone is forty-four thousand one hundred and sixty-three square feet. And the area of the LB zone, as I mentioned earlier, was sixty-eight eighty-nine. So there's quite a bit of land in the R seven zone. So if the zone change were to be approved, the proposal is to encumber more than half of the R seven zone with a conservation easement. That easement would encompass the majority of the area that is currently designated as a regulated wetland resource. I say the majority simply because I've suggested that it be done with straight lines for easy, um, identification and maintenance. Yes, there's a little space between the edge of the wetland boundary and the, and the lot line, but it seems not appropriate. Yes, there's a little space between the edge of the wetland boundary and the, and the lot line, but it seems not appropriate if you agree to meander the line. The advantage of designating a conservation easement is that it would protect the, um, wetland, which is the southern end of a more than three-acre, uh, wetland that, um, provides storm drainage, habitat. I've seen many deer come out grazing on the back of our property. And of course, there's water purification associated with that, but most importantly, it's the, the, um, maintenance of the natural habitat. Moving north to that, that, that wetland continues, um, um, to create at least the three acres. Uh, the Wetlands Agency reviewed this a couple of years ago and granted a permit for the, the, um, activities that we propose. A small addition, a rain garden, a modification of the parking configuration within the area that's already, um, utilized. Also included within the permit was a landscape plan prepared by, uh, Matt Pop and Environmental Land, um, Solutions. One unique aspect of the request for consideration is that all of the area designated as parking has been in place since approximately nineteen sixty-seven. At that time, prior to the wetland, um, statutes being enacted, the town of Greenwich, while installing sanitary sewers in Riverside, was looking for a place to dump some excess material. And several lots around this particular area were, um, partially filled, um, with good clean material, been stable ever since. So that's the way the parking came to be. So the total floor area of the building with the addition would be only six thousand square feet, which would require thirty spaces under our current zoning. As proposed, um, with minor modifications, the existing parking count of forty-one would be reduced to thirty-seven spaces and two handicap spaces. So well above the requirement for the small building. But that's the gist of the application proposal that we're making for a zone change. We're not looking to create a, a large housing development, like I mentioned on the southeast corner, southwest corner. We're not looking to do four-story buildings as similar to the ones that are adjacent to us on an artificial plinth. We're looking just for a small six, um, eight hundred and seventy-two square foot, square foot, um, footprint to, um, uh, bring the total building on two floors to, um, less than six thousand square feet.
Mr. DeAndrea, would you consider doing all or part of that easement area as deeded?
There's really, we, we, we may, but there's no place to deed it to, um, the, as I mentioned, to the north of this.
You could give it to the town.
Would you like to?
Actually, actually, Mr. DeAndrea, we have, um, a role model for you. If you look at what we just did at One Benny.
Okay. I saw that. As you know, we, we were actively involved in that, but yes.
Why don't you do One Benny for a piece of it? Um, uh, Patrick would have to work out with you if it was possible. But, um, if you just, if you could figure out how to do a piece of it so it is protected in perpetuity.
Right.
That nobody, and then the next step is of course, what having an easement gives you is, as opposed to the deeded, is that you could use it for FAR, but you're not gonna need it for FAR, and you might as well leave a legacy for the town of protecting. I'm looking at the Google Earth and it's, wow, I never knew that was back there.
Right. And that's what, that's another unique aspect of it. It's, it's quiet, secluded, and, and functional. And, um, well, I'll take that, that, um, suggestion, um, under consideration and, and I, you know, it's something that could be done. It serves the, it serves a very important purpose in the area. We agree. And if it maintains its open space.
If you could figure out how to protect it in perpetuity, it would be wonderful. The other thing, as you, as you know, the new landscape regulations will apply to your parking lot.
Right. We have.
Well, you're adding to the structure, so I suppose you could get away with not, but it might be kinda nice if you did.
Well, we have a, as I mentioned, we have a, a landscape plan that includes a, a, an additional bit of water quality enhancement. Um, and it surrounds it. And we've also already dedicated on that plan, the, um, southwest corner of the property was, is part of it. So the Wetlands Agency was certainly favorable of that because it's protecting the edge of that water course that is on the western side.
So if you, to cut your story to the nutshell, it's you rezone, you make a residential area commercial, and in exchange, you protect a chunk of land that has a wetland, a significant wetland on it that serves for neighborhood drainage, and you might be willing to consider protecting that in perpetuity.
I couldn't have said it better.
Okay. Um, does anybody have any questions or comments on that? Okay. I think everybody seems pretty quiet and open-minded.
Wait, wait, sorry, I was unmuted.
Oh, well, that's, you know, too late. No, just kidding. Go ahead.
Uh, Mr. DeAndrea, uh, how many spaces did you say were proposed?
He's gonna use thirty, thirty-one is what he's gonna do.
If you ask me spaces, the number of spaces that are depicted on the site plan are thirty-seven.
Oh, thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven. And your, your calculation, how many did you actually?
Plus two hand, plus two handicaps. So.
So thirty-nine.
Right. No, there's, let me start again. It's, it's thirty-five regular spaces and two garage spaces. That totals thirty-seven plus two handicap. So it's actually a total of thirty-nine, thirty-seven compliant with zoning.
And you have forty-one now?
And, and currently right now, yes, there's forty-one. We, we would lose a couple on the configuration of the, um, addition, of course.
How many do you actually, you stated how many you actually needed?
We, we, um, I would say that we need.
Per, per the regulation, per the regulation.
Oh, per the regulation, per the regulation, we would need, um, thirty. Cause it's six thousand, six thousand total square feet, so thirty spaces.
Um, I'm just gonna throw something at the table here, um, maybe sweeten the pot. Uh, I think as I look at your front, the front of your building and the parking back there, uh, I would, you know, I would actually give up a space in the front of the building to plant a tree.
Nice idea.
And, uh, or two.
We actually have a, a, a small corner there where the way the configuration is, the access on this property is extremely, I mean, the parking on this property is extremely valuable in the front because.
All your clients go to the front.
We are, that's true, and we are constantly, um, protecting our turf from the underparked four-story doctor building on the, on the, uh, southeast corner. So, uh, uh, we do have some, um, space, um, that's, um, possibly attributable or converted to a little more greenery. Um, we're working with our neighbor also to improve the, the wood fence that, um, came from another job of his, so we're, we're gonna try to enhance that view also. But I understand the need for the green, but I also have lived through the, um, need for the parking in the front, which we don't use, but our clients do. So it's a.
Right. Okay.
Mr. DeAndrea, looking at Google Earth, I can't quite tell, does the parking lot behind your building connect to the other parking lot, to the other parking lots there?
The answer is physically, yes. Um, there is nothing, um.
But you're gonna block that, right?
Unfortunately, or fortunately, or factually, the answer is yes, um, out of necessity to.
No, no, it makes sense to protect your parking because it's a liability issue for you.
Exactly. We've had a, um, a, a, what do you call it? A, um, an accommodating situation among all owners.
Yeah.
But it is becoming, um, necessary to protect a little bit more, especially in the front of our building.
So Riverside Pediatrics is tight for space, and they can come into your parking lot through, um.
The back of the, the, through the back of the liquor store.
Got it. I see it. Okay. And the, between the, and the dental place.
I think the dentist is the most popular from what we can gather.
Okay. So they come in, there's not enough in front of the dental place. Dental place has some parking behind, but they can always go use your lot. And so you're gonna close that off, that access to your lot. That makes sense.
What happens is that, um, when the people come in and they, um, park and run, that creates a problem. So when someone comes in and knocks and says, look, I gotta take my daughter to the dentist, no problem. We try to accommodate it if we're at a time in the day when we can. That's why those spaces in the front are so valuable. So placing a tree would be nice to see, but, um, probably unworkable. Yes, we have a, we have a problem, a little bit of a need for protecting the, the, uh, front. But truthfully, um, um, people have come in and they, if there's a space in the back and we're, you know, our crews are out, take it, but we needed it, you know, at four-thirty. So.
Okay.
We're, we're good neighbors. We're, we're good neighbors.
Right. Some, some kind of, something in the front, maybe in that little area, uh, towards the, uh, uh, corner, that might be a great idea. Maybe pop a tree and something just to give a little bit more.
Agreed. Uh, we're, we're, we agree.
Right. In the back, uh, there's two spaces, uh, right in the middle, correct?
They, I pointed them out because they are, um, frequently used. If we don't stripe the spaces or if it's winter or something, we, the guys that come in a little bit later sometimes park right there. Um, typical without striping right now, uh, people get a little lazy and they don't move a little closer. So I'm just pointing out that if the dimensions of the parking are applied, there is space in the middle for two more cars. And so I've counted those to show, but they're in truth, truthfully, they are excess to what would we, what would be required to support the building.
Okay. So as I said before, personally, if we're, you, you would sacrifice those two spaces or one of the spaces with a tree in the middle of the parking, it would be appreciated.
Right. We'll consider that one awesome as Matt, right? But the, the truth is for the maintenance, a tree, a tree in the middle would be a, a disaster. But trees along the perimeter, we're planting those in the plan that, that Matt has developed, so we'll be adding more stability in those corners.
Right. I'm, I'm looking at that. Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, I don't think, I think we're talking to you about trees because we don't have anything major to add to you.
Appreciate that.
Um, seeing this as the trade-off you're offering us, um, I think it's gonna work relative to our P O C D goals. Um, so, uh, which it would have to be for the rezone. Does anybody have any comment? No? Does anybody?
Well, I think, I think, on, on the rezone.
Yeah.
I think actually, Mr. DeAndrea's discussion there at the beginning, um, talking about a business, a business that's been, uh, in this location for how many years? I think that actually goes to, uh, to a lot of, a lot of what we had talked about in the P O C D. Um, but encouraging business, that kind of thing.
Yeah, but the other thing is he's giving us an environmental benefit.
Oh, we add that in too.
Yeah, that one too. So the environmental benefit is significant. Um, does anybody from the public wish to speak on this application of Six Neil Lane? Please raise your virtual hand if you wish to comment. No, you could think you can. Yep. Okay. I think we're done, Mr. DeAndrea. Best of luck.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much. We'll be back soon. Thank you. And good evening.
Yes. Get an engineer.
Yeah.
You know, the same jokes. It's really sad. Okay. Last one, you guys. Windflower LLC for a pre-application review. Uh, this is on a twenty-eight point four-four acre property, a little eleven Sherwood Avenue. And it is to do an RA for, it is to convert an RA four to an RA C four conservation zone as well as an HO zone. And the idea is to preserve a Tudor House on the site and construct eleven new single-family residences, representing the applicant is Peter Romano from Land Tech. Go ahead, Mr. Romano.
Good evening. Um, thank you, Madam Chairman. I'm.
Excuse me, Mr. Romano, is William Caldwell with you?
He's not.
Okay. So it's just someone from the public who wishes to speak later. We'll call on the public as soon as we give three things for Mr. Romano to focus on. Go ahead.
Got you. Thanks. So, um, my name's Pete Romano. I'm a principal at Land Tech in Westport, uh, Connecticut. It's been a long time since we've been in front of the planning and zoning. In Greenwich, we do a lot of work here, but never risen to the level of a commission meeting. So, well, you spoke a little bit about it. Our, our clients are Ryan and, uh, Nick Fletcher, who make up Fletcher Development Company. They're a design-build company out of Darien, do a lot of work in Greenwich. Uh, they've been in business for about ten years in two thousand thirteen, um, and, uh, they've probably done about fifty homes renovations and new single-family residentials over the last ten years, and they manage about seventy um, properties in Greenwich. And I only say that so that you know that it's, that, uh, they are a little bit vested in, in the town of Greenwich. Uh, Land Tech's a firm that's been around about forty-two years, uh, and we are a site, civil, environmental, and surveying firm. Um, we've worked with Ryan and Nick on this piece of property for almost a year. They purchased it in two thousand twenty-two, been considering different things out on the property. Um, and we've come up with a sketch. I'm wondering if, is it possible for me to, um, share my screen? I can walk you through. I have some nice pictures of the site, um, if that's possible.
Uh, yeah, Peter, uh, we, we made you a, uh, co-host, so you can definitely share.
Perfect. Thank you. All right. All right. Can you guys see the, the screen with the Apple Crest plaque up there?
Yep.
Okay. So this is twenty-eight acres as, um, this has all been suggested. It's twenty-eight acres, a little bit over twenty-eight acres, uh, sits on the, um, west branch of the Byron River. Um, there's currently, um, two homes, three homes, excuse me, on a property. Um, this down on the lower right-hand corner is Riverview Road, and here is Sherwood Avenue. Um, there's a little cool house right in the center of the property. There's the Tudor House. It'll talk to you a little bit, uh, more about. And then there's two other, uh, fairly substantial older homes. Um, the Tudor was built, and I know that some of the land records have a, uh, a date of nineteen sixty-five. We have, has actually already had an archaeologist on the property anticipating coming forward with an application to your commission in the future. And he's, um, uncovered the fact that that Tudor House is actually from before nineteen thirty. The two homes, and he's got a, well, when we come forward with some application to you, we'll submit the, um, archaeologist report. Uh, the other two homes, um, pretty standard, uh, colonial-style homes. They were built probably in the nineteen forty, by the nineteen forty-five area. It's a little cottage. It's over on the, um, this ends up being to the east of the property. Uh, often there's a little, um, tool shed and stuff like that. So if you've been by it, you've seen this, um, as this is the entrance, the main entrance to the, to the property right now. And I'll, I'll take you through the, the steps, uh, what we're contemplating here. And this is one half of the property, which shows the homes. I have some colored drawings, and I know you saw some stuff before, um, that we submitted, uh, you know, rendering. And I just want to emphasize, and I appreciate the opportunity to be in front of it. I think the pre-application process is very helpful, um, to an applicant, particularly on a project of this size. So you get some input from the commission, and quite frankly, we've done a lot of late work already. Um, we met with, I don't know what any of you with the project, but we met with Katie DeLuca before she retired. We met with Pat Sesto before she retired, and, um, I'm all that's left. We actually also met with Mr. Bishop from the H D C at one point early on because we are pursuing a, um, a historic overlay for the piece of property. Um, and as some of you know, the historic overlay, um, is a change of zone that we come in front of your commission for. And it's also a special permit. Um, and then in addition to that, we also came in under the conservation zone, and I'll, and I'll tell you why. Um, the, there's no advantage really to us. It was more, I, I honestly think that the, the, um, conservation zone and the historical overlay zone is, is the perfect opportunity for this piece of property. And I, I think it's probably why it was developed. I mean, this piece of property, you have twenty-eight acres. Um, we're developing nine or ten acres where the homes are in the center here. This is a blow-up, I did, just so you can kinda see the houses in relationship to the development. And I'll, I'll give you the bigger picture in just a minute, but you can, you got a sort of a feel for it. The existing houses, here's the Tudor down here. Um, the, one of the colonial homes is here in this intersection, and then the other, interested other colonial houses at this little intersection. And so if you're familiar with the historical overlay, I don't know how much often it's been used, but in the historical overlay, they actually give you some benefit. Um, you take. in the historical overlay, they actually give you some benefit. Um, you take the twenty eight acres, you divide what the zone happens to be, which is four acres here. So you come up with seven lots. And then you're a, you get a bonus, you multiply it by point five, and you end up with, you know, ten point six, so maybe eleven homes. You'll notice that there's eleven homes on here and the Tudor is still there. We anticipate using the Tudor as a clubhouse. Now, keep, just keep in mind, this is a concept. We wanted to run it past your commission. The concept is to take the Tudor, turn it into some clubhouse that everybody on the property can use, and perhaps a tennis court here that everybody uses um on the property. Um, you can see along the, the um Byram uh River there, there's a couple restrictions along here. There is obviously the water course and the pond, and I'll show you some beautiful pictures of the pond if you haven't been out there. And then the Byram River runs along here, and associated with the river is some wetlands. Um, and at the end of the presentation, I'll, I'll take you through what actually, considering it's twenty eight acres and we're asking for potentially eleven homes on here. There's very little disruption or intrusion into either the wetlands, none in the wetlands, and there's some in the wetland setback. And there's also a flood plain, the one hundred year flood plain, uh, that runs along the Byram uh River. Um, and I don't know, maybe some of you are aware of it. They're just getting ready to release new flood maps uh for the Salt Lake River Basin watershed. Um, we talked to FEMA up in Boston a couple of weeks ago, and they're probably, maybe some of you folks know, they're going to be released on Valentine's Day um to the towns, and there'll be some changes and stuff. Uh, they believe along Byram, there probably won't be a change in the flood plain limits. But there might be some changes in the topography associated with the flood plain. Um, so in February of two thousand twenty three, the towns will get the new FEMA maps. Probably a year or two, from what I understand from talking to the uh young lady at FEMA, probably one to two years before they get actually adopted by the towns. So she said, if you're doing something now, take a look at the maps when they become available to you and consider it in your design. But it's from a regulatory perspective, right now, you should use the two thousand thirteen maps um for designing stuff. So we're, we're probably months away from coming in one other with an application before your commission. There also is a dam uh at, as obviously at the bottom of the pond. Um, and our, one of our engineers, Mike Bartos, who does dam work, uh, took a look at, talked to D E P. It's what they call a hazard B B uh dam, which is on the lesser end of um hazard zones. So that, what that means is there is no required emergency plan for this dam. In other words, if the dam were to breach or fall down completely, there would be no uh damages, significant damages to property or to, to anyone's life if the dam happened to break. But uh Mike Bartos took a look at it. It's in good shape. The, that type of dam needs to get um inspected every seven or eight years. So it's coming up, I think, this September is when it gets um its next inspection, inspection at D E P. Um, we, we submit it to, to the E P for their um review. And, and if there's something to be done, if we, it's obligated of the homeowner to review it, submit the applicant, submit um a report by a licensed engineer, and then they will um recommend, the engineer will recommend how to repair it. So I, I think we're in good shape on the dam. Um, you can see, you know, the proximity of the, I think I'm going to call up the map that has the whole site on it, and you can see it also. Again, this is a rendering from our landscape architect, but it has the flood line that runs right along here. Um, you can see that all of our activities outside of that. Um, you know what? I'm going to go back just for a minute, just to show you this, because I don't think you can see it as well in here. So the yellow line that I show there is the one hundred foot upland review area. And then the green line that's just inside that to the right of it, that's the edge of the flood plain, the one hundred year flood plain. And then that crosshatch area, that is the entire flood plain. We didn't go onto the next or neighbor's property, but that's, you, you get the idea. That that's where the flood plain always, it goes all the way down to uh Sherwood. Um, and so this is just, you know, our landscape architects rendering of it. Um, and you can see that, you know, we, here's the Tudor, here's the potential tennis court. Uh, and there's a big chunk of land up in back here that strangely, that's why I said this was like, you know, a match made in heaven for um the conservation and the historical overlay zone, mostly the conservation zone. This rear piece of the property um is going to butt right up against the Greenwich Land Trust property, which is right in this area here. And so I'll go step back one minute and just tell you why we came in with the two zones. Um. The historical overlay zone gets you the additional residences on here, but the conservation zone um asks you to put your homes on, they basically ask for a split, open space and developed area. Forty percent developed, sixty percent left, left as uh open space. That's what this represents. Um, we have about nine or ten acres, and keep in mind, this is, you know, granted, it's a couple of uh alternatives. It's a couple of renditions we did before this, but what I'm showing you right now is about nine or ten acres of developed area. The balance seventeen or eighteen acres stays open space. Um, it can be deeded uh a number of ways. Homeowners can keep it. It can get given to the land trust, it can give it to the town, a whole bunch of things. But that's what, that's why there's, people wonder, well, why are you coming in with both applications? We felt strongly and it, and, and Ryan and his brother um have, you know, agonized over how we're developing the piece of property. They took a long time to do it. They're not your typical developers. And so we took almost a year to do this uh and come in and see it. And we've done a lot of legwork already, like I told you. We've gotten archaeologists already on the project. We talked a little bit uh and sent some plans probably eight or ten months ago to Mr. Bishop at the H D C.
Okay, Mr. Romano, if I may interrupt.
Um, sure.
Thank you.
I, I appreciate everything you said. Um, perhaps you could describe how this application satisfies the conditions of these two zones. I mean, you've told us, you've, you've told us what the HO gets you. But for example, but uh what is the historic significance of this proposed?
I'm sorry.
Well, you know, well, what's the history here? What are the, the distinctive characteristics? Uh, you know, what are the artistic values? What uh, we have regulations to follow.
Right.
And, and similarly with regard to the uh conservation uh zone, it would be uh instructive to know um yeah, what your rationale is for either of these zones.
Well, it, so we wanted to the, the um in the historic overlay, if you have a property or a structure on there that is older than nineteen forty, you're entitled to utilize the historic overlay.
Right, but we're asking you a different question. We're asking you what you're doing for the town, not what it does for you. We're familiar with our regulation. We know what it gets you as a developer. Are, I believe you listened to our briefing yesterday. I thought I saw your name there.
Yeah.
Um, our question was, what's the benefit for the community with what you're doing? Because what we were seeing, and I'm glad you are aware of the FEMA map change, because we also discussed that yesterday. If you were listening, um, you might have, I, I believe you would have heard that our D P W mentioned that in a in a session this week that we are expecting updates of the maps. Uh, we have a concern about the flooding in the Byram River. Uh, we are aware. Um, D P W has told us several times that um, I, I think the quote from their speech this week was, since nineteen seventy, the amount of rain and the flooding have increased significantly. What we're seeing is a very delicate, environmentally delicate area. And what I see with the use of the HO coupled with the conservation zone is that by using them both, you are partially defeating, I'm just going to tell you how I feel, you're partially defeating the point and the purposes of the conservation zone, uh, which the commission is all very familiar with. So because you are going for the maximum amount of density that you could do on the buildable portion of this property, because the rest is wetlands, uh, you're, what you're conserving is basically your non-buildable area. Well, that is helpful to you that you are now building in the non, in the buildable area, you're going for the maximum amount of density. But what does it do ecologically for our community that you're creating this conservation zone first? And second, what Mr. Low just asked you is what is the particular historic significance of this building? Because by the very fact that it lists nineteen sixty five, it means it's had significant alterations. I appreciate that you've talked to Mr. Bishop. They would have to give us a certificate of appropriateness for you doing the HO. We would, we would review what they do, but again, they are advisory only to us.
Sure.
Need to satisfy us. I'm just telling you what you need to do going forward.
Yeah, no, that's exactly what we're for.
You need to do, yep, you need to tell us why this building merits an HO that allows you to max out what you can build on the buildable portion of this twenty eight acres and what the ecological benefit for the chorus is of the fact that you're preserving in perpetuity, the part that can't be built on anyway. That's our question to you. So it is a, we realize that it was a, a canny and smart idea to think about coupling these two um regulations. I was surprised um that Ms. DeLuca had encouraged you in that because I did not see them as something that could be additive. Apparently, we have had an instance in the past, but to be honest, the HO regulation has changed significantly since then. The previous HO regulation did not give the kind of zoning bonus that the present one does. And so I, I'm leaving you with that. No need to answer me now. That's what I would expect you to address when you come in with your application. Is you tell us why this is something we should do because I've got a lot of questions for you right now, and I think you'd be better off answering them than and addressing that. We are aware the FEMA map changes. I said that to you before. We know that they're probably coming, but um.
Okay.
Why is this ecologically valuable? Okay, rest of commission, um, jump in, Mr. Low. Um, I just wanted to clarify what you were asking, because I heard.
No, no, I uh, uh, that's perfect. And uh, I, I'm just struggling with uh where this is. I, I can appreciate what the benefit is um to the applicant. Um, and uh, the, the applicant is quite frank about what it gets uh, what it gets him. Uh, but we, we need to look at the regulations and decide whether this is warranted or not. And just a, a cursory look at the HO um regulations, I, uh, we need a lot more information.
Sure. And Mr. Romano, the other thing is if we, um, the two examples we have, um, Mr. LaRoe ma- reminded us yesterday about the one at Chieftain's, which did it. But the other one that we did more recently, we reduced the F A R of the proposed buildings uh because, and it was a conservation zone only because we thought the scale of the buildings, they came in at, what was it, ten thousand square feet, Nick? And we reduced them.
Mm hmm.
Because we thought this.
Three thousand.
So we reduced him to eight. Now that's still a very large house. And we didn't, but we didn't think that that was conservation oriented. We didn't think that was really the purpose of using a conservation zone was to throw a bunch of mansions on it. So that's the first thing. The other thing is what, I know I'm going, I'm telling you a lot. The other thing is
Top one.
What we're looking for in town, and I know you've heard this from Westport as well, as if you've worked with, if you've worked with that commission. I know um that they've mentioned to you as well that they are looking for starter homes. They are looking for smaller homes. That would be a benefit to the community potentially, but again, is a high density development consistent with you then proposing the conservation zone? And you need to sell us. We're not predisposed. We're not saying, oh, my God, it's never going to work. We're saying, wow, we had a lot of questions about how this is going to happen. Okay, anybody else?
Um, I think actually we, we, in talking about um historical overlay, uh, you know, the very specific things in the regulations about uh how, how to define that. Um, it may not necessarily be, it's just an old house. But you, yes, it has to be, you know, of a certain age. But it's got to be one of those things. It's got to be worth preserving. Did something happen there was if somebody's house, so on and so forth. It, you know, it's just like, oh, yeah, it's old. Well, old is one thing. Old and historic is completely different, so.
Like if George Washington slept there or something, that'd be good.
Yeah, that guy, that guy got around too. So, and I think with the conservation area, okay, eh, eh, with the conservation area, um, what do you, what are we setting aside? Uh, what's the, what's the?
Well, yeah.
The land.
I'm sorry, yeah. I think it's, when we walk it, we can look at, it's not all, you know, a big chunk of the wetlands is on the other side of the the little pond and the river there. There's about six acres of wetlands, but up in the back is, it's rough terrain, but it's nice. It's not wetlands. And all the stuff in front of the homes is all that big metal stays, and that's going to be open space. It's a sixty forty split. And you know that, you know, in the historic overlay, there is no open space requirement. So that's kind of why we went in the direction of the, and look, what you guys are saying is good intel for us to come back, and it, it's going to be a special permit, right? And so that rises to a different level of your scrutiny and approval.
More the point is you're talking about two rezoning applications, which means that you would have to be um, we've, we've touched on it, but this means that you have to be consistent with our plan of conservation and development.
Yeah.
Um, uh, so, and, and we would have to be convinced that this meets the six guiding one or a significant portion of our P O C D. So um looking at it, i- it, it's not convincing at first glance, so you would have to sell it. I'm uh, and those are the questions for you. Anyone else? Mr. Wells? Mr. Wells, you were concerned about the flooding yesterday. I think you're muted. That's been addressed to some.
Yeah, I would just say, yeah, okay, that's been addressed. But, you know, when you look at the map, if you, you, you just do the numbers, you're, you're going to, the proposal is twelve fairly large houses versus seven that would be allowed under current zoning. So you're looking at a, a huge increase in impervious surface, which I'm not sure all of it can be captured in swales and best management practices. So that'll be flowing down to uh the river. You know, you're going to be uh, you're probably going to have a fair amount of lawn there. And uh, you're going to have fertilizer, pesticides, all of that flowing down the river. So I just think from, I, I'm negatively disposed just based on sustainability issues.
We are never negatively disposed to an application.
Never negatively disposed, but extremely concerned about sustainability issues, if I could rephrase it. Thank you.
No, we, I totally, look, we're an environmental firm. We, we do have the same concerns you do. Certainly, it's a sensitive area. So I'm, that's I appreciate the, the, the intel on, like I said to you. This is very helpful to us.
If I could, if I could just comment on, on the HO zone, I think the thing that I need to be sold on is the provision of the incentive says that if you're going to use HO, new construction is supposed to be complementary and secondary to the historic structures. And you got to li- I mean, look, assuming that your, your color version is, is in scale, that Tudor House is tiny compared to the eleven houses around it. It, it, so I, I need to see that you aren't swallowing up the proposed historical value of one building by putting eleven buildings around it that look bigger.
And we, yeah, and we give you two other application, I mean, it, Mr. LaRoe can talk to you about it. We had, we've had a couple of HO applications with um, where the second structure, we shrunk it down significantly because we didn't find that it was supportive of the existing structure that was to be saved. And I think we've just told you all you need to know uh that we're looking for that consist, the consistency. And then uh Mr. Yaski, who's sitting quietly, uh, was our leader in we had an HO which was going to change the site significantly. And one of the points about the HO is to preserve the surround and not only the building. So, and this is the same thing we did. Um, I'm thinking of the Calhoun Drive application where we significantly reduced the building. And we were very conscious about what the nature of that historic neighborhood was and why we wanted the building to look like the new house looks like a gatehouse. and why we wanted the building to look like the new house looks like a gatehouse and not like a full-on mansion was, was originally proposed to us. So with the HO, we're looking for consistency, exactly what Ms. Jenkins said, only I'm giving you some examples. And then Mr. Yeski, that there's language in the HO that indicates that it should also be consistent for, in terms of the setting itself. I mean, the whole point is preservation, sustainability, conservation. When you go in for these two things, you're getting into the tree hugger place. Peter Levy, don't get mad at me. So you're going into tree hugger country there. All right. Anybody else want to weigh in with questions or comments? Somebody make Mr. Romano feel better, maybe?
I feel fine. I would like to just scroll, it would not take much time, and I know there's some neighbors who want to talk. They can scroll. Just show you the tutor.
Do you want to do that? Do you want to quickly, should you guys want to see the tutor or not?
I don't know how many people.
I mean, we've all looked at it on Google. I mean, we all Googlers with great, great, great alacrity.
This is supposed to be just a twenty-minute review.
Okay, so it's just supposed to be a quickie. This is supposed to be a, we're supposed to give you what the deal breakers would be for us when we've done that. With everybody.
I'm just going to pull up the next screen. I'm just going to do one more thing. We're just going to pull the next screen up, because if there's neighbors that are going to speak, I think they will be helpful for them because they can see their properties and our, I, I put this our site plan on an aerial. So if people are going to speak, then you can kind of see where they are. That's all.
If you decide to go ahead with this, what we might want to do at some point is, I think we'll need permission to go onsite. It's the only way to really look at the property, right, is if we do a site walk.
Absolutely.
We're going to want to, my guess is we're going to want to do a site walk.
Oh, absolutely. I think that's helpful. We'll stake the, the houses and stuff. And we're, you'll hear in a minute from the attorney from one of the neighbors, we've made that offer to the neighbors to walk the site. Awesome. So I'll be quiet now.
Okay, so I'm going to turn it then to the public comment. You wanted to share a screen. The first person to speak from the public is William Caldwell. And Mr. Caldwell, I am promoting you. If you react quickly, otherwise I'll just enable you to talk. Didn't happen. All right, Mr. Caldwell, if you could, oh, there he goes. Okay. All right, go ahead, Mr. Caldwell. And Adrian Westerfield, you will be next. And anybody else who wants to speak, please raise your virtual hand. Mr. Caldwell, if you would unmute. There you go. You're all set. Can you get closer to your microphone and unmute again, Mr. Caldwell? No, you're muted, Mr. Caldwell. Could you unmute? You were good when you came in, and then you muted yourself.
How's that now?
There, you're great, great.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Commission, and gentlemen speaking. First off, let me say I was born in the original Greenwich Hospital. I've lived right next to this property for eighty-four years. I know it well. I can tell you that at least a half a dozen times, just the natural runoff of that property has flooded that river, the western branch with the eastern branch and close Sherwood Avenue to Riversville Road completely for long periods of time.
Okay, hold on. Mr. Caldwell, can you just clarify that for me? When the one branch floods, it crosses and meets the flooding from the other branch? Is that what you're saying?
And depending on the, the size of the storm, it can cross where it goes across the under, over, under a bridge on Sherwood Avenue that the town rebuilt about fifteen years ago, twenty years ago. It's a very narrow road. It can't handle a lot of traffic. The telephone poles are right up against the macadam of the road. And the water will run across the road to Riversville Road and down into the eastern branch of the Byron River. If they don't flood there, they meet together down at the lake, at the Parkway, what they call the Parkway Lake, where the original toll for the Merritt Parkway was built when that road was built. So that's my knowledge of the problem, of the property. I played on that property. I've sledded the length of that property down to Sherwood Avenue from the top of the property. I have used the beach house by the dam. A little bit of history, the Civil War, there was a building there that was, the Wilcox family owned a wheel manufacturing company. And that whole area was known as the Village of Riversville, had a one-room schoolhouse, had a general store, and at one time approximately twenty years ago, a local person in the area, a younger person, was going for a preservation for the whole area as a historic village in effect. So I just, those are my background. But I have owned property, abutting that property, I know it well. I have seen the lower part of that property, not just along the river, but at the very bottom near Sherwood Avenue, totally flood out, flood out so badly that the driveway which goes to that Victorian house, you couldn't get in through there. And then the other nice driveway that the gentleman showed you that had that nice fencing and so forth, goes to the other two houses which were built. And my recollection is that those, that one piece of property was, belonged to somebody in the movie industry and used it only in the summertime when they came east. And, and it was never used. I mean, I, as a kid, I was there using it all the time, just as I knew all of the gimbal property when the gimbals owned it.
Yeah, that's Chieftain's for those of you that don't recall.
Correct. And the majority of that property was given to the conservation, the land conservation for town and gave us that whole run up through the gorge. And the only thing missing was the tie down to Clifton Road.
Yeah.
Where this property is, that land that goes up above, which is hilly, is absolutely beautiful for houses to be built as four-acre houses, because if you go a little further up that river, you come in from Riversville Road on other roads, they come all the way back into what is known as the gorge. And there's some lovely homes in there. This concept of one acre zoning in four acre zoning is, this is nice for the guy who wants to come in and make a.
It's even, okay, Mr. Caldwell, we normally time people and we forgot to start the timer.
So I'm going to shut up.
Okay, so we, we got your points. Come back when it's an application.
May I just offer one thing?
Yes, of course.
To speak with anybody if they would like to speak with me, because as I say, I know this, I was born in the, in the original hospital in this town. And so I know this like the back of my hand. I've lived in this piece of property, still live in this house that was built by my father in nineteen thirty-six, thirty-seven.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. You'll come back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Adrian West, Westerfield, you're the next speaker. If you would go ahead, anybody who wishes to speak should raise their virtual hand. Mr. Coppola, I don't know if you're planning on speaking. There are no other speakers right now. Ms. Westerfield, if you would unmute. If you would unmute. Yes, you're all set.
Thank you, Madam Chair Albin.
Yeah, if you could try to keep it to three minutes, ma'am.
Of course, of course, I'll be shorter than that, and I appreciate all of the thoughtful comments that have been made this evening as well as Mr. Caldwell's input. I actually live in the Wilcox House, which is the original house that went with all of that property. And I can tell you that there is flooding, but there's also we have to redig the well all the time because sometimes there's not enough in the aquifer. So it's like up and down, up and down, and I really consider about the, the about the, the water. You know, you have us in four acres learning up here. And, but we don't have any sewer or, or water supply. We don't like leave caution. We don't get all the conveniences of like midtown, downtown Greenwich. And to have this property that's so dense is really not in the spirit of where we live. That's all I want to say.
Thank you very much, ma'am. That's the last of the public speakers. If anybody else wishes to speak, last chance. No? Okay, there's a lot of people here. I guess you just wanted to listen. Mr. Romano, she raised a good point. A couple of people raised it yesterday. Septic field issues, whether you're going to have the right kind of areas for the septics and for the leaching fields and also for, and also whether you would be able to do a well water supply that was also raised yesterday.
Certainly a concern of ours too, right? We've done some preliminary soil testing and stuff out there, so we feel well to be, yeah. But those are good points, good points.
So that's evidence for you unless someone on the commission wants to weigh in with something else? No? Okay.
Great. Thank you all very much. That's very helpful. We'll see you all.
Alrighty. Patrick.
And with, and with that.
Patrick, only you can, only you can stop the clock and move Mr. Romano out because you made him.
My clock's still running? I'm sorry.
No, it's not. It's just still displayed.
All right.
It's frozen at one fifty-eight.
Okay, okay, we have one decision and some minutes. And really seriously, I thought we were going to be over at eight tonight.
So.
I did. About four hours was plenty.
Okay, can we dispense with the minutes right away?
Sure, you can do the minutes right away.
Okay, minutes for the ten-six, twenty, ten-twenty, twenty, and eleven-seventeen, twenty, and the one-five, twenty-one public hearings have been distributed. Are there any corrections?
I don't have any corrections.
Okay, hearing no requested corrections, the minutes are therefore motion to approve the minutes as distributed.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Low has seconded?
No, he did.
Okay. Mr. McRae, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Low?
Aye.
Mr. Yeski for the first time tonight? Or no, the second time. You got parking lot conversation. Go ahead.
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Levy?
Aye.
Albin is also aye, and with that, the motion passes five nothing, and we go to WH House LLC on Byram Shore Road.
Okay, we'll make this real quick. One and nine Byram Shore Road, PLPC twenty twenty-two, five-five-three. Proposal to construct a pool, a pool, hot tub terrace, pool house and small office. Total volume would exceed one hundred and fifty thousand cubic feet on a ten-acre property in the one acre zone and flood zone of VE seventeen fourteen and X. The applicant has received endorsement from the zoning enforcement office with a caveat that the kitchenet shall be indicated as a wet bar and conformed to wet bar status. Engineering has okayed for zoning permit with conditions. So we received their acknowledgement letter as requested dated one twenty-three, twenty-three. Zoning or, excuse me, conservation comments, with recommendations to the plan, dated one nineteen. And DEEP had provided it, I think it was one eighteen with comments to the plan. And EMAC provided comments dated one twenty-three with comments to the plan. Therefore, motion to approve the plan noting the following. His staff is to review the landscape plan in detail for noting additions to the rain garden and tree protection specifically for a thirty-eight inch existing tree. It's noted that the commission grants a special exception for the accessory structure that is greater than eight hundred square foot per the regulation. The applicant is to provide a construction staging and solus and erosion plan. The staff is to coordinate that clarification with deep engineering for their sign-off prior to zoning permit approval. And the applicant is, has latitude to revise the pool house location based on field ledge conditions within six feet of any, in any direction. And the applicant shall address any.
The ledge, do you want to say that?
That's what I said, yeah.
Okay, all right.
It was based on, based on ledge condition, field ledge conditions.
Okay.
Six feet, I didn't understand.
So what I'm saying is that, that he, the applicant can actually move the building around a little bit, no more than six feet in any direction.
The building, that way. I, I thought there was something about the depth as well, like.
No, he, if he's, he's got to be careful of his depth, because if he goes down too far or goes up too far, he may exceed his grade plane. So it's more of just actually if he's got surface ledge conditions, and he's got to move it to one, one side or another, then he'll, he has the latitude to do that within six.
Nick, I think, I think it was a little confusing. He, they, they first described that the, you know, a lot of the property is, has a lot of shallow ledge, number one, and that number two, he's talking about this pool being only four feet. Wasn't this the one?
Right, and the pool house is sitting on the, right, and what we're trying to do is get the pool house off of the rock outcropping.
Right, and it, what, what wasn't clear, and, and I can understand where Mr. Levy would be confused about this, is why there would be greater rationale tucked up against the, the, the actual rock, rock outcropping as opposed to everywhere else on the property, which is allegedly filled with, with, you know, is comprised of shallow ledge.
Right, it was my understanding is I, as what I heard from Mr. Hegney was that they wanted a little bit of latitude to actually shift the footprint of the building around. So they wouldn't have to actually hammer or blast or take any of their rock out. So if they had a high point and they could shift the building over, say, you know, just, you know, a few feet in one direction and miss the high point of the ledge, they would let, well, they wanted the latitude to do that. That's how I understood it.
Yeah.
Yes, so in other words, they're, they're still willing to, they're, they're expecting to do some blasting or they're.
No, no, no blasting.
Yeah, they wanted to minimize any kind of ledge removal.
Right, okay.
So they're going to use S mite or C mite in order to remove rock?
No, they're not going to do any, no, they're not going to do any blasting is what they said.
Right.
Okay, now quickly.
Right.
Nick, I fell asleep.
If, if, so in, in order to, but, but it looks like they're, they're clearing this area and creating a platform to put this structure and pool landscape in.
Right, so they have it, they have it.
On top of something, I mean, they have to.
They're building on top of the ledge. But what, as I understand it, if they have a high point for ledge and they can move it just a little bit in some direction, rather than take out the high point, they'd actually like to move it to avoid that, so they could build around the rock, but still on top of it.
Bottom line, we weren't able to talk him off the ledge.
Exactly.
Oh, he's been waiting the whole frickin' night for that one.
That's the longest setup ever.
Okay, you want to, from the beginning?
No, no, I'm just gonna, no, no, I'm going to just double check on you. Kitchenette gone, right?
Yes.
Staging area, you got the staging area? Okay, and the, and the tree protection?
Yes.
Okay, and you addressed that somebody's going to work out that thing with deep?
Yes.
Okay, sewer, the outstanding permit from twenty-eleven?
No, I didn't have that, but I did have his acknowledgement letter of one twenty-three.
Just, let's just throw it in there, outstanding permits since twenty-eleven. We got the rock outcrop. And the planting, this was the one, the other one where we wanted the rain garden, right, planted?
Yes, I think actually the staff was going to review the landscape plan in detail.
You got that, right?
Yeah, for the tree protection of a thirty-eight, thirty-eight inch tree, et cetera.
And she's going to make sure that, and okay, and they're going to make sure that the, all right, okay, do I have a second?
Before we, so in other words, if, if they find that they're having trouble citing this thing, does that mean they have to come back to us?
No.
No, we're going to let staff review it.
Where you, we're giving.
Zoning permit, yeah, zoning permit, before zoning permit.
Right, you're giving the staff some more latitude to allow some site work without having to adjudicate.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Low. It's like, okay, we want to go to sleep now. Okay, Mr. McRae, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Low?
Aye.
Mr. Yeski?
Aye.
Mr. Levy?
Aye.
And Albin is also aye, and with that, the motion passes five nothing, and are we done for the night?
I am.
Okay, everybody who's on a school building committee, have fun.
Thank you.
Don't get to go to a school building committee.
They don't have as much fun.
Would you like to? Wait, 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 wait.
It sounds like some of us will be joining you, so don't worry about it.
And did I kind of pick up that you guys are going to do a chat on the P and Z process for the CMS building committee? Is that what you guys are going to do?
We're going to have a department meeting with the consultant, the, the picked up architect.
With SLAM? You're going to have a meeting with SLAM?
Thank you. I couldn't think of the name for a second. So we're going to, we're going to meet with SLAM with the department so they can get a feel of what the work is going to be like, so they can help with their bidding process or, or the budget process. So they can help with their bidding process or, or the budget process.
Okay, the other thing is that um, people keep asking what we require with the MI. So if you get a chance to also maybe let Slam know, they know already, Patrick, but you know, they know what they've been through MIs with us before, so they know what they're, what they gotta do.
Yeah, and I'm happy to let them know, you know.
All right.
We're pushing the pre-app though, too.
Oh, yes. Um, we've been telling Dennis that for months, push the.
Well, let's say we, I, I say we, but as in Dennis, but you know.
Yeah.
And I've already explained the MI process today and one other time and what's in a site plan. Uh, there was some information floating around that we don't require a site plan, uh, just a rough sketch. We uh.
For the pre-app, you could get it, you could do a sketch.
Yeah, no, that was explained. They have a lot for the pre-app. Now, the, the, the comment was made that even for the uh, the MI approval with the final site plan, it's like, no, we need a final site plan.
That's a, that's a long-term battle between us and the land use committee mainly. Um, we have long insisted that we can't tell, we can't judge an MI unless we have a full site plan.
And that's what was told to them. Uh, the bigger issue was getting them to realize that uh, they can't spend really big, hard bucks on anything, including things that are, take a year, a year and a half to buy until we get final approval.
I, I sent you the language on that, only um, surveys, what's surveys and studies, I believe is the language.
Right, which uh, is the soft side of it and they have some budget for this year. So I think they understand it and they have done the work. I don't think any of that came as a surprise. They have a schedule. Uh, we'll do the uh, the staff, then we'll do, they, they have to really catch up with the neighbors. They haven't really spent much time with the neighbors, which is a big problem. Uh, and then the pre-app and then after that, the final site plan and go through our approval process. So I think they get it. Um, we'll see, we'll see. They got a little bit of a late start because of some commotions, but uh, um, the, the, the planning, I think, has, has been explained to them.
Okay, all right, great. All right, everybody, um.
Can, can I just say, I, I wanted to thank Jackie for sitting here with us all night.
And not say, I mean, you know, really, I, I, we were waiting for you to chip in.
Oh, I, the setup, I'm not, I'm kind of like how you guys were like three years ago with Zoom and doing a meeting. It's still a little learning curve over on this end.
But you've been, you've been on a million Zooms with us.
But not running it like you guys do.
She's being very humble. No one noticed. You did great. Thank you.
I had two computers going and two mouses and, thank you.
Yeah, you know what? Another level. You've got to be careful because sometimes the iPad connects to the, the, the computers connect and the mouse is working on the wrong computer. It jumps to the other computer. That is really a mind blower when that happens.
Or you go to the, the wrong keyboard. Oh, no.
I, I did the wrong keyboard a bunch tonight.
What's wrong with this thing?
Just PTSD here, it sounds like.
So, yeah, no, it was, thank you for putting up with me. It was a good first meeting, not too long.
No, 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 good job.
Thank you. It's almost ten. We were thinking we'd go home in less than six hours, so let's jump.
Yep.
Bye.